Good evening. I'm Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board, and this is the Select Board meeting for October 17, 2023. As everyone knows, on October 7th, a terrible event happened that has affected many, many people, including many people here in Brookline. And the Select Board members would like to make individual statements regarding that event from their own perspective. And I'd like to start off with my statement, which is a little longer than maybe some of the others, but I think from my standpoint, it says important things. To begin, I acknowledge that I lack a deep understanding of the complexity of the situation in the Middle East. I am not alone, and therefore circumspect my statements about the politics, culture, and history of that region. Nonetheless, my general perspective on some of the underlying issues exposed by the current crisis has value and is reflected in this statement. The violent attack on Israel by Hamas terrorists has been characterized as Israel's 9/11, but relatively much more impactful. I hope that both Israel and the United States heed the lessons of 9/11 and do not blindly repeat the disastrous mistakes that followed that attack. Brookline is home to a large Jewish community with strong ties to Israel and home to many Muslims, Christians, and Jews who are also Palestinian. Some of them have lost family, friends, or neighbors in the carnage that began on October 7th. We must provide thoughtful support and try to understand their trauma. Black people in America also know trauma and terrorism. As an African-American political leader, it is important, therefore, that I speak in solidarity with the Jewish community in this moment. Blacks and Jews have a long history of aligned interests and joint struggle based on our shared desire for freedom and peace, or shalom, and an understanding that the hatreds we both experience have common roots. We must constantly struggle to protect and strengthen the unity between our communities so that we are united against hatred at home and abroad. I support, therefore, the statement issued by the nation's leading civil rights organizations in solidarity with the Anti-Defamation League and the people of Israel on October 8, condemning Hamas's violent attack on Israel. And in the statement that's online, I have a link to that statement. I also support and urge people to read and reflect on the working definition of antisemitism of the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance. I also have a link to that statement on the online statement of mine. Our condemnation of the Hamas attack must be strong and unambiguous. It was an attack on Israelis, but also on Palestinians who suffer under the brutal status quo of Gaza, in part caused by Hamas. But I also agree with President Biden, who noted on October 10 that democracies like Israel and the United States are stronger and more secure when we act according to the rule of law. In contrast, terrorists purposely target civilians, kill them. There's a link to that statement in the online version of my statement. I mention this because while I believe that Israel has a right to respond militarily to Hamas, it must be mindful of the consequences on civilian populations, especially the approximately 50% of the Gaza population who are under 18 years of age. How Israel responds will help determine whether those young people choose peace or terrorism as their future. We don't often hear the stories of the trauma experienced by those youth and other civilians of Gaza. So below, in my online statement, is a link to a New York Times opinion article describing life in Gaza during wartime by a Gaza poet, Mossab Abu Taha, titled "On the Cusp of Invasion: A Gaza Poet Reflects on Trauma." That is also linked in my online statement. And I think that that's a very important piece to read to get just a small sense of the trauma that the residents of Gaza face on a daily basis. But finally, we must remember, as President Biden said in his October 10 statement, that the Hamas attack brings to the surface, quote, "painful memories and scars left by a millennia of antisemitism and genocide of the Jewish people." Thank you. So I think next would be John?
Thank you very much to our chair and to all of my colleagues who participated in this drafting of statements. I'm sure it weighed very heavily on all of us, as these events have weighed heavily on everybody in Brookline. Quick explanation, just by accident of the calendar, we did not have a meeting last week. And I know I was acutely aware, and I think others were too, that the community was hurting and was, at least in some part, looking for an expression of leadership from this board. And we figured out how to make that expression in the absence of a meeting of the board. I hope most people recognize, it might seem like an easy thing for the board to get together and agree on a joint statement, but under open meeting law, we really can't do that outside of a meeting and a discussion in public. So we did the next best thing, which is that we drafted these individual statements. And here's mine. During this time of mourning and anxiety for so many in Brookline, I recommend, and I subscribe to, the statement on Israel published by the White House on October 9th and co-signed by France, Germany, Italy, the United Kingdom, and the United States. It is worth reading in full. And on the page on our town website where this statement is published, I have provided a link. The key points of the statement are these, and I'm quoting directly from the statement. "We express our steadfast and united support to the State of Israel and our unequivocal condemnation of Hamas and its appalling acts of terrorism. We make clear that the terrorist actions of Hamas have no justification, no legitimacy, and must be universally condemned. There is never any justification for terrorism. Our countries will support Israel in its efforts to defend itself and its people against such atrocities." And finally, "Hamas offers nothing for the Palestinian people other than more terror and bloodshed." That's the end of the part that I have quoted. Thank you for asking for us to express ourselves and for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you, John. Miriam Mashnav.
Thank you. For those of you that don't know, I lived in Ramadhaniv, Israel, for many years, and I earned my medical degree from Tel Aviv University. I have money extended and close family members and friends who live there now and who have been directly impacted by these events. The violence and brutality are extremely difficult for me to process. I spent 18 years of my professional life as a doctor serving in humanitarian crises. My concern for the humane treatment of all people is a core belief that sustains me, for my Israeli family and friends, and all the civilians caught up in politics for which they have no control, my heart breaks. That said, my primary focus at this time is on my family and their safety, both physically and emotionally. I implore you to be gentle to those around you and extend understanding and compassion. We are all trying to navigate a difficult moment in history, a moment where there is no winning for any of us. Thank you.
Mike Sammon?
Thank you, Bernard. All of us deplore Hamas's barbaric actions on October 7th, and many of us have been touched personally, like Miriam has. I have a cousin who lives in Sderot, the city that was attacked by Hamas. My cousin and his family were unharmed, but two of his friends were killed. Israel's response to this attack understandably parallels America's response to 9/11. Destroy the perpetrators. That means war with its attendant horrors. And meanwhile, in the United States and around the world, there's been a rise in hate crimes directed at both Jews and at Muslims. All such crimes are equally reprehensible. We trust that Israel, unlike Hamas, will minimize the death of noncombatants, but war is hell. It's an inescapable hell for civilians caught in the crossfire, and war is hell even for the victor. The best we can hope for is a short war, unlike Afghanistan, and lessons that lead to a long peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Warren?
Thank you. On the Monday following the horrendous attacks, I did send a message widely to the town. And I'll read that statement now. "The terrorist attacks on civilians in Israel, including the elderly, women, and children, are horrific and criminal. My heart aches for my Jewish friends, colleagues, and neighbors. I can't imagine the pain and anguish that you are feeling. I stand in solidarity with you. Israel has the right to defend itself from those who seek its destruction. I feel that any words that I may share are woefully insufficient. I pray for the safe return of the hostages. I pray for those who have lost loved ones to the horrific terrorism. I pray for the innocent civilians impacted by the war. And I pray for a path to lasting peace for the region." Upon sending that message, I received many, many, many responses. It was widely read. And I want you to know that I read them all, each and every one, and they moved me deeply. And I really understand and have the sense, although I may not completely understand to the depth that you have, felt the trauma and the pain from these situations, the fear that you are feeling for yourselves and your family and your nation, and the anxiety that it's causing. I wish that... I just wish that it could go away, and it's going to take quite a while for healing. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your statements on a very difficult issue involving a very complex set of circumstances with no simple answers, particularly from us. But we still have to speak what's in our hearts and express our concerns, both for people we don't know in faraway lands, but also people we do know in our communities. So with that, Jeff?
I'm really sorry to add on. I wanted to just add about our local response briefly, if I could, because I know the chief is here as well, and we want to... I just wanted to add a brief statement about official response, local government response to these events. It is extremely unfortunate that the senseless and brutal slaughter of over 1,000 Israelis by Hamas terrorists prompted an increase, as many Select Board members have said, in antisemitic activity. I want to say in no uncertain terms that no political cause, no emotional reaction will ever justify antisemitic behavior. It is a hateful and pernicious rhetoric that should have no place here or anywhere else. No one should be made to feel unsafe for their faith. I want to thank the tireless efforts of the Brookline Police Department and Chief Jennifer Pastor, who's here with us tonight, to keep our community safe and to hear from all individuals who are suffering in this time of conflict. I also want to thank Dr. Lloyd Gellino of our Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion in Community Relations, who has been instrumental in hearing from and amplifying the voices of people from all across our community who have been shaken by these events and their aftermath. On Thursday, October 12th, both the schools in town received numerous questions from worried residents about a supposed call to further violence from a former Hamas leader. After other communities issued statements addressing this matter, we felt compelled to do so as well. We received comments from our Muslim neighbors about this response, which encouraged, which was meant to encourage people to go about their business as usual, that there were no credible threats to local behavior and activities, and that people's lives should proceed. Our Muslim neighbors were concerned that, and made clear to us that in reminding us that in the aftermath of 9/11, anti-Islamic hate increased 16-fold, and that many people have taken the law into their own hands, most recently in Chicago with the absolute brutal killing of a six-year-old child in an anti-Islamic hate crime. These are equally unacceptable and horrific things, just as antisemitism has no place here, anti-Islamic behavior, and hatred for anyone Palestinian or of Arabic descent is unacceptable. It will never be acceptable here. To the chair's point, these are incredibly difficult times. We are struggling to get the tone of statements correct. We may be in spaces where we say something inadvertently that may cause someone the feeling that we may not understand the position that they are in. Let us be clear, we are endeavoring to do our best and be better and to listen and reflect the community's desires. But the place that this is coming from is one of full and fulsome support for all of our residents and all of our families, whether you are, whatever faith you follow, whatever creed you follow, however you may feel about the events of the last week. This is your home, and we endeavor to make it a safe place for you. So thank you for your feedback, thank you for your comments, and please rest assured that we are doing everything we can to keep you safe and to keep you and to keep your lives as normal and regular as possible as we go through these things. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. Any other announcements or updates from the Select Board? I see Mike Sammon's hand.
I have two related comments, I think. First of all, we've gotten some comments on the town meeting member list that business owners are reluctant to speak at public hearings or sign a petition out of concern that the Select Board or town staff will somehow hold it against them. We want and we need business owners, residents, and visitors to speak their minds. There's no blacklist of people who oppose some action that the Select Board or the staff support. If we don't hear from you, we don't know what you need from town government. So please tell us, even if we disagree, we do listen. And speaking of disagreeing, we've received letters asking us to take down the Black Lives Matter sign at Town Hall because some Black Lives Matter supporters have supported the Palestinian cause in the wake of Hamas's attack. The principle that Black Lives Matter is just as valid now, even if some proponents of Black Lives Matter take positions that we object to. So having that sign at Town Hall is fitting. And I speak now as a Jew. Minorities of all sorts, racial, religious, self-identity, are under attack by fringe hate groups. And as we've all talked about here, we need to oppose hate where they're directed at blacks, Jews, Muslims, Asians, the LGBTQ community, or anyone else.
Thank you, Mike. John, did you have your hand up?
I did. I want to make just three quick announcements. I'm sorry that I don't have more time to underscore them. But one of them is that an annual, excuse me, an annual event, the Domestic Violence Roundtable, will be having a vigil... It's vigil in memory of Jennifer Lynch, a beloved member of the community who was a victim of domestic violence. And that roundtable is Thursday of this week, October 19th, at 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. And it's in the Brookline Health Department, what's known as the Denny Room. So as you go in the main entrance to the Health Department building, you then just go down the stairs and you'll find this event. It's a very meaningful event. I hope some people can attend. Saturday, there is going to be an event at Allerton Overlook, which is on, it's facing Olmsted Park, where Leverett Pond is located. It's at the end of Allerton Street. So if you just look at the map and look at Allerton Street, you will realize that Allerton Overlook, so-called, is in the park right opposite the end of Allerton Street. And it's going to be an event, I think, that'll attract a lot of participation by volunteers. That's Saturday at 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. And it's an event to basically tidy up that area and do some landscaping and meet your neighbors. And then on Monday, this is a really unusual event, the Select Board and the School Committee are going to meet jointly at 7 o'clock. And it's for the purpose of interviewing candidates who have applied for a vacancy on the School Committee. And we haven't had a whole lot of time to deal with filling this vacancy. And as a result, you can still apply up until this Friday, I believe, at noon. And you can go to the Brookline Town website to find the application information and to find the link to the application. And those are my three announcements.
Thank you. A lot going on. Keep us busy. Any other updates or comments?
Get your flu shot.
Okay.
Get your flu shot and your COVID.
And where, when?
Any CVS, I mean, I don't know what the Brooklyn Department of Public Health has. I don't know when.
Don't we have a clinic?
We do indeed. I'll pull up the exact date and I'll let people know later, lighter time during the meeting.
Looking for it right now.
Do you mind if I add a note that, just, and Mike, I hope you don't mind if I add this note. I just want people to understand the difference between one board member speaking an opinion on something like the Black Lives Matter sign and the question of whether the board has actually set a policy. And we haven't done that. And there are a number of people who are sort of asking, what is our answer to those who say we are endorsing, you know, anything and everything that is written and issued from Black Lives Matter as an organized movement? And I think to sort out those questions, just to let my fellow board members know, I would favor us putting this on the agenda for a discussion at some time in the near future. The library's dealt with this question and other questions having to do with use of, let's call it, political signage, but you know, that's not the exact word for it. But how are we to lend our public spaces to signage? And they've dealt with the question, I think, in a very deliberate way and a responsible way. And I think we, as a Select Board, can do the same thing. So I hope we do have that on the agenda at some point in the future.
Let me just add with respect to that, we are talking about developing a sign policy. I think that's separate from the Black Lives Matter banner that's there. And I would just urge people not to allow individual members using the phrase "Black Lives Matter" to speak as if they are an organization and they speak for everyone. That, I think that that is very, very dangerous. You know, there is apparently a group in Chicago that has made some unfortunate statements that does not reflect on people who have Black Lives Matter signs in their yards, in their cars, or, you know, at Town Hall. So, but we are looking at the issue, the general issue of a sign policy, and that will come up at some point in the future. I think we also should give some thought to whether we want to sort of expand the message that we're putting out there to include all forms of hatred. Because hate is indivisible. And, you know, the sentiment, the plea that is represented by the Black Lives Matter sign is a plea that is similar to many other pleas by communities that are under attack, especially these days, globally as well as locally. So yes, we will deal with those over time, hopefully fairly soon. The other, pardon me?
I found the flu clinics.
Okay.
There's one happening right this minute at the border rough and really run. They're open at 6:30.
Okay.
The next one opened to residents three years and older is at Brookline Town Hall, Thursday, November 2nd, from 9:00 to 1:00. And then again, Thursday, November 16th, from 9:00 to 1:00 at the Brookline Senior Center. And since, I do really agree that we didn't discuss it as a group, but I support Mike's statement and what Bernard said about the Black Lives Matter signs. I appreciate that. I think a policy discussion in general is always a good idea.
Okay, any other? Okay. Where is it? Okay.
Heavy start.
I'm sorry. Let me catch up here. People will see later on our agenda that we're approving a proclamation in recognition of the Korean Church of Boston's 2023 Cultural Festival right across the street from Town Hall. We hope to see many Brookline community members there on Saturday, November 4th, beginning at 5:00 p.m. at 32 Harvard Street. That's the address. This is a local church that really goes out of the way to engage with the community, supporting different efforts by the community, and being a good neighbor to us here at Town Hall. So, and I see Chief Pastor shaking her head. So apparently they're good neighbors to the Public Service Building. But anyway, so again, November 4th, which is a Saturday, beginning at 5:00 p.m., Brookline Community Festival, Cultural Festival at the Korean Church of Boston at 32 Harvard Street. And that will be approved, a resolution will be approved in our miscellaneous agenda in a few seconds or a few minutes, maybe. So Devin, do we have any residents or people who'd like to make public comment?
We'll find out. Thank you for joining us for public comment. This is an opportunity for us to hear your perspective on the issues in Brookline that matter to you. Each person speaking tonight is limited to three minutes. You do not need to use the entire time, but you may if you like. We encourage you to refrain from personal attacks and from addressing personnel issues during your comments. Members of the public sometimes raise questions during public comment. We may be able to provide a brief answer to a question, but are more likely to work with staff offline and respond over email. We'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining. And when your time is up, please conclude. You are always welcome to send an email to board members expressing your thoughts in greater detail. And at the conclusion of the Select Board's business, there will be an opportunity at the end of the meeting for additional public comment. At this time, there are three members of the public in person and 21 attending virtually. No one has used the hand raise or Q&amp;A feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment. Oh, there is a hand now.
Okay. We prompted someone to stand up and speak.
Oh, well. As I just said, we want to hear from people.
Hi, Sana. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable, and your three minutes will begin when you're ready.
Thank you. Sana Hafeez, speaking in the capacity of a Brookline resident. I have some context and a few questions, so I'll get right into it. Black and Brown community members, young and old, from so many diverse backgrounds came together to look at what has and hasn't worked for our communities, who has helped our communities and who has stood idly by. We assessed whose words have action behind them and whose were empty. We decided that we cannot leave the future in the hands of others. We will be the shepherds of the next generation of black and brown youth. We will advocate for ourselves. We will move with the urgency of someone who sees their family when they look at our community. We can count on us. From the beginning, the scope, the purpose, and even the need of this commission was questioned by white people, despite War Article 19 being nearly identical to the War Article for the Women's Commission and others. We need this long overdue platform for our voices to be heard and our concerns to be addressed. That is not up for debate. Yet, War Article 19 and its petitioners have been attacked by white elected officials in attempts to prevent the black and brown community from getting this commission. Alarmingly, these white officials all belong to the same circle of white elites. The majority of individuals attacking War Article 19, the black and brown community and its petitioners, are also Brookline Equity Coalition members. This is clear-cut discrimination. We have filed reports as petitioners. We have not heard anything back. We have raised these concerns multiple times and at multiple venues. Do we need to contact MCAT or the Attorney General's office? The town has continued to fail to act. It has been stalling as long as it possibly can. Staying silent is not an option. Bernard, as the Chair of the Select Board, what does the town plan to do? We deserve an answer today. Thank you.
Okay, any other?
The next person signed up for public comment is Adia Janusi. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable, and your three minutes will begin. The next person signed up for public comment is Adia Janusi. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable and your three minutes will begin.
Thank you, Devin. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to say happy birthday to some of our leaders from the black and brown community. I think Santa's birthday and Mary's birthday, twenty-seven and twenty-one, leaders of the future. But I just wanted to follow up on what Santa said. One of you has once said to me not to use tortured legalistic beliefs to duck accountability. Where's the accountability of War Article nineteen? We'll keep waiting for answers, but if one of you says we have not been discriminated against, then we can get into legality. You all are attacking commission, attacking nonprofit who has done more for our community. That some people want to change score points by changing the name of the school. Same thing like that was done with Florida Rivian School until date. What has that done for our community? Meaningless changes don't do any thing for our community and those tactics won't work anymore. And while I appreciate all the beautiful, solid soliloquy that was given on the situation in Israel and Palestine, which I hundred percent agree with. Nobody deserves to live in fear. I believe a lot of you need to look in the mirror because. A lot of you have participated in the attack and discrimination of black and brown community living in Brookline. Like what we have seen with the Gerald Austin situation, seeing that we weren't Article nineteen among others. So this idea and beautiful picture that Mike, you're trying to paint, which is the town governance don't blacklist or discriminate. Against people to speak up. I'm sorry to say, because you say doesn't make it true. I'm black and I've seen otherwise. And a lot of black and brown folks in this community don't agree with that statement. So Bernard will continue to wait for an answer from the select board. But this issue is not going away because we know what has been done to our community. And, and I don't think elected official attack in the black and brown community says black life matters. So those signs, they're just signs for whatever you guys want to use to score political points. But if, because if we take a poll now. Between black and brown community in Brookline, I bet you fifty-one percent will tell you black lives don't matter in Brookline. And that is majority. Thank you.
At this time, there are twenty-two virtual attendees and three in person. And that concludes the public comment.
Thank you, Devin. Okay, it's moving, moving on to our miscellaneous calendar. I'd like to ask to hold the minutes for October third because the packet copy that I had. Had a lot of gaps in, in the text. I'm not sure why that happened, whether it was just my computer or what, but. Couldn't really read the, read the minutes. So if you don't mind, we'll hold them. Okay. Second, I'd like to move approval of items three B through three X in omnibus fashion. Those items include two grants of location and nine licenses that were presented at a hearing held on October eleventh. So we're just approving the licenses and the grants of location based on the results of those hearings. Unless there are any questions? Yes, Miriam.
Oh, no.
Wait, what's this?
My favorite restaurant in all of the world. When did we know when they're last, are they closed already? You know?
Sorry for your loss, Mary. John?
Just for clarification, three B through.
Three X.
X? I don't think so.
Well, take a look at the script. I thought you were gonna maybe pull out three Q and through T.
Okay, so three B through three S.
And I don't show anything other than T. I don't see U, V, W, X.
Yeah, so let's, let's. Three, three B through three S. And I apologize because I have notes.
Yeah.
My computer that don't always align with the official notes that Devin puts together in, in the script here, so. So anyway, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyak?
Aye.
Miriam Ashkenazi?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Next are. Regular calendar.
We've got three T.
We have three T.
Three T?
Yeah.
Which is the C D B G.
Oh, that's how the, that's the difference here between my notes and the official notes here. Three T. Okay, item three T, question of approving and authorizing a chair or designate to execute fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. Contract extensions with the following C D B G sub recipients, the Brookline Housing Authority. And the Brookline Improvement Coalition. And finally, the sixty-seven Winchester Street Condominium Association. See, that's where I got to X. Okay. Any questions regarding this item? Seeing none, I move approval of item three T. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyak?
Aye.
Miriam Ashkenazi?
Aye.
Mike Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Next calendar item. Police Department Promotion. Question of authorizing the following promotion in the police department. Officer Jeffrey Emerson to the rank of Sergeant. Chief Pastor. What say you?
Good evening. Thank you, everybody. Just one quick, quick correction. It's Officer Jeffrey Emerson. Very common mistake, especially given our proximity to the park, but Jeffrey Emerson. And I come before you tonight to ask that he be considered for promotion to the rank of Sergeant. Officer Jeffrey Emerson has been a member of our department for over twenty-two years. He is well respected and highly regarded by both his peers and his supervisors for his exceptional leadership skills and his unquestionable integrity. Officer Emerson was born and raised here in Brookline. He's a former resident of the Brookline Housing Authority and a graduate of Brookline High School. Upon graduation, Officer Emerson served admirably in the United States Marine Corps. Were here in the rank of infantry man squad leader before joining our department in two thousand and one. Over the course of his career, Officer Emerson has been assigned to both the patrol and detective divisions. And has served on the department's special response team. Officer Emerson has received numerous awards and accommodations for excellent police work. He's fluent in Portuguese, a black belt in Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, and holds a master's degree in criminal justice from Curry College. It is without hesitation and with great pride that I present Officer's name, Officer Emerson's name for your consideration. For promotion to the rank of Sergeant.
Hey, any questions? Okay, I move approval of the promotion of Police Officer Emerson, Jeffrey Emerson. To the rank of Sergeant. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyak?
Aye.
Miriam Ashkenazi?
Aye.
Mike Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Next, don't leave.
No, sir.
I have something else for you. Police Commissioner Advisory Committee Policy Update, question of approving the P C A C's recommended revision. Of the Brookline Police Department's policy regarding responding to individuals with mental health conditions. As approved by the P C A C at its meeting on October second, two thousand twenty-three. The Chair of the P C A C is, is, is out of town, as I understand. But you can make the presentation because it's your policy and, and you, you implement it.
Sure.
And you understand it better than anyone else.
Well, I guess, right? Here's, here's one of the perks about being chief is I can just show up. I can take credit for this work, which was not me at all. This is really the hard work of several members of the working committees to include Deputy Superintendent Campbell. Lieutenant Chris Millen, our social worker, Annabelle Lane, and members of the P C A C. Ron Wilkinson, Karen Ambrose specifically, and of course Judy as the Chair. They worked through our existing policy, which had, had been most recently updated in two thousand sixteen. I know a version had come before the board, I believe, one or two months ago. I think it was, it was kicked back to them at that point for a few minor revisions and the version you see. Before you tonight has my approval, has the P C A C's approval. And again, you know, like all of our policies, it's, it's a fluid document will. You know, as laws change, as practices, you know, get better. You know, we're constantly evaluating, you know, how we work and how we do things we do. And of course, under my leadership, especially with a sharp focus on areas. You know, when it comes to dealing with individuals with mental health conditions.
Any discussion? I'd, I'd like to add that I think Chief Pastor actually for many years. Has taken this issue by the, by the neck or however you take. And, and has addressed it. And I, I know that from personal experience. And, you know, I think that it's critically important that police departments have clear guidance as to how to deal with people with mental illness. Which includes both what we call mental illness, but also includes autism and related conditions. Where you're inevitably going to have difficulties in communication between the person, you know, with the condition and the police officer. And in untrained police departments, that is a recipe for disaster. What, what is just, is the way a person communicates can be interpreted as either threatening. Or unresponsive or disobeying. And an untrained officer is going to react in a way that is just not acceptable. So this policy, in my opinion, is incredibly important to address some of the issues that we read about in the newspaper and, and police departments across the country. It's not a guarantee. I mean, I think it's important to say, but it's, 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 it's a step towards ensuring that the type of tragedies. That dominate the news many, many times, you know, don't happen here in Brookline. And that, and that we, we, and that our police department. It's, it's a way that police can become part of the community and, and really engage with people who are difficult to engage with many times. But are important members of our, our community and, and need the support of a respectful and empathetic police department. So. Paul Warren?
Yes. Thank you, Chief. I, and I appreciate the work of the committee. And I, I concur with what Bernard had just said about the importance of it. The thing that struck me when I was reading it was how complicated it was. There's a lot of if, then, else's. And I'm just wondering about the. The training aspect of this and execution of the policy given, it is really complicated, this situation versus that situation. Do, could you just speak a little bit about that and how are we trained for such a level of complexity?
We train vigorously and regularly, you know, is probably how to best say it. So officers in the academy these days are getting anywhere between forty and forty-eight hours specifically on de-escalation. De-escalation is just kind of a common thread that, you know, in everything that they're learning over the course of their, I think it's now twenty-three weeks in the academy. That's just in, at the heart of everything that they're doing. Recognizing and responding to people with different mental health impairments, conditions. That is anywhere between forty and forty-eight hours right now. We continue to make it a part of our in-service training every year. We host, as you know, the forty-hour C I T training. And our officers, a hundred percent of our officers are trained in that. And that's something that we'll continue to adhere to. You know, on top of that, there's specialized training that we try to make available to people, you know, and especially as staffing continues to improve. That allows us to send more people to training. A lot of our officers have taken an interest in going to more advanced trainings, which is something that's nice to see. To Bernard's point, you know, we're a law enforcement agency, but you know, I like to think of us more as a public safety agency. We're not simply about arresting people for. Violating laws, right? We're getting called to help people in crisis. And sometimes that's assisting to a hospital. Sometimes it's bringing in social service agencies to help with. Food insecurity, housing insecurity, things that are underlying causes and not necessarily. Criminal in nature.
So I guess, I guess the point is, what I'm hearing is it's, this will be continuously reinforced.
Exactly.
Right, throughout, throughout the year as part of the in-service training.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Miriam Ashkenazi?
Yeah, thank you. So thank you for this. Obviously, I think it's very important. And the training and there's a lot of blurred lines. It's a very complicated space to be in. So I have two questions. The first is, you know, when dispatch receives a call, is there a special? Because I used, and please correct, I'm trying very quickly to look at the org chart. Is there a specialized? I know everyone's C I T trained, but is there a specialized team? Like dispatch, if dispatch themselves identify that there's a need, is there a specialized team they can dispatch? And if so, I don't see that anywhere in this policy. So it would be nice to see that amended if that's the case.
So it's, I, it's not, it's completely understandable. As to why you'd be confused by that, because that was the original intent.
Okay.
Of our C I T program. Once we moved to be a hundred percent trained.
Okay.
We got away from that.
Okay.
My goal when we get fully staffed would be to bring that team back. With a full co-response model.
Okay.
So.
Thank you for explaining.
Not yet. And then when that happens, we'll revise the policy.
And then the second thing, I don't see any language about use of force.
That's a separate policy.
Okay. I guess I feel like it, it wouldn't hurt to have some redundancy about use of force in this policy.
I believe it does refer back to it.
Possible I missed it, but I.
Yeah, I think it, it.
Still, because it is, because as Paul said, it is.
Yeah.
It's not a simple read.
Right. It's a hard.
Anyways. This conversation, this is, I'm bringing it to your attention. If it's not in there, I think it would be useful.
Yep.
If it is in there, please let me know where I, it's very plausible that I missed it. Again, it's, it's a.
There are a few drafts, so it could have been.
I, I just would like to see it in there because I think it is a separate and important. No pun intended bullet point.
Yeah, I, I always like to fill in a little bit of history just for people who might not be familiar with what the Police Commissioners Advisory Committee is. Or why we have one. And it's a relatively recent addition to what we do towards. Policies within our police department and towards issues that arise around policing. It evolved from the process that Brookline entered into in two thousand twenty, the year that I first joined this board. And due to the very good efforts of our Chair and others in the community, there was drafted this. Legislation by law to create this Police Commissioners Advisory Committee. In case anybody's wondering, where are the police commissioners? The five members of the select board are the police commissioners. We've had extremely talented people serve in just a few years that this Police Commissioners Advisory Committee has been in existence. And they work really seriously on various issues that come before them. And this is as serious as, you know, that it gets. And for those who want to read the policy, it's, it's eight pages. My colleague is correct, you know, none, none of this is simple stuff to deal with. But it is just eight pages. It starts on page four hundred and seventy-eight of the packet. So, you know, if you just go to the packet for tonight's select board meeting, starting on page four hundred and seventy-eight, you'll find this eight-page. P C A C recommendation of a policy responding to individuals with mental health conditions.
Okay, this is not a public hearing, but I understand that Marty Rosenthal would like to speak. Marty has a lot of experience in this field as a criminal defense lawyer. He's also a member of the Committee, Police Reform Committee. That produced the idea of a Police Commissioners Advisory. Committee. And he's gonna take, he's gonna take credit for actually coming up with the name. And you, we should give him credit. Because it was, I mean, the idea, you know, jerk arose out of the deliberations of the committee. But the idea of using that terminology for the committee, I think can be attributed to Marty. So Devin, could you? Give Marty the floor? Marty?
I think I'm in. Thank you very much. And I appreciate very much being called on. I'm very late to this issue. As I was on October second, when P C A C met. And, and I join in the celebration. as I was on October second when PCAC met. And I join in the celebration of PCAC. And I missed the end of Bernard's comments, but I think it was I who coined that name for them that came out of the Reform Committee. This issue is probably along with use of force, the biggest issue for police all across the country. And on October second, I was late for PCAC. I gave them some revisions, issues about this particular policy. And then today I saw this on the agenda and just before about a half hour ago, sent you all an email about my proposed revisions. And part of the reason I'm late to both of these is that Bernard will remember, and I don't know if anyone else on the board will remember, but I've been nagging for years about public input on police policies, which came out of the nineteen eighty-seven report by me and Jeffrey that was adopted five-nothing by the board. And that's a chronic problem. It's it's happened again. I don't fault anybody. But everybody keeps forgetting about it. And had that been followed, I might not have been late to either of those meetings. So I do want to just at first one point that Miriam made, which was very important, the connection to use of force. One of the things that I highlighted in my input to to the PCAC on October second is the arrest policy, because I think that's a big issue nationwide on these mental illness cases. That, for instance, the policy as written now says may be taken into custody for committing a crime that's an arrestable offense. That includes misdemeanors in an officer's presence. It includes a lot of minor felonies like larceny over two hundred and fifty dollars, that kind of stuff. And I think that needs to be looked at in this policy, along with other lesser things that I I mentioned, including closer look at the role of the dispatchers. So.
You have thirty seconds.
Yeah, my suggestion is that you hold off on this and get some public input, including from mea culpa myself. So I'm sorry to throw a monkey wrench into whatever the cliche is, but that's what I'm urging.
Miriam.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we received an email from Judith Faber-Camp. Marty, replying directly to this comment that you've just made, I'm just going to briefly summarize.
Miriam, into the microphone, please.
Thank you. The the PCAC discussed the policy recommendation on this topic during many public meetings, so many I've lost count. We take public comment at the beginning of every meeting and after each agenda item. At our last meeting, when we adopted these recommendations, three members of the public were in attendance at the beginning of the meeting. None sought to speak. By the time we voted to adopt this recommendation, all three had left. The public has had ample opportunity for input.
Okay, good. So I'm sorry, Marty, but we're going to vote tonight. If you want to suggest revisions to the policy or amendments to the policy, Judy Faber-Camp will receive those and act accordingly. Chief Pastor.
I don't know if it's helpful to just address the one point that he brought up about may arrest for a misdemeanor. You know, we have instances and, you know, most recently, an instance. Sorry, of, for example, trespassing, chronic trespassing, a misdemeanor, right? It's not an officer, it's not an offense that any of us, you know, as officers feel good. It's not a good arrest, right? If it's chronic homelessness, you know, making an arrest is not something that we want to see. However, if it's a persistent problem, somebody's refusing to get treatment, somebody's refusing to. You know, they come back night after night after night and they're sleeping in somebody's vestibule. The problem is not getting solved. However, if we have the, it doesn't say shall arrest, but if we may arrest and court-ordered treatment is the result of an arrest, it might be a door that would be taken away if we didn't have a line like that in there. So I think, you know, as long as we have that kind of may language in there. It allows for an opportunity.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or observations? Okay, I'd like to move approval of the police policy on responding to individuals with mental health conditions of the PCAC. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Squire.
Aye.
Miriam Ashenazi.
I with asterisk.
Yeah, we'll get it in there. That's, I agree.
Okay. Mike Salmon.
Aye, same asterisk, yep.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, with an asterisk also. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Chair Green, I just want to make a note to say that I thought we would be maybe running a little bit ahead of schedule based on the lack of public comment, but we are right back on track. And I wanted to thank the interview candidates who are coming before you because they all jumped on early when I sent the call to say that we might be ahead of schedule, but now we are, we're back on track. So I just wanted to thank them for their prompt, promptness and let you know that we've entered that section of the agenda now.
Okay. So we have boards, boards and commissions, interviews. Following candidates for appointment, reappointment to boards and commissions will appear for interview. Let's start off with the Transportation Board. Andrew Gordon is the interviewee. Is he in the queue? Mr. Gordon, please introduce yourself and why you're interested in Transportation Board and what you think you can bring to it.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I apologize. I'm at a trade show today, so a little bit not the best of circumstances. I had a quick statement that I wanted to, that I prepared that I wanted to read. So thank you for considering me for a seat on the Transportation Board. My name is Andrew Gordon, I'm a mechanical computer science engineer, entrepreneur, and a bicycle enthusiast.
Excuse me, could you speak directly into your microphone? We're having trouble hearing.
Getting a lot of sort of feedback.
It's a little garbled, I think, if you just slow down. But but if members of the board pay attention to the transcript, it is capturing exactly what he's saying.
Okay. Oh, well, that helps.
I will. Sorry, was a little nervous there and I will slow down. Is that any better?
Much better.
You're doing better. You're doing better.
Awesome. I am in the cafeteria of a trade show now, so please understand if there's background noise.
Much better.
Great. So thank you for considering me for a seat on the Transportation Board. My name's Andrew Gordon. I'm a mechanical computer science engineer, an entrepreneur, and a bicycle enthusiast. I currently serve on the board of two startups, as well as an environmental advocacy group for a local lake. I ride the streets of Brookline most days with my two daughters, and I have now three daughters, wrote this a little while ago, in a trailer behind me. My third daughter is just two months old. She has to wait until next year to join us. I'm passionate about safety and accommodations in town and also common sense approaches to help improve transportation around Brookline. I've seen the positive impact that intentional street and transportation design can have in our community. And I look forward to working with you all to continue the improvements. I wanted to share some recent work I've been doing on my own time on the Whole Foods projects, a proposed at the Washington Quarry intersection in Brighton. After attending a local presentation by the developers, I looked into the traffic study and projections for their transportation updates. I found two issues. The first was that traffic wasn't added properly, wasn't properly mitigated with updates to stoplight patterns. The proposal showed an almost four-minute delay for people passing through Cory. And I raised this issue with a developer who heard my concerns and made updates lower that to below sixty seconds. And then found a logic mistake with traffic engineers that accidentally made while updating traffic patterns for the site. They recognized and reconfigured a driveway and they forgot to account for that traffic through another exit. So the impact was significant. They actually underestimated the number of vehicles that'd be taking a left turn on, from Cory on to Washington by two and a half times. If it was uncorrected, it would back up the entire neighborhood and the schedule only travels there. So I raised this to the developer. They acknowledged the mistake, but had mitigated the impacts as much as they could without adding other lanes, which the city of Boston was reluctant to do. The city of Boston wanted to see bicycle transportation accommodations, but for more accommodations for other cars. While I appreciate this care for bicyclists, I was certain that more could be done. So I contacted Boston City Councilor Liz Breeden's, Breeden's office, as well as the senior transportation planner at Boston office to explain the situation and future issues. I also explained how these additional car accommodations would in fact make the intersection safer for bicyclists, bicyclists like myself. So great news, last week, last month, I actually learned that the left turn lane at Cory is now officially in the projects. And Sean Manning at VHB shared with us that the advocacy is a big help in making that happen. So anyways, I look forward to continuing this work as part of a team selected to serve in the Brookline Transportation Board. I want to say thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Yes, I'm sorry, John.
Andrew, thank you so much. I'm reading through your application. I just love the approach you take of involvement. I picture you and your daughter watching meetings of the Bicycle Advisory Committee together and, you know, that's just great. And I also appreciate that you, you know, when you have suggestions to make, you offer them, you find the right people to offer them to. The question I have for you, it does seem from your application that what you really want to do is serve on the Bicycle Advisory Committee. And at one point in the application, I believe you say, yes, here it is, I do not feel I have enough experience to be on the Transportation Board at this time. Do you still feel that way? I mean, are you applying for the Transportation Board or not?
So I am applying for the Transportation Board. I had applied for the Bicycle Advisory Committee. I do feel that my experience is still, I'll call it, it's still relatively inexperienced to what I see some of the other members are. I have a passion for transportation issues, whether it be, I was an automotive engineer too. Like it's a, whether it's the vehicles or bicycles or or public transportation, I find that I'm passionate about it. Things like the stoplights on Beacon Street in the quarter. So it's something that I'd like to serve and learn. I do, I do feel that I am relatively inexperienced relative to some of the other people that are serving there. So that's a, that is certainly a weakness of.
Mike Salmon.
So thank you, Andrew. As a, I'm a former chair of the Transportation Board. And I have to say that when I joined the Transportation Board, I don't think I had anywhere the amount of knowledge that you've just exhibited. My advice to you is, my advice to you is, don't sell yourself short.
Thank you, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
Paul?
Yep, so I, I agree with Mike. Your, your resume is impressive and I appreciate you coming forward. And I think you potentially would be qualified to be on the Transportation Board. But I'm going to ask you a specific question related to transportation and experience that I have several times a week. Because I'd really like to get your thoughts and advice on it. There's a crosswalk at Lawrence School. It's, it happens to cross Longwood Ave. Longwood Ave is one of the most active cycling corridors within Brookline. We have a, I walk my children across that crosswalk. They're young. There's a kindergarten and fourth grader. And there is a dedicated officer that stands in the middle of the road, stops the traffic. I can't tell you the number of times per week, it's always a couple of times per week where someone on a bicycle or scooter is coming down the lane, the cycling lane, the dedicated lane, and they have no interest and they don't stop for the officer. And it's quite dangerous. I know that there's statistics that say cars kill more people, bicycles don't kill pedestrians. But when you're walking across the crosswalk with a six-year-old or a five-year-old, it's incredibly anxiety-producing to have to pull your child back to prevent them from getting run over. What is the solution to this problem?
It's a great question. Yeah. Yeah, I was going to say, I'm not, I'm not going to pretend that I know the absolute solution. But I will say that I completely agree with you that, like I, I said, I'm an avid cyclist. I, I choose that method if I'm deciding on my own to go somewhere. The, it's absolutely a problem if bicyclists aren't yielding to pedestrians, especially in something like a crosswalk and especially around a school. So my, my first reaction would be to lean on something like complete streets or someone that's a little bit more experienced for ideas there. But I, at the same time, what, what my, my gut is telling me is that besides learning a little bit more about it, my, my gut is telling me that there's it probably has a lot more to do with like slowing traffic, like actually slowing the bicycles down, maybe through either, I'll say either curving or something like a mechanism near there that actually encourages them to slow down because they almost have to.
So I think, so I'm going to, I don't want to take up too much of your time. So you're, you're directionally correct. I, I do have two theories on this, if I can acknowledge my colleagues. One is that, you know, our roads are configured for automobiles and not for bicycles. The officer stands in the middle of the road. Often the cyclist can't see the officer because he's standing on the yellow line looking at children. And perhaps there's a truck or a car and the cyclist is looking ahead. Some sort of signage in the cycling lane, a blinking light that, that the officer could activate to say stop.
Love that idea.
You know, something like that. But it is, you know, it's, it is a serious issue. I'm sure there's other intersections like this in Brookline. I've, I've raised this a few times and I just haven't been able to put the, the time in to get in front of the Transportation Board. But it is a serious issue that I think needs to be looked at. And, and probably a simple, a simple solution is signage, potentially a blinking sign during school hours to say yield to officer and children in crosswalk could potentially be sufficient. So thank, thank you for indulging my question. You gave, you gave a good directional answer.
Well, exactly. I think the point is, I don't, I won't pretend to know the answer, but I totally agree that it's a problem and that it's something that should be solved.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike Salmon.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think a sign all by itself, a sign with a light that goes on is, is much more effective. Most of the time, both drivers and for that matter pedestrians and cyclists don't really look at signs. They get, you know, they tend to blend into the background. But I've seen the same sort of thing myself and I would also say that I bicycled over here tonight. So I think your, your, your powers of analysis will be very useful. And in this, and you can see that there are some difficult problems in terms of accommodating the various interests that want to use our streets. And when you're on the Transportation Board as opposed to on the Bicycle Advisory Committee, you get to handle a lot of them.
All right, Miriam.
My question's for Devin. Do we have a vacancy?
Uh, no, there are two seats that are up for reappointment and both incumbents have applied.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any appointment that we make will be made at a future meeting and we'll let you know when that occurs. We thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Thanks for, for the opportunity to speak.
Next, Commission for Women, Prashanti Krishna. And I apologize if I didn't accurately pronounce your name.
Actually, I think you're pretty close, so thanks for that. It's Prashanti Krishna. Yeah, you're pretty close. Yeah, so good evening, everyone. And just by way of introduction, I'm Prashanti Krishna, live in Brookline with my husband and two little children. Yeah, so my interest in, you know, the Commission for Women stems from two counts. One is, now I've been working in corporate America for over twenty years now. And, you know, it's, I think, more of a calling where I really wanted to start giving my time towards public service. And then I started reflecting on what would be an appropriate area where I could best bring my skills and, you know, the areas that I feel really passionate about. And fortunately, you know, I came across the Brookline Commission for Women and I saw that there was an opening. And so I reached out to the chair to understand some of the areas that they're really focused on. I had a meeting with Liz Stillman and I also participated in one of their meetings. And I mean, least to say the issues they were discussing and the kind of impact they are hoping to have was pretty inspiring. So that's, you know, one of the key reasons, you know, which I thought I should apply and, you know, put my candidate here ahead. In terms of my experience, while I've been working with organizations, you know, globally, I've had the opportunity to actually start and. to actually start and lead a lot of women employee resource groups as well as leadership groups for entrepreneurs, you know, supporting them, mentoring them and helping them succeed in whatever, you know, sort of small business or leadership paths that they were sort of, you know, pursuing. So I can talk a little bit more about that experience, but you know, in Fortune 100 companies, I've done that. And I've also worked globally across different countries. So I do understand the issues around diversity and inclusion. And, you know, though we are talking about gender as a topic, it still is a platform to drive diversity and inclusion as well. Yeah, so, you know, I feel like I have knowledge and experience which, you know, I would love to at this point in my life, you know, bring it to, you know, put it to better use and, you know, have a broader impact in the community that we are living in.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
I have a question. How many spots do we, I know it says vacancies. There, we interviewed somebody else for this commission, didn't we? Or no?
Not recently.
Okay.
So you do have two vacancies. You have not interviewed anyone since one of the members stepped down outside of her term.
Okay. Who's your wife? Let's keep this under control now. Okay, Ms. Krishna. You have a lot of experience on global projects involving women. Give me some ideas of how that experience could be applied here in Brookline to maybe expand the opportunities for wom- for women who are in marginalized, low-income communities to, in ways that's done in many countries around the world.
Yeah. And thanks for that question. I think, you know, whatever issue that we are actually focused on or prioritizing, you know, at a town level, the first issue is always around creating awareness, you know, about the issue, both with the town leadership, all the various departments, and also, you know, understanding who these marginalized communities are, where they are, and for them to understand the current programs that are already in place, right? So that, in my experience, I've always seen that the first issue is about creating awareness at different levels, like with different stakeholder groups. And the second part is, you know, once we all have actually understood what the real problem is that we're trying to solve, is it that we're trying to give them better educational opportunities or are we trying to give them better employment opportunities as food and hygiene an issue like? I think we need to really understand what the real issue and problem that we're trying to solve. And then, of course, you know, the issue then comes to budget. And do we have the resources to really try and solve that problem? And my approach is not to always solve a short-term issue, but, you know, balance the immediate issues vis a vis where we are putting the resources to help solve the issue systematically for the long term, right? So how do we balance that? And then, so even once all of this happens, the execution often tends to be a big issue, right? Or a challenge or an opportunity. And that's where, how do you actually leverage programmatic and more professional approaches to actually execute whatever we've committed to executing, right? So I think it's all the three things, you know, creating awareness, understanding really at the bottom of it, what is the problem that we're trying to solve? Get the resources and actually drive that to execution. So I think broadly, you know, sort of that kind of an approach will, I think, help us drive some impact, you know, in a visible and meaningful impact, I'd say, yeah.
Okay, Marion?
Thank you. So first, I want to say that I noticed this will be the first committee, town committee that you're being involved in. And I appreciate new folks getting involved. So thank you for that. I'm just curious because I, for some reason, I didn't see her CV attached. What is it you did 25 years working in the corporate and senior management roles and what industry?
Yeah, I was in financial services and right now I'm in IT services. So some of the organizations I work for are like in consulting. I was with Price Waterhouse Coopers. I was with General Electric. I was with Motorola. You know, and right now I work for a global organization called Bitrow. So these are all the organizations and I was more in their business strategy and transformation function. So currently with my organization, I'm helping drive their transformation globally for the company. So I like to call myself as a change maker, you know, and help and drive business change. So far, I was also working for National Grid for some time where I had some external stakeholder responsibilities as well. Yeah, so I played like varied roles across different organizations, helping essentially with business transformation while keeping in mind all the stakeholder interests, right? So, yeah, so that's broadly my role in the corporate. But in addition to my day-to-day responsibilities, you know, we play all these different roles where, you know, you could help with some employee resource groups, you know, lead some of that, you know, to drive better culture in the company in terms of inclusion. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. We will be making our appointments at a later meeting to the Women's Commission. And we'll let you know at that point. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next, Commission for the Arts, Monica Risi.
Hello?
Hi. So introduce yourself. Tell us why you're interested in the Commission for the Arts and what you can offer to that board.
Thank you. I, I can't address your name because I can't see you here right now, but thank you. Hi, my name is. I didn't hear that again. Sorry.
Bernard Green.
Thank you, Bernard. So hi, my name is Monica Risi. I'm South American, but I've been living in Brookline for the past two years. I lived in New York for 12 years. I've been an artist ever since 2003. I have worked in New York as a producer, as an artist, as a teacher, and then I lived in Peru for the last, for the last eight years before these two years that we've been in Massachusetts, where I became a professor at Universidad Católica, which is one of the most prestigious universities in my country and in South America. And there I started having a bit of influence with what was going on with my industry with the performing arts because I brought a bunch of really useful tools that had been systematized in the context of the American market and that I shared and adapted for the Peruvian performing arts industry. When I moved here two years ago, I found out that there was a town council. I didn't know at the time that there was a special group section dedicated to the arts in particular. And then when I came into the, the Baker School community, I met Andy Dean and Andy mentioned the commission. And I said I would be interested and that's why I'm here and that's a little bit of my background.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? John Vanskaya.
Thank you so much for applying and just a very, very, very impressive resume. And Brookline is very fortunate to have you and to have your interest in this commission. If I missed this in your introduction of yourself, I apologize. Have you had a chance to actually, you know, observe meetings of the Arts Commission to get a better sense of what they do and so on?
No, that's a great question. I did meet with Andy, like in an informal meeting. I think he kind of wanted to meet me before he told me about the commission. We have a shared, a strong shared appreciation for public art. New York is very, not very focused on public art. I've fundraised and managed projects that have to do with public art. They had to do with diversity before, but this was before, this is like in the year 2010. So before it was identified as an issue that needed to be directly addressed. And we spoke about that. He said that there's a budget that you receive. I wouldn't remember the number. There's a budget that you receive as the town and that the commission, I'm trying to go from English to Spanish, English to Bella, that oversees. It tries to oversee, yeah, after eight years in Peru, my, my Spanish went back to being a lot better than my English. And now I'm like, oh. Every time I move, I'm like, God, I'm so illiterate in the other language. So, so, yeah, so what I understand is that the commission oversees that budget and gives opportunities that from my own experience, I would probably expect would have to do between aligning the goals that the town might have set for the town, for, not for, for the people living in the town in terms of their cultural rights and how they might be or not be nourished with whatever the town's doing in terms of the arts. And like an intersection between what the goals are on this front. And I guess what the offer is on the other side. Like I've said, I've worked for the creative industries for a long time. So it also is a matter of what people are bringing to the table. And sometimes if they're bringing stuff that doesn't sound relevant and urgent and like it's forwarding our, I guess, the industry, like forwarding the artist's pursuit for something or some new form. Or if it's not forwarding the conversation that we want the arts to trigger, then sometimes you have to go out and look for people, not just. So that's something I would love to contribute with. Also, I think if, if there were public art around here, if we could see it more often, I think it would spark the imagination of the families out here.
Great. Thank you for the answer. Thank you so much.
So let me ask whether you have, what ideas do you have for public art here in Brookline in terms of locations, type of art that would be appropriate? What they'd be used for in terms of educational opportunities for both young and old, et cetera? So what, what, give me your ideas.
That's an exciting question. So I think, I mean, I'm gonna, right now it's gonna be kind of a naive answer because I don't know what there is already. I don't know what people have shown that they want to shown an appreciation for in the past. But I, from the two years that we've been here and having kids at the public schools here, I think, I think that would be very interesting to have public art with which the audience interacts and not just with a product per se, but with a process. Because I feel like the, I feel like there's very smart people here. I feel like there's people who are very eager to do well. But I don't feel like there are many places for art to stimulate a conversation where we can inhabit those uncomfortable questions that come up with art and that we don't necessarily know how to answer. We don't need to rush into answering. So I feel like there can be contemporary artists, visual and plastic artists that could be exhibited in spaces where maybe families or maybe young people hang out to spark now their curiosity that might have QRs and might have certain, I really believe in events a lot. Like I really believe in not just hanging a bunch of paintings somewhere or inviting people to a performance without helping people and have an appreciation for it before. So I'm big as a producer, I'm big about creating what we call surrounding events, which are little snippets of a bigger, broader experience that they're going to have so that people feel like this is accessible for them. So things might not be accessible because some people perceive certain forms of art as elitist, but sometimes things are not accept accessible because some people think that some art is far too far out. So I used to tell a friend who used to say, I don't understand contemporary art. I go in there and I see stuff and I'm like, well, maybe I could do that. And I'm like, well, maybe because the wrong gallery sent you the invitation. Maybe that was not an exhibit, an exhibit for you. Maybe if they wanted you to come in and appreciate Rothko's broad paintings, theatrical constructions with all of these really dark colors, maybe they should have figured out how to tender bridge between that art and you. So before they invited you. So that's, I think it's about that. I think it really is about, I have to be honest, one of the first things that surprised, I had only lived in New York before we, before we went to Peru and then moved back to the US and came to Massachusetts. And one thing that surprised me is that every time I asked people about like what was going on artistically, it was like, oh, there's some website somewhere. It would just seem very, like people wanted it, but it wasn't necessarily in the mouth of people. So I feel like if we have more events where families meet, where the young people meet, where we see young people express themselves, where we see actually, another thing that I've become very sensitive with as a professor now that, that sounds very scholarly, but it's something that I've become very aware ever since the pandemic is that I also feel that there are some practitioners that have gotten older that have maybe, I don't know, maybe they're not part of the current conversation, but they might have paved the way for the conversation that we're having now. And so some of the process that led them to where they are is worth also sharing. So timelines, so people know maybe about the history of artists that came out of Brookline would be fun. So the people would start, so people would start identifying art and Brookline. I think it'd be really cool. And then, and then bring some artists from other place. I mean, Massachusetts, now that I've been to summers here, Gloucester, you know, all the, all the shore on the north. And maybe there's other parts I haven't discovered yet, but they have a lot of artists, a lot of really beautiful people who want to talk about art. So I feel like it'll be really cool to have some conversations. Maybe some of these wiser, more experienced generations sharing their appreciation for some of the younger generations. I feel like stuff like that would be really cool. And I think that we should take advantage of the warm weather when it's here to have more, more town meetings, gatherings around the artistic process.
Paul?
Yep, thank you. So first, I want to thank you for your application. I was incredibly impressed with your resume. I think you, your introduction woefully under shared or sold your, the value that you could bring to our community. Just hearing you gush ideas, I've heard more ideas out of you on this subject. And knowing that you haven't really had a chance to participate, I think that just, just your experience and your unique experience and the ideas that you responded to from Bernard asking just a question of what are some of your ideas? I, I think that it would be quite remarkable to have you join the Arts Commission and bring a unique perspective. I love your ideas about, you know, our typical lack of interactive art and making it, I'd love to see the, the combination of art and performance art come together. If you could find a way to make town meeting come alive on the street for, for people, that would be interesting. Make that art form. But I do want to thank you for your, for your application. Your experience is quite impressive. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I also just want to add one thing, which is I, I really know how to work with budgets. So I'd be very interested in being in a town council so that we can talk in terms of the town about resources and how to allocate them. I'd be very interested to be part of the table that's setting the goals and taking advantage of those resources and seeing and letting the town see the benefits of, you know, setting some of the resources, resources for art. Because I know there's always a lot of urgent matters that don't involve art directly. But I think it's really important for the, for the people that live in the town to see the way things are being invested and feel part of that.
Okay, thank you. We will make our appointments at a future meeting. We appreciate your appearing before us and giving us your ideas for the Commission on the Arts.
Take care.
Thank you.
Next, Planning Board, Economic Development Advisory Board. We have Ian Black.
Hello, my name is Ian Black. I'm applying to be on the Planning Board and Economic Development Advisory Board. I'm currently a PhD student in economics at Boston College and have previously served on the Planning Commission of Golden Valley, which is a first ring suburb of Minneapolis. On that Planning Commission, I've confronted the struggle to develop livable, affordable cities. And I'm hoping to bring some of the lessons that I learned from there to the Brookline Planning Board. Well, in the Golden Valley Planning Commission, we passed a 20-year plan that includes significant changes to the zoning code to promote higher density and mixed-useful encouraging affordable housing. With Brookline confronting very similar problems, for example, with the Harvard Street zoning changes, I believe I have the necessary skills and experiences to help make Brookline an affordable and livable city.
Okay, give me some of those ideas. How do we make Brookline a more affordable, in particular, city? How do we make Brookline a more affordable uh in particular city? Um, given the market uh conditions under which we operate.
I mean, I think one would be the increased use of TIF tax increment financing districts to promote higher density or require affordable housing units. Um, as a way to encourage development, especially in a time in which you know, costs of development are extremely high. Um, a- as I mentioned before, I think the Harvard Street Plan to add mixed use is a great way to increase density while also creating a very livable community. And then I also believe that we should consider, you know, when present ways to reduce, say, parking requirements. Um, which can often significantly reduce the density required, which is especially uh relevant when, you know, we're in a city with significant access to public transportation.
Uh, Paul.
Ian, thank you uh for your application. So um, you know, one of the primary charters of EDEB is economic development. I appreciate that you're talking about density and housing. But um, you know, one of the things that we're, we're missing and in sore need of is um is economic development. Now, you could get that from mixed use, but what do you, what's your experience and your ideas around finding ways to substantially increase um our uh, you know, economic footprint or economic tax base, commercial tax base in uh in Brookline?
Yes, uh, it's always difficult to develop uh commercial spaces. Uh, part of that is making sure that we have rules in place that promote large planned unit developments. Um, when a company is considering moving their headquarters, it is a very complicated process. And so ensuring that we make it an easy process to develop land here to move your headquarters here in a reasonable amount of time should help us draw in new tax revenue.
But surely you understand that we're almost a hundred percent built out community, other than maybe South Brooklyn. Um, you know, so land is uh is already pretty used. You're talking about redevelopment. Um, I'm just, I'm getting, I'm just curious about how, yeah.
Yeah, both redevelopment and in many cases, the combination of properties. I think if you look at you know, nearby businesses that are considering expanding their offices. Um, a very common thing they'll do is start buying nearby buildings and oftentimes you end up with a company that owns multiple buildings in area and is hoping to kind of develop them together. Um, which can be a very complex zoning issue, um but one that if addressed can help a company significantly expand within the city.
Mike Sammon.
Um, thanks Bernard. Um. I wonder if you're, I don't know if you're, you're familiar with this article, but there was a really interesting article in the Boston Globe. Um, entitled, uh, the headline was, how were the Twin Cities first in the US to tame inflation on uh uh in in affordable housing? Actually, I'm not sure that that was the title. It's titled I forgot. But there's a title, is it like on the globe that um that references Minneapolis and its uh relative success in uh adding housing and the impact that it had on uh on housing prices. Uh, is that by any chance, have you read that? Or was you, are you familiar with the process in Minneapolis?
Um, I haven't read the article, but I I can guess at some of the things that it's addressed. I know Minneapolis was the first major city to completely eliminate single use or single uh family zoning. Um, which has allowed increased density. Um, but a lot of it has also just been a willingness and ability to develop apartment buildings, both in the city and in suburbs.
Any other questions? Thank you. We will be making our appointments at a later meeting. Hey, next, uh, we have a public hearing scheduled for six forty. And it's now six thirty nine. So let's let's wait a minute. Now, let's uh, let's, let's uh get going, electric, uh electric vehicle charging and parking meter rate setting public hearing.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, introduce yourself and um and begin with your presentation.
Thank you, Bernard. Um, good evening, Select Board. My name is Sam Downs. Uh, I'm a transportation engineer uh for the town of Brookline. Uh, it's been a pleasure to meet, I think, only two of you, and I look forward to to meeting the rest of you. Uh, Paul, I'd be happy to talk about the Lawrence School. Uh, we can table that for another time. I think you're talking about Longwood at Marshall. Uh, I think there's some things we could do. Um, anyways, tonight I would like to talk to you all about electric vehicle charging rates and the implementation of an overstay fee. Um, I have a very short presentation uh that was a part of the packet that uh supplements the memo that I shared. Um, I'd first, I'd like to start by recognizing the Transportation Board um and the amazing things that they do in supporting our division um for making improvements in town. Um, they discussed this topic at their most recent September meeting. Um, and as part of this presentation, I will share uh the the Transportation Division staff's recommendation uh and the Transportation Board's recommendation. Uh, so a little background on electric vehicles in Brookline. Our first stations were installed in two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen and five publicly owned lots. Uh, we have offered that charging uh at no cost for electricity um since the pilot program began in two thousand sixteen. Uh, that was mandatory for the first three years and has continued since. Um, in two thousand nineteen, uh, the Select Board, um, I don't know who was on that at the time, but um, I appreciate uh the work that was done between the Select Board and Green Spot to create three additional um locations in town. Uh, each of which has uh either one fast charger or multiple level two charging stations. And that has helped expand access to public charging in Brookline. Um, currently, there are over a thousand electric vehicles registered in Brookline. Um, and every month at just the town-owned stations uh through a combination of both residents and visitors, we have over five hundred unique drivers uh charging at our uh five stations. Um, so as EVs continue to grow, um, they've grown by at least two hundred and fifty percent in the last three years. Um, there is a critical need for us to create a sustainable plan to both maintain the existing network, to provide reliable charging and expand our EV network. Um, the simplistic map, I know it's kind of small, so I do apologize. Um, shows that we do have concentrations of existing chargers that are in blue. Uh, these are the number of ports available for people to charge. Um, and then the orange dots indicate the proposed stations that are uh currently planned um to be operational by spring of two thousand twenty four. Uh, we're going from uh approximately ten charging ports uh to around forty charging ports uh in the matter of uh less than a year. Um, when we are also trying to identify additional locations to install um town-owned stations in other publicly owned locations. Um, concurrently with the publicly accessible charging program um that I'm uh helping lead, uh, I'm also supporting the town's goals in electrification of our fleet. Uh, so these are the current locations uh that there are projects either currently underway or imminently starting um to support our different departments and their goals and uh and Brookline's goals of electrification of our, of our fleets. Um. So lastly, I would just like to highlight um the conversation that was had um as part of the Transportation Board meeting. Um, the board was supportive of maintaining the existing town's parking fee that would be paid by individuals using um the town's charging stations uh while also implementing an overstay fee that would charge users um five dollars per hour um after being allotted a twenty minute grace period for when those individuals have completed their charging session. This will help encourage turnover. Um, I think that many EV owners can attest that uh an issue is, is people remaining in the spots after they're done, and this would help support uh turnover and be a source of revenue for the town. Um, and then the, the differ, the difference between the Transportation Board's recommendation and what I and the Transportation Division team are recommending um is the, the charge per kilowatt hour. Um, the Transportation Board voted to recommend a fee of forty cents per kilowatt hour, uh which is on par with um other uh EV station networks that are uh owned and operated by private companies. Um, and then uh the Transportation Division staff is recommending a um essentially at cost of electricity of twenty five cents per kilowatt hour, uh which is on par with our surrounding communities and and also helps uh move forward with um our climate action goals.
Sorry, can you, can you go back one slide?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to absorb this.
Yep, so um.
You hold on, uh Miriam, you're confused about something?
Yeah, but I think he's, I think Mike is confused about the same.
Right, yeah, so you've got twenty five cents a kilowatt hour, forty cents a kilowatt. Uh, what's the, you know, the staff recommended twenty five cents, the board wants.
Yes, I apologize about that, yes.
How many, can I just ask, how, when does the, what counts as the overstate fee? Like, how many hours do they charge before there's an overstate?
Twenty minutes, there's grace period and then.
So an overstay fee only happens after you're fully charged. So when you get to wherever your car stops charging, most cars have it shut off at eighty percent, some will let you go all the way to a hundred, depending on what you're doing. Um, the machine knows when you, the charge, it's not delivering any further charge. So it'll give you fifteen minutes, but then if you're not back, it'll start charging you for picking up that spot without charging your car.
And and that's typical at commercial networks.
Okay.
You get uh uh Electrify America gives you ten minutes.
So they don't want you sitting there with your car parked forever.
Right, right.
Exactly, this is, this is the uh, the intention is to, is to provide um, you know, access to these charging stations. Um, and so they're as fully utilized as possible.
Is that five dollars an hour sufficient to get someone to move?
Well, so there's that, that's an interesting question. The other thing I wanted to ask about is what about internal combustion engine vehicles that uh that park in
Yeah.
in, in those slots.
Uh, both, both great questions. I'll, I'll start by addressing whether five dollars is sufficient. Um, you know, there, there are areas in Boston, the Seaport would be uh an extreme example, but there are locations that charge up to fifty dollars per hour. Um, this fee is charged on a per minute basis. So if you think of five dollars per hour is really just eight point three cents per minute. Uh, it is quite small, but um, so yes, there is an opportunity to increase this fee and, you know, if uh there is interest from the Select Board in increasing this fee, it is a way to uh further incentivize people. Uh, to answer the second question um about uh vehicles blocking spaces. So in great collaboration with uh the Traffic Division of Brookline Police Department um after the installation of signage that indicates that these uh stations are for electric vehicles while charging. Uh, there is now um a ticket, a ticketable offense uh that pertains to um internal combustion engine vehicles parked in electrical vehicle, electric charging space. I believe it is a twenty five or a thirty dollar fine.
Paul. Can I just go back? So but going back to the five dollars per hour, so
Yep.
you know, I guess it depends on location in Brookline. If you are charging five dollars an hour for an overcharge in St. Mary's during the summer, that is a bargain for a Red Sox or a concert. Um, so you'd want to charge fifty dollars an hour uh to, to
That's right.
to spend the bucks.
Right, right.
So this, this overstate fee would be on top of the normal parking rate. Um, so even the combination of those two may not meet the expectations of the location. I, I can agree. Um, but the five dollars an hour would be on top of the, on top of the parking fee as recommended.
Thank you.
Yep, of course.
Mike.
So uh, one thing is, uh, having been over to the Kent Street Lot, when you, when you, when you cut the ribbon, in fact, but
Yes, thank you for attending.
Yeah, oh, that was so nice. And you should know that there were two of us sitting around this table who have electric vehicles. I don't know if they're more than two. Right, uh, Chaz and myself. So um.
You, you've outed those of us who don't.
Oh, sorry. Uh, there's no shame. There's, there's no shame, Bernard, no shame at all. Um, at least not yet. Um, the one thing that um, one thing strikes me is that uh there needs to be signage to make it clear that somebody has to pay the parking meter fee, even if they're paying for charging.
Okay.
That's not at all clear. Uh, and I would do, I, and you have to do that really everywhere, uh that you do, not just in Kent Street, obviously, uh, everywhere. Um, the, the, really the heart of the discussion here, it seems to me, is going to be forty cents or twenty five cents.
Yeah.
Uh, and so I'll get, I'll, I'll, I'll put my, my uh thought out here right in the beginning, forty cents penalizes person, people who can't install a charger at home. Uh, I have a, I live in a condo, we, the condom condominium members got together, we put uh charging capability in at a considerable cost because we had a trenching down the driveway from the street and so forth. And I don't want to tell you what it costs, but um it's not, e- even if you're only putting in a very simple line at home, it's, it's thousand, fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars. Um, and the condominiums and apartments is difficult to do that. Forty cents penalizes those people. We want to create an incentive for people to buy electric vehicles. Um, and so I very much appreciate what the staff is suggesting. However, we're paying more or less twenty five cents uh in the town for, that's break even for us. Um, it seems to me like we may need to make provision for setting a price that is break even or rounded to the nearest five cents or something like that, so that if our costs go up or down the, the change is reflected in the rate. And the reason I say that is years ago, when I was on the Transportation Board, um, we were charging something like forty dollars a month for overnight parking in town lots. Um, and it turned out that we should have been charging like a hundred uh to be close to market and uh we uh, we made one big ugly jump and a lot of people already screamed about it. Uh, but I'm sorry, they were getting a bargain all this time. I don't want to get into that situation again. I think we should always try to peg our rates uh close to uh what the uh, uh, what the uh
Market.
market rate is. I don't know if we can actually do that and give that discretion to um uh, uh, to the Transportation Division, but if we can, that would be great.
Uh, John?
I have a question about the process here. Um, and the question is is this really for us to decide? Um, I appreciate the fact that it's being brought before us, but as was described in the presentation, um, there was a determination of a recommendation by department staff which was taken to the Transportation Board, which then voted on its decision on, on these matters. And I'm looking at the Massachusetts statute, which as far as I can tell, delegates to the Transportation Board um, the authority over the, the, the decision that is being put in front of us. And then if there is a petition of twenty met uh voters of the town um to protest that decision, then, then it is brought to the Select Board. So I, I need some guidance as to um what, what the actual statute calls for in terms of whose determination this should be.
Hey, Chaz. Well, we can have, uh, Town Council is online and we can make sure that he's available to answer, but I just wanted to check. Sam, you had more of your presentation, right? Do we have, you have more information?
It was, it was really just a summary slide um at the end. Um, I, I really just wanted to highlight that um, the higher charging rate would, would hinder the adoption of electric vehicles and, you know, as a, a Transportation Division staff member, I know that uh we all think that there are too many cars on the road and that an EV is still a vehicle, but that there are individuals who need vehicles to get around and that um, the adoption of electric vehicles does help support the town's mission uh towards zero emissions in, in our climate action plan. Um, so I just, I really just wanted to cap off with that and we'll turn it over to either uh Rob or Town Council to to address the question of um jurisdiction over this decision.
Okay, first, uh, Mike, did you ask?
Yeah, with regard to jurisdiction, I know that on parking meter rates, that, that, that buck stops here. Uh, when it comes to setting rates. No, no, I appreciate that. So my, I, I don't know whether this comes into that same broad category, but let's get, you know, let's get an answer.
I'll jump in because I, I haven't seen Joe unmute yet, but it, uh, good evening, everyone. Rob King, Director of Engineering and Transportation. So generally, the, the, the information that I've received from Town Council and that uh, the team and I have lived by is that the Transportation Board has authority on how a space is used. But the Select Board has authority on what the fees are associated with the use of that space. And so the Select Board generally, for all things, uh permit and otherwise, if there is a change in fee or a new fee that's being created, that comes before this body for consideration. But I, I see, uh, I see Joe on, so please, if, if that, if that assumption is incorrect, I'm more than happy to, to pivot.
Uh, no, I'm sorry, uh, Joe Calumian.
No, I'm sorry, Joe Calumian, Town Council. I'm joining you through, from my basement because I was out sick today. So I don't have access to my records on the special acts of the transportation board in, unfortunately, in the year and a half I've been here, that's not something I've committed to memory. So if you want a more definitive answer, I'll have to look into it and get back to you, but I have every trust and confidence in Rod's answer.
John?
Yeah, I, I want to say that I've been scrolling through the statute and I think Mike is correct. But then that sort of begs the question of, it was presented to the transportation board first and, and they weighed in on it. So I'm not sure that they had the authority.
Oh, oh, yeah, they, they, they're appropriate in giving us a recommendation.
Right.
That's fine. Yeah.
But are we, are we actually voting on the recommendation of the transportation board or the recommendation of the transportation staff?
Well, that's the question. You, you're, you're, you get to make a decision. In, in the past, it's my understanding that when there's been a disagreement on these issues, it can't be, you know, resolved. We put it before the board and we say there are pros and cons. Transportation Board representatives are here. And again, you know, there are, there are policy reasons, you know, the transportation is, board has solid policy reasons for the recommendations.
Sorry, didn't see that, Brian.
And, and staff, you know, staff's concerns are, you know, reflect different policy considerations, but you are the policy setter. So it's your choice.
Are we going to hear from the board?
Sam, could you give us a sense of the differences or the reasons for the differences between the transportation board and the staff?
Absolutely. I think that as in the memo, there was a short, a short summary table that highlights how different communities handle both the combination of parking rates and electric charging rates. I think that in order to still respect that these are cars occupying our property and making them pay a fair rate, while also providing, as Michael said, you know, I think, is it 52% of individuals in town who are renters, to help support individuals who are leaning towards adopting EVs and the impact that we could have on a larger scale in terms of reducing the number of fossil fuel, fossil fuel vehicles or internal combustion engine vehicles on the road that by offering a lower rate, we could help as a town, provide that opportunity for people who don't have the ability to charge at home. I think that the higher rate certainly would help support our division in the network by providing a higher buffer in terms of financial support for maintaining and growing our network. But I, our, our team also sees the overstate fee as a way of collecting some fees and, and helping support the growth and maintenance of our network. So 40 cents is out in the market for those EV go, for the Green Spot stations. But those stations are, are, are looking for about a 20% profit. And you know, we as a town are looking to support people who are looking to adopt EVs. And I think that's the biggest difference between the recommendations in terms of just financial security.
If I can summarize what I understand, the pricing is, pricing structure is, if you park in an EV spot, you still pay the underlying.
Parking fee.
Parking meter fee. And 25 cents covers our cost for the electricity. So we're not really making a profit off of the charging, but we are making a profit off of the underlying parking meter rates.
Exactly. They are still occupying a town owned space and we will still get the revenue that's generated from them paying to park in that space.
And, and the, the staff's concern is to incentivize people or not to disincentivize people to use electrical vehicles or making it easier for them to use electrical vehicles by making the the rate charge as, as reasonable as possible.
Exactly. That is our, that is our goal. We see, you know, that we see these stations in some of the most popular locations in town and not to say that these individuals wouldn't go to these commercial districts otherwise, but you know, there is the view that someone who needs to come charge their vehicle in a commercial district, it could also help encourage them to spend, you know, the maximum three hours that they're allowed in the lot before they need to move their car and visit businesses or, or similar.
Okay, it's three hours maximum?
Uh, that.
Two, which is usually usual.
The town hall, I'll have to double check, but I do believe that most town hall lot or most town public parking lots have a three hour limit and I think there's one that has a four hour limit in, I think Fuller Street is four hours.
Okay.
Paul, you? Yeah, just briefly. So for, for the rate that we're charging is, is the, the cost of maintenance and, you know, operation of the equipment included in that?
So.
We own the equipment?
We own the equipment. So as part of this effort, I'm trying to utilize as many grant funding sources as possible. That's both through the Make Ready EverSource program, which offers a lot of this site preparation at $0 and the Department of Environmental Protection grant funding. So the best case scenario is that these are really low cost projects and that the only town costs really end up being the annual maintenance plans, which for the whole network would, would cost approximately 12 to $15,000 for just the cloud service plan, the maintenance plan. So we're trying to keep our costs as low as possible. And so yes, this would, this fee would cover the cost of electricity and depending on market rates, also provide a potentially very small profit.
Mike?
So one thing that should have occurred to me previously, with a level two charger, it takes a few hours to go from a relatively low, you know, like 20, 25% charge, state of charge to 80%. And if we have a meter that says that you can only park somewhere for two hours, that's kind of a, a drop in the bucket or maybe more than a drop in the bucket, maybe a cup full of water in the bucket. And my, my question is how do we reconcile the need for several hours versus the meter rate during the daytime? Obviously at night, there's no meter rate. But has that, have you discussed that at all? Is transportation board discussed that? And by the way, we have the chair of the transportation board sitting here. So we should give him a chance to tell us what he thinks.
Finish your questions. Invite him to speak. And this is a public hearing, so we're also going to be taking public comments.
Right.
If I can address that absolutely, the charging time to fully charge a car, an all electric car could take more than the three or four hours that are allocated. I would say that there, unfortunately, our system is not set up to dis, disallow people from re-upping their meter. That is obviously out of my control. But the hope is that people are not visiting these locations only when they need to go from, say, 20% to 80% and that they'd be able to get a significant of enough charge in three to four hours. You know, that's approximately 100 to 150 miles of range.
Yeah.
That it should be sufficient.
Okay, why, why don't we hold our questions until after the hearing? In the meantime, Brian Kane, would you like to have a few words?
Evening. Thank you. Thank you very much. Let me, Brian Kane, I have the great privilege and honor to chair the transportation board. Thank you. And let me start by, by thanking Sam and, and Rob King and Amy Ingles and Dan Martin and all the great folks in the transportation division that do amazing work every day to, to make this town a better place. Couple of facts, just to start to sort of try to explain where, how we came to our decision. We had a long discussion about this at the transportation board. We were told that it costs the town 30 cents a kilowatt hour, all in, maintenance and administration to charge something, to charge a vehicle. And so our, our starting point was 30 cents per kilowatt hour because I don't believe the town should be in the business of subsidizing any private vehicle operation. I don't, I'm not sure we can afford that right now. And, and I believe EV owners get significant subsidies from the federal and state government. So we didn't feel it was a municipal government's sort of job. So starting at a 30 cent per kilowatt hour rate, we then had a long discussion. And Mike, Sam, and a lot of what you said sort of came up in that hearing. This is not something we really want to do every year. The market rates fluctuate. Those folks are trying to make a profit. 44 cents per kilowatt hour is what Green Spot is charging in town. And so we came in at a 40 cent per kilowatt hour rate to be a little bit below market, but not so far below market that we're going to have to come back and do this again very often. And also there's, there was a strong kind of ideological belief that we shouldn't be way under what the market is willing to bear. A lot of, for the reasons that you brought up, selecting salmon, excuse me, select board member salmon. So the, the sense is that, you know, let's do this kind of once, let's do it now. And let's not have to come back and do this every so often. With respect to the overstate fee, I think that's pretty, hopefully self, self evident as to kind of why we put that in. You don't want, these things are really a, a public amenity or, or a public necessity. We don't want folks sitting on top of the charger. And some of the work that I've done in my career, I've had to deal with this, where you've actually had to put in valet parking at EV chargers. Because folks will just sit on them. And unless there's a fee in place to incentivize people to, to move, they tend not to, unfortunately. We don't always have the, our best behavior. And I guess I would just sort of wrap up by suggesting that, you know, to, to, at a level two charger to really quote unquote fill up an EV, it takes about six hours. So we're talking the difference right now between about $2.40 for a fill up and a, and a buck 50 for a fill up. So not huge money. So e- either way that you go, you will have our support. I hope you know that. We just feel like 40 cents is the best strategic move right now. So that we can kind of do this once and, and really set it at a rate that the market will bear and that is not above market, not below market. So the town isn't subsidizing anything. And go from there. Thanks a lot.
Yes. A, a quick clarifying question. I'm sorry. I, I might have misunderstood you. I, I thought a kilowatt hour, my experience, the charge per kilowatt hour, kilowatt hour, mo- modern electric vehicle can store about like 60 to 70 of those. So it's the total to charge an electric vehicle straight up is, is more in like the $10, $15 range. You know, depending on what you charge per kilowatt hour, I didn't think it was as low as like a buck 50 or 240. I thought it was more.
That's the increment between the two rates.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood your.
I don't have one, so I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. Cause a kilo, a kilo, you know, my, my car gets, for example, about three and a half miles to the kilowatt hour. So get, get ready to make those mile, miles per gallon conversions. That's what you're going to have to do.
So Bernard, I just, I just wanted to follow up to what, what Brian said and ask staff. Brian said that our, our all in cost is 30 cents per kilowatt hour. Is that, is that true?
Um, I apologize to Brian and the board if I misrepresented at the transportation board, the, the town costs. I, I believe that I had outlined them as ranging between 21 and, and 25 cents is what the town pays for electricity and that with town in costs, it could be 26 or 27 cents per kilowatt, which is close to 30 cents. And, and yes, as Chaz stated about the number of kilowatt hours in a, in a all electric vehicle, the difference between a 25 cent charge and a 44 cent charge would be the difference of, you know, obviously percentage wise, that might be a 40% difference, but it would be the difference of paying maybe like $14 to charge your car versus 22. Plus the, plus the parking, plus, plus the parking, plus the parking fee, which would add a, you know, additional 10 or $11 on top of that.
Still cheaper than, yes, in any event.
Seriously.
If you have.
I don't know what's wrong.
So this is a public hearing. You, you want to make any?
Just on the, on the other question about the, the meter rate and the charging rate, that was put in place, as Sam said, not everyone that parks at the EV only spots where there happen to be chargers will be charging. So we want to make sure that we're also using all of the tools that we have in the toolbox to encourage turnover. We are, the transportation board is not in the, in the interest, is not doing this for, for revenue purposes. We want to move cars around. We want folks to be coming and, and spending lots of time here and spending their money. And the meters are a, a, the tool that we have to encourage turnover. And so if someone isn't charging, but has an EV plate, we thought it was important to be able to encourage them to, to move around.
But if I have an EV plate and I just park there and I don't bother to charge, the police, the, either the, the police officer or the, or the meter, the meter off, the parking enforcement officer needs to see, am I plugged in or not?
Yeah.
So I want, have you coordinated with the police department at all or?
We have worked with the deputy superintendent of transportation on this and I have full faith and confidence that they know what they're doing.
Okay. Oh, I have no question that they know what they're doing. I just want to make sure that you're connected.
Oh, yeah. They come to all our meetings.
Okay, let's get this public hearing on.
The first person signed up for public comment is Neil Woschinski. Your three minutes will begin when you're ready.
Howdy, everybody. And thanks, Neil Woschinski, proud EV owner. And I think it's great that we're building a, a public EV charging network, but we also need to ask, what are we trying to achieve? And there needs to be a coordinated set of policies to meet our goals that I'm not fully seeing here. And I'll make four points. First, price, 40 cents per kilowatt hour plus the parking fee is the highest price for public parking, for public charging that I have found in the Boston area. For example, the Tesla Supercharger in Chestnut Hill charges 45 cents per kilowatt hour with no parking fee. According to multiple check-ins on the plat, on the PlugShare app, the recently installed chargers at the Kent Street lot are delivering only six kilowatt, kilowatts per hour. So when you add the 250 charge, let's say two hours of park, that yields a per kilowatt hour rate of 60 cents per kilowatt hour, which I think is, is outrageous. And our chargers are not superchargers. So I strongly support the staff recommendation for parking and I, for, for charging. And I hope you'll, you'll go with the staff recommendation. Point two is availability. I rode by the Kent Street lot this past Sunday. And of the 14 charging ports, one was being used to charge. Two were open and the remainder were blocked by either ICE cars or EVs not plugged in. In the Fuller Street lot, one car was charging and all of the others were blocked. I didn't see any signage on, around the new Green Street, Green Spot chargers that the, that the spots were only to be used for EVs while charging. So I heard we've, we do have policies and fines to enforce that EV, that the spots will be used for charging. But we actually need the enforcement. We need the signs. And I would encourage you to put a phone number for people to report violators. So, and that would help the police. Three, interaction with other parking policies. How does the widespread install, installation of level two charges, which deliver six or seven kilowatt, kilowatts per hour, work in conjunction with the two hour, and I heard the three hour parking limit or the overnight parking ban? Two hours is not enough to serve apartment dwellers who don't have onsite charges at home. And if it's a goal to serve those folks, we need a reset or reexamination of those parking policies around the EV spots.
You have 30 seconds.
The fourth point is reliability. We need to make sure that the chargers are always up and we need to hold Greens, Green Spot their feet to the fire. So I'll conclude by saying that I applaud the town for making the commitment to building a public EV infrastructure. I encourage you to adopt the staff pricing proposal, but you should also ask the transportation board and DPW to take a more holistic look at all our parking policies. Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is in person.
Good evening.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Good evening. Seth Kaplan, EV owner, husband of the Chair of the Commission of Women. And former Director of Transportation advocacy of the Conservation Law Foundation in a prior life. So let me just say, I mean, just in terms of, and the reason I'm consulting my phone is just in terms of the natural experiment that the town is that, that is conducting on charging prices that all of the free ones right now are currently in use as they often are. And as was just aptly noted, only one of the 14 right nearby is, is actually in use. And then commenting on the issue about blockage by internal combustion cars. Very often when you see on the app that a, one of the free ones shows as available, it's actually because the space is blocked in. It's happened to me in Coolish Corner this Sunday. So. So I would speak in favor of adopting the staff recommendation on the pricing. Currently in the renewable energy business, trying to develop offshore wind farms. And I spend a lot of time thinking in terms of the cost of electricity. And right now, if the town is astute at managing its electric load, as I believe it is, and in terms of the work with the community aggregation. 25 cents is actually a fairly reasonable rate. Especially given the good work of the staff to take advantage of the grants that are available to cover the capital cost of the chargers. And the infrastructure to support them. So and one other thing that I would note is, as somebody who relatively recently purchased an electric vehicle. Given the delays that go on these days in terms of getting an electrician into a home. I don't think we are alone in being folks who need access to the public chargers during a transition period. Even if you do have a house and a driveway. In terms of being able to have access to the public chargers to act as a bridge until you can have charging installed. Right nearby, as it very much implied in the, and Sam from the, from the transportation staff's comments, but to make it very explicit. Right next door in Jamaica Plain, the city of Boston is charging 25 cents. I think that sends a stronger signal about what would be an appropriate rate than the private company rate.
You have 30 seconds.
In terms of providing guidance on what the public can reasonably expect. For what I think is basically a core element of charging. And layered on top of that are, is the whole infrastructure of more expensive private chargers and home chargers. Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Richard Hassan. You've been promoted to a panelist and you can unmute. Your three minutes will begin.
Hi, thank you, Richard Hasman. Well, I'm here to support Mr. Downs and the Transportation Board's staff recommendations as well. Thank you, I think that was Mr. Kaplan who just spoke. Town of Boston, 25 cents, town of Cambridge, 18.9 cents. Charger of free, the charge point chargers in Newton, 20, 20 cents. One of those is 20, one of those is 25, Medford, 25 cents. These are the charge point town owned charging stations I'm referring to. I have a RAV4 Prime, mine is one of the plug in hybrids, so I only need 16 kilowatt hours. So in the two hours that it takes me to charge at one of the charging stations, I get almost all of my 54 miles that I can get electric out of my vehicle, which I purchased because I'm a very happy resident of Brookline. Know, knowing full well that my town, once they did start charging, and thank you for the free charging in the meantime. Once they did start charging, it would be in line with the other local towns and cities nearby. And in line with our very aggressive zero emissions goals. I'm not surprised to hear Mr. Kane, because just like the flippant and dismissive way. He reacted to my comments and led the, his part of the discussion. In an interview in the Brookline News, he said, quote, "To me, an electric car isn't special. And I don't personally think that the town of Brookline should be subsidizing electric vehicle charging at all, especially if you're driving $100,000 Tesla or Rivian." Well, unquote, addressing that, the majority of the electric cars in Massachusetts and Brookline in particular are not $100,000 Teslas or Rivians. I'm often parked next to a 25, 30, 35, $40,000 car. And by the way, once you get over a certain dollar amount, you don't get the state subsidy on your taxes, only the federal. And in some cases, you don't get that either. So if the town would like to continue incentivizing its residents to help lower emissions, I'm in full support of Sam and the staff's recommendations. And thank you for listening to me.
The next person signed up for public comment is Bill Heineman. You've been promoted to a panelist, you can unmute and share your video, your three minutes will begin.
Thank you, I've been an EV owner for 10 years and over that time I've had four different EVs, battery EVs. Moved to Brookline earlier this year into a condo. The condo had no support for charging and was very concerned about that until I was delighted to see, see that the town has provided a lot of chargers and I'm really happy to see it expanding. I think the primary goal for me is climate change, climate crisis, zero emissions, and the town should be doing everything possible to facilitate and encourage carbon reductions and the town provided chargers are an important way to do that. I agree with the comments that have been made so far that 25 cents or something on parity with your cost. Makes far more sense than what to me is a pretty significant premium at 40 cents plus the parking fees, as was pointed out. So it's hard for me to imagine any justification really for a significantly higher fee than your cost or than an ongoing residential per kilowatt hour cost, which I think is about 32 cents. So I, I, I agree with all the others that have said that the transportation staff's recommendation is the one that I hope you will go with. Thanks.
At this time, there are 22 virtual attendees and four in person.
Okay, thank you. We'll close the hearing and see if anyone on the select board has any additional comments. Is, by the way, is Miriam up on the board?
She is.
Okay. Any comments from the board? So let me ask this, I mean, is there any, well, what, what is the, the feeling of the board with respect to 25 versus 40?
Well, speaking for myself.
That's the only person.
The only person who can speak, I can't. I would say 25 cents, I would actually suggest boosting that $5 per hour overstay. Fee, I think that. I, I, I think that that's important, it's important to try and keep, just like it's important to try and keep parking meters at the curb. High enough price so that they get there some turnover. It's important to keep these priced so that if you abuse the privilege, there, there's a penalty that's significant.
Okay, that, that's a separate issue, is this?
It is.
Deal with the issue of.
Yeah, but 25 cents to me makes sense if it's, if it's a line of cost. And the gentleman who just spoke is correct that residential rates are about 32 cents, 32, 33 cents.
Okay, anyone else have an opinion on 25 versus 40?
Are you going? I was gonna say, I, you know, I, I would lean more towards 25 and 40. I'd like this to cover our costs, sounds like maybe 25 will, but a couple more pennies might help. I'm, I'm, I guess I'm less concerned about that than I am about the fact that regardless of how much you charge, if you can't get to the space.
Yeah.
And plug in, it doesn't matter how much we're charging, it's not available. So I think Neil Wosinski's public comment about policy with, you know, signage and enforcement and sinking. Parking and charging are important components of this, as much or more important than the rate, frankly.
Okay, I see Miriam has her hand up, but I think she was before you.
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead, Miriam.
We're losing you, Miriam, we can't, we can't hear you.
You're breaking up, Miriam.
Miriam, why don't we come back to you?
No, sorry, you just cut out again.
Sorry.
Did you find a better location? Okay, we'll come, we'll come back to you. John, and then Sam has his hand up too.
I'm persuaded that we should go with 25 cent fee, but I do want to say, because I appreciate very much that Brian has given serious thought to whether this is a subsidy. And I, I think that Neil Wosinski made some very pertinent comments, and I do think we will need to evaluate going forward. The net cost of this, and if it's a subsidized cost. I think then we have to try to figure out. I want to subsidize conversion to electric vehicles as much, as much as possible. At the same time, I, I think we owe it to the public to, if we're going to provide subsidies out of our revenues. That we're not providing subsidies to people who are at the highest end of the income scale. And it's very, I know that's going to be very hard to pin down, and I appreciate Bill Heineman's comment that, you know, not all vehicles are Teslas. But I, I think the general picture of who is the early adopter is known data. And, and I think we can rely on some data to evaluate what exactly is the right level of fee that we should be charging. I want to say on behalf of Sam, and he'll probably add this himself. My understanding is those signs have been on order. So there was no negligence, as far as I know by anybody, in terms of the signs not being up. It's, it was inconvenient, but I think at the same time, it reflected the very, very good work of our department in getting the stations in place. Which wasn't the easiest thing to do as readily as they could. It turned out to be more readily than with the signs were available, so those have been ordered.
Sam, you had your hand up.
I just, thank you, John, I just wanted to address Paul's concern with the signage and John just touched very well on that. There has been a disconnect. That those signs will, will be in place, that's what I've heard for a number of weeks from Green Spot. And the signs that members will see at the existing town owned stations. That say EV parking while charging only will be the standard for all town owned stations going in, so the signage will be in place and those vehicles blocking spaces will therefore be able to be sighted. As soon as those signs are in.
Okay, thank you, Miriam, can you? Can you speak to us now?
She did post in the chat, quote, "I support the 25 cents."
Okay. Mike, you had.
So I, I just, I think the, the comment about the $100,000 Rivians and Teslas. Just, it, it, I'm, I'm amused. Because I think that if you look around, you'll see a lot more Chevy Bolts coming onto the market and generally speaking, the price of these vehicles is coming down, they're not, not very many, even Teslas, $100,000. My daughter, in fact, has a Chevy Bolt and I'm looking at the MSRP and it's $36,000 and it's bolt as in bucket off. So you know, there's a, there's a significant change in the market.
Mike, we, we have on the table whether to, 25 cents versus 20 cents, the consensus on the board is 25 cents per kilowatt hour. The overstay fee, I think, is to be addressed later, I'm not sure it's for us to address.
I, I think if you, if you vote the package through, there's otherwise consensus, so if you vote the recommendation through. You can just move, if you're inclined to 25 cents, you can move the staff recommendation through and we can revisit if you want to.
Yeah, that, okay, that's what I meant to say, that, that, you know. We're voting 25 cents per kilowatt hour based on consensus on the board and that includes a $5 per hour over, overage fee. If we want to change that, that will come back through us through the transportation department at a later date. So I move 25 cents per kilowatt hour and an overstay fee of $5 per hour, equivalent of $5 per hour. On favor, please indicate by saying aye, John Van Squire.
Aye.
Miriam Ashkenazi.
She appears to be offline.
Okay, Mike Salmon.
Aye.
Paul Warren and Chair votes aye. Thank you. Next, we have grant of locations, public hearing. Sam Downs again and Anna. So this is public hearing on impossible vote on petition of N Star Electric doing business as ever source energy to install underground conduit on Webster Street. Renew electric service for the
Hotel.
To electric vehicle charging stations. Et cetera. So is there someone to speak on, well, I guess Sam, you're speaking on this, right?
I, I love this transition here, thank you.
Explain why this was not taken up by the public hearing by the Special Staff Committee?
Absolutely.
Just for our information.
Absolutely, so thank you all for the conversation on the EV charging rates. So what I did not touch on was this, this project for the grant of location is for two level three charging stations, these would be the first town owned fast chargers, or they will be the first town owned fast chargers in Brookline. This project had, did not meet the timeline for a butter notification. Because we were moving the process through ever source as quickly as possible, there were holdups with ever source. And with the goal to have these chargers fully installed. Prior to the winter moratorium. We so graciously asked that the select board hear this. Prior to the next licensing hearing in November, which would not allow us to complete this project and get the stations up and running before next spring. So there were holdups with ever source and we did not have sufficient time to get a butter notifications out one week prior to the last licensing hearing.
Great. Any questions from the board? And this is not a public hearing, or is it?
It's a public.
It is a public hearing, okay. Devin, is there anyone in the view that would like to speak?
At this time, there are three attendees in person and 21 virtually. No one has used the hand raise or Q and A feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment.
Okay, I would therefore like to close the public hearing. And I move approval of the grant of location. On a petition from N Star Electric doing business as ever source to install underground conduit on Webster Street for two electric vehicle fast charging stations. On favor, please indicate by saying aye, John Van Squire.
Aye.
Miriam Ashkenazi, are you there? Apparently not.
No.
Mike Salmon.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay, next.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation and possible vote. On actually, the question of accepting the housing production plan updated and submitted to the state, to be updated and submitted to the state. Karen Bruton is here as well as Roger Blood. And I understand you want us to give you a conditional approval, so tell us why and what that means.
Sure, I'm also looking at Roger here.
Final.
So, good evening, everybody, I'm the Director of Planning Community Development. With us tonight is Judy Barrett, she's online, who you'll recognize from days when we were processing Mini 40Bs. Judy is right now extremely busy helping many communities with their housing production plans as well as the MBTA Communities Act, I understand this is her eighth public meeting just today. So we are lucky to have her and be in her schedule. My hope is that after her presentation and some comments from Roger. That you all would be willing to approve the housing production plan. With the condition that the final version be looked at one last time by Select Board Chair Bernard Green, as well as Roger Blood. I believe there's, it comes down to one sentence that we should add in the housing production plan. Which has to do with an estimate of where we are of our existing deed restricted affordable units. Which is about 7.8%, and our goal is to get to 10% actual deed restricted affordable units. Which is a totally different count than the way the state counts it on the subsidized housing inventory. So with that, I will turn it over to Judy, she has a very short presentation to refresh your memories on this journey we've been on together. And then Roger Blood from the Housing Advisory Board, and I can answer any questions.
So, yes, thank you, Cara, so I'm going to screen share my slides. So thank you for asking me to meet with you this evening, I am just going to go through at a very high level. What was really an enormous amount of work by the consulting team, by the Housing Advisory Board, the working group that was assembled to assist with this project and certainly town staff. Who played an instrumental role in helping us move this project forward. who played an instrumental role in helping us move this project forward. So people often ask, what is a housing production plan? It's, it's not a title I would have picked if I was trying to create a housing plan opportunity for cities and towns, but this is what it's called. And it is part of the regulations for Chapter 40B. As you all know, that is the state's affordable housing law. And the focus of a housing production plan is to increase the supply of housing that's eligible for the subsidized housing inventory. Now, as Cara already pointed out, there is a difference between being eligible for the subsidized housing inventory and being an affordable unit. Those are two different numbers. And naturally, what most communities try to do is closely align what is listed and what is actually affordable. But it's not always possible to, to do that. Because this, there is a regulatory basis for the housing production plan, there are certain strategies that the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities requires communities to address in one way or another in their plans. Unfortunately, Brookline has done all of that in this plan. But the, the strategies include identifying zoning districts where perhaps some change in the regulations could increase the supply of affordable housing. Identifying sites that might be appropriate for use of the comprehensive permit to, to create more housing. Possibly those could be sites that could be rezoned as well if the community preferred to use a zoning approach instead of Chapter 40B. Identifying town properties that could be used for affordable housing. Thinking about the kinds of housing a community would want to encourage. And then are there any regional strategies to increase affordable housing in your community? So as you all know, the subsidized housing inventory is a, is an unpredictable thing to track. And so when I first worked with you on the previous plan, you were considerably below 10%. But in the course of working on this plan, the town ended up over 10%. And then more recently, just fell back down below. And all of this has to do with the, a potential gap that happens between when the zoning board of appeals does its job by issuing comprehensive permits, and when the developer is actually prepared to go into, to commence construction. And if there is more than one year gap between those two events, housing and livable communities will remove units from the subsidized housing inventory that previously counted from the date that they were approved by the ZBA. And those units won't come back on again until there's a building permit and then eventually a certificate of occupancy. So the, the problem is certainly not that the ZBA hasn't done its job. They've, they're an extraordinary board. I can tell you from all the communities I've worked in, they're really fabulous. But despite that, it's just been hard for the town to know where it is at any given point and to plan accordingly. So that chart is just a little illustration of how the SHI, I'll start defaulting to acronyms, I apologize, but how much the SHI has fluctuated just in the last, you know, six or seven years. So at the outset of this process, we were asked by the working group to really put together an engagement process that got beyond sort of the people who would typically be expected to participate in a process like this, because they were going to participate anyway, and they, and they certainly did. But there are a lot of people in your community who don't feel the same sense of agency to be able to speak up at a public meeting and represent their interests. And so we were asked to try to continue to find those folks and speak with them and understand what their housing needs are. And as a result of that effort, we started out with just some small group and individual interviews with people who were, you know, going to be able to tell us a story, and an important story about their knowledge of the housing situation in Brookline. And for the most part, those tended to be your major housing players and some other people who've just been very active in, in housing. We kind of went from that into some focus groups that were a lot more kind of intensive. It took us about two months to really reach the people who, who really needed to be heard from, but who wouldn't, we're not going to just sign up for a meeting. We did a housing need survey, which I think you're probably all familiar with. There were three townwide presentation and discussion meetings along the way. Brookline Day, Dodson and Flinker spent the day in Brookline just talking to people about possibilities for the Babcock Lot. The Six Word Stories Project, which was an amazing effort involving your libraries. We were very grateful to them for their assistance. There was another round of individual and small group focus groups as this project went forward. And of course, the Housing Advisory Board meetings, at which people would often show up and ask questions or offer comments about the housing plan process. So we tried to keep track of who all we had spoken with along the way. And our best estimate is that between the meetings and interviews, we had about 343 unduplicated people. And by that, I mean sometimes a person might participate in more than one session. So as far as we know, it was 343 unduplicated participants. And then, of course, there were 831 folks who responded to the survey. Out of the data analysis that's in the plan, and really based significantly on all the interviews and the outreach that we did, the critical needs that we identified and that are discussed in the plan are housing choices that are suitable and affordable for families with children, especially lower moderate income families. Homeownership opportunities for moderate income families. Housing search assistance for very low income households and people with disabilities, and those with limited English proficiency, and then funding for major improvements at state funded public housing developments in, in Brookline. So those were sort of like the critical needs. They're not the only needs, but they were the ones that tended to rise to the surface the most frequently in all the community consultation that, that we did. So this is really just a bullet list of some recommendations that are far more elaborately explained in the housing production plan. But I don't think it's any surprise to anybody in Brookline to say that the bylaw, zoning bylaw really needs to be updated. And it's not just, it's not just a question of whether you have a form based code or something else. It's really the whole structure of the document. It's just very, it really needs attention. It's a very difficult document to navigate. And it's, looks to us like something that would really benefit from a full recodification. Using town owned sites for affordable housing, allowing additional density on key opportunity sites. I will point out at this point, I have not put all the maps in this presentation. There are simply too many. But Dodson and Flinker did an enormous amount of work looking at a variety of sites, referred to them by the working, the housing plan working group, some of which were discussed in the previous housing production plan. And to try to really look at what might work on some of those sites. And they became part of the discussion at least one of the community meetings that we did. Looking at ways to allow additional density at transit nodes and, and sort of transformation areas. Also near, near transit stops, but not necessarily directly adjacent to them or not on main corridors. So thinking about how you sort of create activity centers close to transit, including right next to, but also in the general vicinity of, consider moving for the, you know, toward a form based code. Reconsidering, refocusing open space requirements to provide a more attractive public realm. It's one thing to have open space requirements that are quantitative. It's another to have open space requirements that are qualitative and actually do the job that, that open space can do in an urban center, which is really to provide aesthetics and relief and so forth. So just thinking more about qualitative open space standards was a recommendation. Providing incentives for adding units in the historic homes in the T and F districts instead of just outright demolishing them. I'll point out that Cambridge does a very nice job of encouraging and reviewing infill in some of their historic buildings. We've had reason to look at some of their work for another project we're working on. And so it can be done, and we think you could benefit from that. Consider eliminating floor area ratio requirements for residential and mixed use buildings in your most dense areas. During the location based testing that Dodson and Flinker did, you know, we noted multiple overlapping dimensional requirements that sometimes just make it really hard to figure out what you can even do with a site. And then increasing the percentage of ground floor of a building that can be dedicated to residential use in the L and G districts. So those are kind of, that's really a high level of, of a number of recommendations in the plan, all of which are intended to, you know, to address the state's requirements for strategies in a housing plan and get at issues that were identified in the documents. So I'm happy to try to address any questions or comments that you may have. I'll leave this up if you want me to, or I can take it down if you prefer.
Okay, Roger, do you want to speak? I actually like to hear you, your, your thoughts on this.
Thank you, thank you, Bernard. I'm Roger Blood, Chair of the Housing Advisory Board, which was responsible for initiating the update of this housing production plan and monitoring its progress along the way. And we're gratified that this is now the last threshold step of a several years' process. And first of all, thanks to Judy and her consulting team for doing a remarkably good job overall. And I think that those who read the production plan will be impressed with, with its content and with the direction that it's, that it's given us. Thanks also to Cara, the department, and her staff, especially Joe Viola, who led most of the staff support process along the way, as well as the, the Housing Production Plan Working Group, and also the other HAB members. This housing production plan is an update and very different than what we did in 2016, which was a state directed, more or less exercise, where we wanted to get a state approval for so-called safe harbor to give us a, a little relief on our plan to reach 10% with an annual production goal that if we achieved it, we would get some temporary relief along the way until reaching the magic 10%. This, this report is really quite different, not only in timeframe, but it's really for a different purpose to be what I would call a real housing production plan, which at the end of the day, requires all of the things that the state says have to be included. But one of which is something that I've focused on along the way and want, just want to comment briefly on tonight, which is that the bottom line or the central focus is quantitative goals. And in order to, to achieve those and fulfill that requirement, we really have to have not only us, but, but you all and our public who read this, understand what we're talking about. Strategies are important, and qualitative goals and all of the other things that Judy has articulated are critical, but they ultimately feed into quantitative goals, which as the report notes, and I think you've heard, we are actually changing in this report the fundamental definition of an affordable housing unit. People know about the so-called SHI and the magic 10%, but what is the SHI? What is 10% of what? And this report, I felt, and I've expressed this along the way and want to just do so tonight. I think it fell a bit short. There's a fraction of one page in the report that actually deals with quantitative goals. And I think that, and Cara's proposal, I just want to say I'm fully supportive of a conditional approval if you, if you all choose to, to take such a vote tonight. That particular aspect of this report being so critical, I think needs to be fleshed out a little bit more with just a few additional numbers and maybe a paragraph explaining what the SHI is. The fact that in our case and in every community case includes hundreds, hundreds of units that are called affordable, and I'll be blunt, I've called them fake affordable units because they're market rate rental units. And we are, in a real sense, only at seven point something, under 8% of 10% of real affordable units. Deed restricted, income qualified, needs based affordable units. Also, included in those real affordable units are a category that you all are familiar with, and many of us advocating be a piece of this plan. And what the town does going forward, are affordable units serving moderate income or so-called workforce housing, which income wise are in the range of over 80% of area median income, up to 100% of area median income. We don't have a lot of those. I think we want more, but the state totally ignores those in the so-called SHI. So what I would like to see, and I'm very willing to work with Cara and Judy and Bernard, is some additional narrative that explains what this difference is, why we're changing our basis to real affordable housing units, and shows the two adjustments that we are making in this process. Taking out the very large number of fake affordable units and adding back in a much smaller number of real affordable, moderate income units that the town has managed to produce so far, and hopefully more in the future. So I think I don't need to, to say much more than that. And hopefully, we will have a successful acceptance of this report, and the state will welcome it accordingly. Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Did you want to open up the questions?
No, I want to have Cara Bruton explain to us what she's asking us to do. And let me just say, I, and many of us presented comments and suggested revisions to the original version of the housing production plan. I noticed that absolutely none of my comments were incorporated, despite having been assured that they would be. So I'm sort of hesitant to even give conditional approval. But yeah, tell me, tell me why I'm wrong and tell me, you know, what we should do.
I'm never going to tell you that you're wrong. That's for sure. Judy-
I'm often wrong, so don't worry about that.
Judy has received, you know, all of those comments were fed in, and Judy made extensive edits. I don't know which, whose edit she chose and which she didn't. But maybe Judy could walk through with you some of the comments that you could, could maybe highlight some of the comments you had, and Judy could respond to this specifically. My request is that the Select Board consider voting to move this housing production plan forward, understanding that the Select Board Chair and Roger Blood, Housing Advisory Board Chair, would sign off on the version that actually gets to the state. The primary piece that I agree with Roger, we need to include is the number of existing deed restricted affordable units as a baseline, so that we know right now we're about 7.8%. Our ultimate goal is to be 10%, right? So we need to insert that 7.8% number as, as Roger suggested. That's what I'm asking for. Any additional comments that you want? Judy's here to take up your, your thoughts on that.
Paul?
So first, thank you for the presentation. And I know how hard Judy and Roger and everybody worked. I participated in many of those, those meetings, which I thought, you know, is a, is a benchmark as to how you ran the community input portion, and I thank you for it. This question's for Cara, and then I'll have a follow up comment. Cara, when, Cara, when is this due? Is there, is there a date that we have to have this thing in by?
It is not due.
It is not due. So I guess, so I'm going to make-
Wait, there's no deadline?
There's no deadline. So I have two comments.
But one, one piece about that, I was being cute by half. In a couple of years, in, I think it's 2025 or '26, there are several larger projects that will fall off our state housing inventory because they were done decades ago. So we need to get this into the state and approved at least before then, so that we will, if we do fall below 10% again for that or other reasons, we'll have that in place. But we as staff also need to understand what our goals are and direction for you all to move.
And when's that? When, when do you anticipate those bigger, bigger developments falling off?
In a couple of years.
In a couple of years. Okay. So my first thought is, my head is going to explode for the timing of this thing. We are in the middle of trying to do the, be compliant with the MBTA Communities Act. It's consumed, it's consumed the entire summer for many of us, as well as planning in, in the Select Board. I honestly think that asking for this approval couldn't come at a worse time for me personally. I, it's just, I want to wait and say table this until after town meeting. That's my, my first thought. So I'm not prepared at all to support this right now. There's just too much going on, Roger. The second thing is, I, I'm, I'm really concerned that we, that we keep falling below the 10% SHI. We keep chasing our tails. I don't feel like we have an adequate strategy in order to stay above it. I think we always hover around it. We plan just to hover around it, and therefore we fall below it. One of the things that I'm really concerned about is there's a component of falling below that I don't think is mentioned in the report. We don't have a strategy around it. And it has to do with, with when building permits are issued, when demolition permits are issued, when occupancy permits are issued. And, you know, we have hundreds of units up at Hancock Village that are actually occupied. And we're not getting credit for them because an occupancy permit has not been issued by the building commissioner. And I, it's just, I can't, I can't understand it. And, you know, we fall below, and then there's a rush for, for 40Bs. We operate at such a tight margin. We operate at such a tight margin on on the SHI that I think that it's ripe for for delay in order to open up and fall below the SHI. I'm not saying that there's nefarious intent by anybody, but it we're never ever going to get ahead if we consider our goal to be 10% is the target. Our our goal should be 15% or 20%. 10% is is just is setting us up for ongoing continuous failure from a policy perspective to remaining above the SHI and frankly, actually having real deed restricted affordable housing available for our residents.
I think that the this can be both at the same time, Paul, in the sense that real deed restricted affordable units at 7.8% and a goal to get those up to 10. That that will, just by the numbers, put the state's measure of this way over 10. So it's really both happening at the same time, a realistic plan and a realistic roadmap. But that will automatically drive a much higher number because it will always include these fake affordable units because the state's going to give us credit for those. And they're they're just as good for for protecting us against the 40Bs that we don't want and keeping us in a safe harbor. And we'll be well over 10% on the state's measure the whole period of time when we're following our own housing production plan for the real affordable units.
Just one one quick hope. Excuse me. I I agree with you, Roger. You know, I guess that falling below the SHI is troublesome because I think it creates a tremendous amount of conflict in the community and unpredictability. But frankly, the only way that we've gotten deed restricted affordable units in Brookline in any significant is from 40Bs. That's a failure. That's a failure of planning and policy. And I think we could do a heck of a lot better. I don't know if this this housing production plan addresses that or not. But I just don't, you know, I'm I'm disappointed that 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 we're we keep falling below and we keep chasing our tails. I can't articulate it much better than that. And I think I think we absolutely need to do better. And I don't know if this document is the way to do better.
Mike.
So I Paul, I think it's also a failure of zoning, which is when you listen to the recommendations and you boil those recommendations down into a nice little recipe, it's a recipe for the Harvard Street Plan. Form-based zoning, no FAR, more density in the transit, no. Roger, I have a but there's one thing that that I want to understand better. Workforce housing is very important because what we have lost is housing for that 80% to 120% of of area median income. And my question is, how if we achieve housing in that range, if we get housing built in that range, is it not possible to include that in the numbers that we give to the state? I mean, that those are real affordable as you as you characterize them.
We will give the report to the state, which will have included this explanation of the two different ways of measuring affordable units, but under the the law, I believe, a chapter 40B, the state is only able to recognize 80 and under. But the town, I think we should have a plan that that articulates our own policy. And that's an important part of it. And it's all the more important because the CPA is coming in with funding, which for the first time will allow some of that funding to be channeled towards this 80 to 100, where we've where before that, we've only been able to do with it with inclusionary zoning, which has zero public dollars attached to it. I I might add one thing I failed to mention earlier and having to do with the the timing of this. The the CPA committee is now meeting and they're forming their plans and you're going to be hearing more about that. That's moving into reality after all the years of of ramping up. And that is expressly intended in the housing component of the CPA and the deployment of substantial resources for for affordable community housing, looking to the content of the housing production plan for guidance of both the CPA committee, the HAB and the community on what how those priorities should rest. Judy has mentioned that the community has expressed its priorities for affordable housing resources to go to the lower and very low income segments having the greatest need, which would be mostly rental housing, but as Judy also mentioned, a component of that, but not the top priority is also to go to the moderate or workforce housing over 80 to 100 income category, but more directed towards first-time homeownership opportunities.
Okay.
John? I I just want to say that we're we're way behind, you know, where we need to be. And there's people waiting for their turn to speak to other issues tonight. And I'm sensing that we maybe don't have five members of the board here. I can't tell if Miriam's still with us.
She's not currently.
In which case, you know, where Bernard has expressed hesitation and Paul has expressed hesitation, it almost doesn't matter, you know, if there are two of us who think we should go forward. We don't have a majority to go forward. So maybe we should just move on to the next item.
Cara, react.
I would like Judy to help us out here. I think there is some shelf life with not only the data, but also the community interactions that have happened, some of which started two years ago, just, you know. So if we, yeah, so if we literally wait another two years, I'm Judy, maybe you can speak to that.
In two years.
I'm just saying it might be helpful to hear from Judy, the shelf life of the work that she's done. She's probably going to need to move on to other things. We need to settle up with her. If we're going to shelve this, we'll probably need to hire a different consultant.
I should make clear that I'm in favor of voting to move forward. So I mean, if if you haven't decided to say no, we might have three votes to move forward on this.
Well, my 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 concern is that, you know, both Roger and I have indicated that, you know, this this plan has sort of ignored some important issues. And, you know, for us to conditionally approve it now doesn't mean that those issues will be addressed.
But he's recommending that's what we do.
That, right? Do what?
That we that we approve it now. He's saying that he's now okay with us approving it tonight.
Well, I mean, he's saying that. I'm not sure that I agree that 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 we're at that point. Do you understand my my problem? And 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 that is that, you know, you're asking us to conditionally approve the housing production plan, but what does that mean? It means we've approved it. You know, we talk about conditions, but when when are those conditions going to be fulfilled?
It would mean that it's conditionally approved, subject to your being satisfied with with your concerns and Judy being willing to accept whatever you would like to see. And and my my being satisfied with the big concern that I've expressed and I'm comfortable, but I can't obviously speak for you and the other concerns you've expressed that that my concerns can be satisfied through this conditional process. And I know.
So how what what are the steps to that, as you call it, conditional process? I mean, do we meet next week and go over stuff or and what what are we talking about doing?
I think we would, you know, working with with Cara, we would need to express and and articulate how we think the report should be modified in these areas that we're concerned about. And I'm comfortable that, having spoken with with Cara and previously with Judy, that mine can be done rather quickly because I don't think there's any fundamental disagreement. I think it's a matter of of just doing it. And I think that can be done here if she agrees.
Yeah, let me just say that my concerns have to do with the tone. Yeah. And and the fact that that tone hasn't changed is very important to me. Maybe we can fix that fairly easily, but, you know, I still have that that concern. Paul, you wanted to.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, what I'm hearing is that you have a number of issues. I think there may be other issues that need to be provided feedback on. Roger has issues. I I would really like to see us table this until after town meeting. We are up to our eyeballs in very serious work that has to do with housing, that are trying to solve these very issues. And, you know, maybe during that time, there can be some amendments made or changes made, but bring it back in December after we're done the town meeting. Yeah. That's my my suggestion. I'm not ready to vote on it tonight.
I was I was going to ask Cara, Judy, if we if we put this back on the calendar for, say, you have you have two meetings in December, you have two set meetings in December currently. Oh, my my own calendar here. Your meetings in December are currently scheduled for the 5th and the 19th. So if we brought this back on the 5th, which would be before town meeting or in the, you know, right before town meeting picks up again, but after hopefully the zoning articles are dealt with in the first week of town meeting. Is I guess the question to the team is, is there a staleness issue there if the board takes this up again in December? Or is that is there is that okay?
That's time would make.
Okay. And then is with the members of the board, is that sufficient time for you and you, Roger, to get any comments that you might have in knowing that the town meeting is currently presumably scheduled? And obviously, the moderator has the final say in this. And town meeting, the town meeting is a body has a final say in this. The current presumed schedule is that the major zoning and planning or any any articles related to zoning and planning will be dealt with in the first three days of town meeting, which happened in November, after which point there's kind of a Thanksgiving lull and then it picks up again. If we put this on for the 5th, is that sufficient time for you to review and get any comments that you might have in so that we can we on staff can review and have a revised proposal in for your consideration of the 5th? We could also do that.
I'm just I'm just looking.
Yeah, we, you know, because the other option is the 19th.
I would prefer the 19th.
What, December 19?
December 19th.
I mean, in any, even if we approved it conditionally, we still have to come back and 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 resolve all these issues. So my question, my original question was, what does conditional improvement mean approval mean?
So for me, again, I've said this twice now, I was hoping to get conditional approval based on adding the additional and baseline information. I understand very clearly that that Paul Warren has additional comments, which I have not seen, and that you have additional comments that we have all seen that have not been incorporated as much as you like. And I think that needs to be a conversation with our consultant and you, probably an offline meeting. I can't help move that forward.
At any rate, this has to come back to this board at some later date.
Yeah, one way or the other.
One way or the other.
Well, I mean, as you say, conditional, it would not, it would have to come back as a practical matter in order to satisfy the condition, which is show me what's been done.
So Paul, what what's wrong with the 5th? You think that's too soon?
Well, again, I'm just I'm I'm just sensitive to the fact that we are we are extremely busy right now with town meeting stuff that's related to all of this housing.
Is there any expectation that special town meeting for which is, you know, the MBTA?
Yeah, I would hope it's done by.
Is going to go into December. That that's that would be a mitigated disaster.
Okay, so I so Bernard, I'm going to leave. I'm going to defer this to you. I I think just for me right now, I'm just giving you my 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 voice is that I'm not prepared to vote conditional approval. You have a lot of issues that you haven't been incorporated and I haven't focused on it that I don't know what conditional approval does for us. Let's bring it back on the 5th. And before that time, if the changes aren't made to to your satisfaction, we wouldn't approve it on the 5th. So bring it back on the 5th.
Okay. Can we do that? Or I'm I'm saying, I accept your your proposal.
All right. But I think in the in the interim, I think the important thing is, you know, I mean, there's a there's a question now, which I think is important. What is conditional approval? What would conditional approval now allow planning to do that we can't do if we table it to December? And I think it's just important to understand if there is there is there anything? Is there anything that that we need conditional approval for? Because if not, i- if not, then I think the, I mean, regardless, I just want to see is procedurally, do we need a conditional approval for something to happen?
If if the conditional approval, as Cara and Cara suggested, we're we're given, subject to Bernard's satisfaction and mine on the HAB, it wouldn't have to come back and as an agenda item and take take the full board's vote, I don't believe.
I think I think given that we don't have feedback from the whole board, that's a tough, that's a tough thing to carry because we have feedback that hasn't been given yet. You know, board members that need to review. I think in that instance, then we we put it on for the 5th. But in the interim, I think staff would ask that if you can, knowing, you know, your schedules after that first week of town meeting, if you wouldn't mind prioritizing any comments that you may have on this draft so that in advance of the holiday, we can get that, we can review it over that.
We should send them to Bernard or send them to you.
Send, I mean, I would send I would send any comments you have to Devon and Devon can route them both to the full board in their packet and to to the HAB and Cara, so that the HAB has a chance to see them, planning has a chance, we have staff have a chance to see them.
Okay.
We can, we can review accordingly.
And I'd just just like to say that conditional approval, unless it, if it means anything, it means we have to come back and vote again, right? And if it does, if if we don't have to vote again, then it's not conditional approval, it's it's final approval. So I mean, I think that I just don't think it's it's worth.
I move to table this until the 5th of December.
Okay. Okay. Okay, any anything else on this?
Thank you.
I just want to thank the the whole team on this. It's been, this is a massive, massive effort. And so we just clearly need to further further review and make sure that we have your comments, that we are ready on the 5th to address anything that you may have. And we can ensure that Judy's work with us can come to a conclusion.
When you say you're you're talking about the board.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Fraley, you have, this is not a public hearing, but I will let you have your say.
I would like to add, hi Regina Fraley from South Brookline, supporting what Paul is saying on everything. I'd like to add something to it as a witness of and fairly knowledgeable about subsidized affordable housing over the last 60 years. I've seen one 28, one age that had a built-in 30-year limit to it. And one of the buildings was Roger Stern's building and he graciously agreed to extend it for 10 years, but that was by agreement and then it was decontrolled altogether. Hancock Village had in it that it was perpetuity. Turns out at some point during the legislatures, somebody decided to redefine perpetuity and not be the meaning of the usual meaning of the word, and it's defined as 30 years. So I urge this board to do some serious thought into incorporating the affordable components into a deed restriction so that they really are perpetuity and not just a word that has been changed its meaning. And then you won't be quite chasing your tail over the 10% every single time you can rely on those units when they're framed. And all 40Bs have an end game in sight. They would all be decontrolled and you're constantly doing it. And I agree with with Paul's, I think what I perceive to be his emotion about it, the constant chaos that this has suddenly brought on since 2000. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we're running a little late now. We caught up and then we got behind. Apologize. We have a noise bylaw waiver, public hearing, presentation and possible vote on the request from Bar Taco, 1643 Beacon Street for a noise bylaw waiver for October 17, 2023 through October 19 and October 23rd and October 24th between 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM for work to install windows. Do we have someone to present on that?
Yes, Jennifer Depazo-Gilbrecht here on behalf of Bar Taco. Thank you very much for having me this evening. So this is the request for for a waiver to the noise bylaw, not so much for noise, but for ours. Bar Taco is a new restaurant in town. They also have a location down in the Seaport and they've been open now for about two months. The owner is a a local young man who grew up in South Brookline and they're doing really well. Like I said, they've been open for about two months. Now, their approved plans did have temporary windows approved because the procurement for the permanent windows, which were approved by the planning board and by the preservation commission, had an extremely long max manufacturing and lead time. So this would allow them to keep operating the business, stay up and running and put those windows in in the evening, hopefully starting tonight. and put those windows in, in the evening, hopefully starting tonight. And that is the request for Tuesday through Thursday and then Monday, Tuesday.
Cutting it close to the comment I heard.
Yeah, yeah.
Paul, do you have something to say? Oh, okay.
I, I do, Mr. Pazzo, you did say they're going to start tonight.
If, if, if approved, if not approved, they wouldn't be able to start. But
Until approved.
Haven't had any objections, then we did a, an extensive mailing as required. So and haven't heard any, any issues. Like I said, it's not really a noise issue, it's an hours of operation. The hope is to keep this business doing as good as it's been doing up and running and just replace these temporary windows with the more permanent ones.
And so you say it's not a noise issue, is there any noise? I mean, other than.
There is, most of the noise is interior. It's interior as they put the permanent windows in. But this is really nothing that's going to violate the decibel level.
Okay.
As much as it, it would be the hours of operation and did have a brief meeting with the building commissioner who understands, and we would have a police detail also on board.
Okay, Jennifer, we, we understand. Mike?
Yeah, you know, I'm the, I'm, I'm the naysayer on, or the, the one who is most likely to say no on noise by law waivers. But this one, this is a one-story building, there's nobody living above it, it's a fairly large building. That is in terms of, of frontage. And I don't think that there's anybody directly behind. There's a, there's an alleyway, a parking lot, yeah, directly behind it. So this looks pretty benign. And I, I, you know, unless we hear something from somebody tonight, then that's definitive, then I think we should go ahead.
Okay, Paul.
I just want, I, I, I think I agree with Mike. The only, I, I'd like to see maybe put a condition or two on this. Generally contractors like to have some music going, you know, something to help keep them moving. I guess, you know, I would just ask that there's a condition that says there's no, you know, no music playing inside, especially if the windows are out, that's going to, that's going to carry outside. And I don't, if there's a, and I do know there's, I think there's residences across, so you do, that sound will carry. I believe across the street.
No, no, actually across the street is more commercial, one-story commercial. This is on the corner of actually Washington and Beacon, so there's a parking lot behind. The owner of the building behind is supportive and on the other corner is a pizza place and some other restaurants.
There's nothing above, there's nothing above behind it, there's no, there's no residence above behind it. I was, I was worried about the sound carrying.
Okay, I, I don't think that that's.
And I have no objection to no music, but that's absolutely fine.
Well, I, I would just suggest you tell people to be respectful of the surrounding community. And if, if there are people nearby to, you know, keep the noise down, whether it's music or whatever they do.
Absolutely.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so Devon, do we have anyone interested in talking about windows?
At this time, there are three members of the public in person who do not appear interested in making a public comment. There are twenty-one members joining us virtually. No one has used the hand raise or Q and A feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment.
Okay, okay, Paul, I want to give you an opportunity to either accept or reject my suggestion that we not put in a condition like that.
That, that's fine, I think, I think.
Yeah, then I move approval. Okay, then I move approval of the noise bylaw waiver, public, I'm sorry. I'm more of approval of the noise bylaw waiver for Bar Taco at sixteen forty-three Beacon Street for the dates listed in the agenda. On favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyeck?
Aye.
I take it Miriam is still.
Still not with us.
Okay, Mike Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Night. All right, next, Crown Castle Equipment Update. Up, excuse me, it's late. Upgrade, questions of approving the request from Crown Castle for an upgrade to five G service on fourteen light poles in Brookline. And who's going to speak on that?
Can I just interrupt for a moment and ask that after this, we take a short break?
Sure, yeah, a seventh inning stretch.
Stretch, right, seventh inning stretch, hopefully it's a seventh inning.
Okay, who do we have speaking on this? It looks like Polly's.
Well, actually.
Polly, is it?
Anna Samashki is here from Crown Castle. She is the permitting agent and I think she's going to speak first and I'm here to answer any of your questions. And there's Anna now.
Morning, my apologies about the delay.
Tell us about this project.
Ah, yes, good morning, I'm, I'm sorry, good evening. So Crown Castle is.
It's almost, we're almost there.
It was a long day. And so Crown Castle is proposing to upgrade existing wireless facilities at multiple locations within the town's right of way. Crown submits this application to modify the existing wireless facilities as eligible facilities request under section sixty-four oh nine and the rules of the Federal Communications Commission. There are ten locations that have similar scope of work and replacing of the existing antenna to a similar sized antenna and a shroud with a slight increase in size. The exterior shroud and antenna design will match other existing sites in town. The remaining four locations will, will also have similar scope of work. A replacement of the existing antenna and shroud with a slight increase in sizes. The exterior shrouds and antenna will also match other sites deployed throughout the town. There are, like I said, there are fourteen locations, so there are different, different in different side of town. So are there any questions or do you need any additional informations about this?
Mike?
I just have one question in one of these locations, and I'm not sure exactly which one, it's a third from the bottom, the seventh of them. There is, you showed the before and the existing condition and the proposed condition. And the proposed condition takes a, a, an antenna and hangs it off of a, of a pole that looks like it's falling over.
Okay, so that is.
Replace that pole, I hope, or do something to, you know, straighten it out, what, that's quite a mess.
So I know I've seen a few of those. The thing is that those poles are, are not owned by Crown, they're owned by Everstars and Verizon. So we are working with them on licensing as well. Some of those poles will be replaced as part of this project and actually they have been replaced, a few of them already, as far as I know.
Okay.
Based on our communication with those utilities. But I'm just presenting this as an equipment that would be installed by Crown basically on, at these locations. We're trying to make it pretty, we're trying to make it correct. However, it's not our call in a lot of cases with those poles that do not, do not look like they can sustain a wind gust, but they actually do. We do run all our tasks to make sure they do not fall on somebody's head or car or anything like that, that's for sure.
Right, well, yeah, okay. Just, that was, I looked at all the pictures, I thought, ooh, that one's kind of dicey. All right, otherwise I have no problem.
Any other questions? I move approval of the, this is not a public hearing, first of all.
Well, let, let me, can I interject?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm Polly Selko, Regulatory Planning Director. The process that's used is that the planning board has to make a rec, have a hearing and make a recommendation to you, the select board, and we've done that, received a letter from Steve Hyken. He, I just wanted to, to say that the planning board feels that when these upgrades come through, the town should really consider their licensing agreements and consider maybe asking for more money. I, I think that's something that probably Town Council is involved with. The other thing is that they talked about in the future, if these, if the equipment is going to get even larger, that maybe there should be a broader distribution with smaller antennas on the poles so that it'll be more aesthetic looking. But all in all, they did approve this request, or I should say recommend approval to you. And with a condition that all the antennas and cabinets shall match the color of the pole to which they are installed. Thank you.
Thank you, Polly.
Hey, thank you, Polly. And I apologize for getting that you were going to speak.
I know it's late.
It is late.
That's not my excuse, I'm just. Anyway, okay, so I move approval of the request from Town Castle for an upgrade to five G service on fourteen light poles in Brookline, subject to the condition that they be aesthetically pleasing. Is that inaccurate?
That's a challenge.
That is a challenge.
I would, I would put that.
Well, well.
I moved to strike aesthetically pleasing. Town Council, Town Council is sicking of faith.
Aesthetically consistent with the planning department or the planning board.
It's supposed to, to match the color of the antennas and cabinets should match the color of the poles to which they are attached.
Okay, that, that's good enough condition.
Make them more attractive.
Right.
Or less on.
Less, blend in more.
Less ugly.
Yeah.
Okay, on favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyeck?
Aye.
I take it Miriam's still not available?
With a she apologizes.
Mike, Mike Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, thank you. Okay, at this point, it's eight twenty-five and I've been asked to take a break, I guess a bio break or a seventh inning stretch.
Either one.
We'll be back in five minutes.
Yes, we'll resume with the Warren Article Public Hearings beginning at eight thirty as opposed to eight.
For us. Okay, we'll be back online. Okay, next, Warren Articles Public Hearing. We have one, two, three Warren Articles to discuss. Warren Article sixteen, Home Rule Petition to Implement Rent Stabilization and Tenant Eviction Protections. Do we have anyone to speak on that? I see Alex Lee.
Evening.
Okay. Good evening, so make the presentation.
Thank you very much, Bernard, one minute, let me share my slides here. All right, can you see that, the slide deck? Wonderful. Well, good evening, everyone, members of the board. My name's Alec Levovitz, I'm a town meeting member in Precinct Eight, one of the co-petitioners of Warren Article sixteen, which as Bernard mentioned, seeks to get authorization from the general court for Brookline to implement rent stabilization and tenant eviction protections. So first to start off, let's take a look at the environment in Brookline. Why do we think rent stabilization is a program that we need here? So the biggest primary reason, as housing market conditions continue to be extremely tight and are driving increasing costs that are already at a very elevated levels and are putting significant displacement pressures on many Brookline residents. The median monthly rate in Brookline was measured in twenty twenty, measured to be slightly over twenty-four hundred dollars. At that time, that was more than twice the national median rate and was the most expensive of the greater Boston communities beating out Cambridge, Somerville, Newton and Boston. However, in just the last few years, we've seen, according to some measures, an even more, greater elevation of housing costs with a median monthly rate of listed units in twenty twenty-three being found to be thirty-nine hundred dollars monthly and an average measured rate of nearly twenty-eight hundred dollars. And the unfortunate reality is these high and rising costs are putting extreme pressure on many of our residents. Over forty-five percent of renters in Brookline are classified as housing burdened, which is defined as the household spending thirty percent of their annual income on housing costs. And more frighteningly, twenty-three percent of renters, which represents nearly an eighth of all residents in the town, are classified as severely burdened, which indicates they spend fifty percent or more of their annual income on housing costs. And unfortunately, throughout the data, we see that these high and rising costs are having a disparate impact on many vulnerable communities in Brookline, particularly seniors, residents of color in many cases, and certainly low and lower middle income households. While this is certainly a regional affordability crisis, the impact on Brookline has been significantly substantial. And we've seen in recent years some aggravating circumstances that have made the problem worse. Elevated inflation over the last few years post pandemic has certainly contributed to rising housing costs in Brookline. According to the American Community Survey, over the last two full years of data, rents, average rents increased twelve percent, which is nearly double the annualized rate of increase from the last census decade between twenty ten and twenty twenty. Additionally, we see evidence of increasing instability in Brookline, again largely due to the increase in housing costs. Senior poverty, for instance, has increased by nearly three percent over the last census decade, even as overall town poverty rates declined. Similarly, we saw significant and troubling decreases in the black and indigenous populations in Brookline. Further, we heard recently from the public school system that there are fifty current Brookline public school students who are either homeless or on the precipice of homelessness. And finally, looking at the MIT Living Wage Estimate for Norfolk County, we've seen significant sustained growth in what, what living wage is required for a household to stay above water in our county. We saw an increase, a nearly doubling of that living wage calculation from sixty-five thousand to nearly a hundred and fifteen thousand from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty. And in the same year, in twenty twenty, Brookline's median household income was a hundred and twenty-two thousand, again showing that nearly half of residents are falling below what's been calculated to be a living wage for Norfolk County. Additionally, another metric that we found that is troubling have been eviction filings. Although there aren't reliable or good local data sources for eviction filings, they are collected by region and we have seen filings in Eastern Massachusetts, the region containing Brookline and Greater Boston, triple over the last two years following the expiration of the eviction moratorium. And in fact, our region now has the greatest number of pending and current eviction filings and is exceeding the pre-pandemic trend. You can see that solid black line here represents our district. In addition, we, the petitioners did do qualitative interviews with several of the town constables. And what we had heard from them is that while evictions themselves have remained fairly constant over the last five years, they have recently noted an increase in eviction filings, particularly concentrated among Brookline Housing Authority residents. Again, just further evidence that low income families are particularly hard hit and facing very real displacement pressure. This chart also, we feel shows the show of displacement that's being cast through much of the housing data that we have regarding Brookline. Comes from the most recent Brookline Disparity Report. And what you can see is compared to the national average, Brookline's population skews much more affluent with a slightly higher proportion of the very lowest level. Largely, we attribute to folks being able to stay in public housing or subsidized housing. But what you can see is that over time, the middle, lower middle income strata in Brookline has been eroded and we, we very much believe that that has been in conjunction with high and rising housing costs. So how does Warren Article sixteen improve the situation? How does it improve housing stability? There are three main prongs of Warren Article sixteen. The first seeks to implement a rent stabilization program that would cap annual rent increases for covered units to a formula that is calculated by a base of three percent plus the rate of inflation as measured by the CPI for our region over the preceding twelve months to a maximum of seven percent annually. This includes a number of common sense exemptions for what units might be covered, including an exemption for newly constructed properties for the first fifteen years post-construction or renovation, as well as exempting smaller multifamily housing units that are owner occupied and some other exemptions. Based on the data we have available, we estimate that between ninety-five hundred and eleven thousand rental units would be covered by this provision. That represents about seventy-three to eighty-five percent of the total rental housing stock in Brookline currently. We feel this is an important program and an important element of improving housing stability because it allows renters to better forecast and budget for future housing cost increases. And in so doing, actually creates more equity between homeowners and renters because many, the vast majority of which have fixed rate mortgages, are much better able to forecast those future costs. So we want to introduce that same element of stability forwards here.
You have thirty seconds.
Oh. The second prong is putting in clay, in place good cause tenant eviction protections. We would still allow for evictions for causes established under state law. And we would also want to put in place relocation, requirement notifications for conversions and demolitions. I'll go very quickly because I do have a good bit left. The evidence academically on rent control gene and rent stabilization is mixed. What we have generally found is that the specifics are very important. And we have found repeated strong evidence across studies that show that regulation increases does preserve a four in covered units and does reduce displacement pressure. To the point about specifics, we've tried to anticipate potential adverse impacts and control for them. To the point about specifics, we've tried to anticipate potential adverse impacts and control for them in the design of Warren Article sixteen. For instance, to prevent the disincentive of new housing development, we exempt them for fifteen percent, for fifteen years after their initial construction. Um, for addressing uh, the potential uh, deterioration of housing quality or maintenance, we've allowed for fair return standards to compensate landlords in cases where maintenance or capital costs are incurred or even in the case of rapid property tax increases. And in order to prevent potential tax shifts or negative impacts on property values in surrounding communities, we've included vacancy de-control in this measure, which would allow rental rates to return to market rates after the expiration of a continuous tenancy, we feel that this would help mitigate those potential distortive effects on the market. Um, I can skip through that because uh, happy to answer any questions about what implementation might look like based on historical uh, evidence. But I did want to briefly talk about why we feel a home rule petition is warranted instead of a resolution. Uh, frankly speaking, this is a policy that has worked in Brookline in the past and throughout the region. And, and as our state representative likes to say, we should ask for what we want and we feel this is a reasonable request. Um, similarly, unfortunately, a resolution, we have no possibility um, of knowing if it will register at all on Beacon Hill and it certainly has no possibility law. Um, there is renewed regional interest in rent stabilization policies throughout the region. Uh, we see this as providing a viable political strategy for a home rule petition, even in the case that the legislature opts not to directly act on it. And I would point out that this strategy has worked for Brookline in the very recent past. The case study being fossil fuel free zoning regulations, where after the rejection of two bylaws uh, that were passed by town meeting by the attorney general, our home rule petitions passed and was not acted on by the general court, however, subsequently, only a year later, uh, our example in the uh, that we set inspired other municipalities to pass their own home rule petitions, which ultimately inspired the legislature to take action. So we believe we've seen this strategy work before and it can.
You have, you have hit time, sir, sorry.
Yes, and I'll, I'll wrap it up there and happy to take any questions and we hope you'll vote favorable action on Warren Article sixteen, thank you.
Okay, any questions from uh? Pardon me?
I thought I saw Mike raising his hand, no?
Oh, yeah.
Well.
Okay.
Go to town. So, uh, a bunch of questions, alright. Uh, you mentioned that um, there's been an upswing in, at least anecdotally, evictions uh, uh, focused on B or concentrated among BHA uh, tenants.
These are eviction, eviction filings, just to be clear.
Files. How does rent stabilization help with BHA tenants?
So the rent stabilization piece would uh, not apply to BHA units, but what would apply um, would be the tenant eviction protections. Um, so we, it's not entirely clear to us and we are still trying to gather more data on what these filings are or what is causing these filings to be filed. Uh, you know, whether they're uh, arrears and payments or um, if there are other issues at play, but those may come into play. Um, I, I mainly add that, that flavor of about eviction filings just to uh, that to give as much of a local character to that data as we can, because it is a bit frustrating that we really only have regional data collection on evi, evictions and eviction filing.
Right, I honestly, I think it's completely irrelevant to the case if you're not talking about uh, rent, of course, rent stabilization isn't going to apply to BHA. Um, uh, the um, uh, you, 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 you mentioned that there's a uh, the ability to add as much as three percent over inflation, but there's a seven percent cap, which really means that when inflation rises above four percent, that, that three, you know, you're uh, you're basically capped as a landlord at a three percent increase over and above inflation. Is that correct?
That's correct, but also inclusive in that is that we do allow for fair return standards. So if there are, you know, maintenance costs or rapid property tax increases uh, or capital improvement costs, uh, they would be allowed to petition to go above that cap for a single year rent increase.
So there'll be a, a committee of some sort to deal with those cases?
Yeah, we, so Warren Article sixteen calls for a um, director or board to be designated. So previously that had been the rent control, under the old rent control program. Uh, that certainly could act as a model, but it, it certainly doesn't need to.
Yeah, that's quite a model. Um, and uh, the, the content, see, you mentioned vacancy de-control, but one of the consequences of vacancy de-control is, or one of the consequences of rent control is that, or its stabilization, is that people tend to stay in those properties for as long as they possibly can. There, um, I can think of, there are lots of anecdotes of people whose income, you know, students or a student, uh, younger, uh, a younger couple that's moved in, had rent stabilization, then they stayed there for decades. Uh, and so uh, you know, that, that basically uh, defeats the purpose of rent stabilization for uh, people who uh, who need it. And I wonder if you've thought a little bit about the consequences of, of that. Um, personally, I would be very interested in seeing a sunset provision for this. I think the fifteen year uh, pass for, for new apartments is, you know, that's great, but I still uh, still would say that um, you're dealing with a very particular situation right now uh, and a permanent rent control program uh, doesn't strike me as being the appropriate response. So you might want to think about a sunset provision. And I would also say that rent control and fossil fuel uh, um, free buildings are totally different, there, there's no analogy there. Honestly, you're, you're dealing with something that fossil free fuel is uh, uh, fossil free um, buildings and construction is uh, something that where, you know, Brooklyn caught a wave. Uh, I don't think that's the case here. Uh, and so uh, I question whether this would have much uh, in the way of legs in the, in the legislature. So um, okay, you've heard my doubts, uh, you're welcome to uh, respond to them of course.
Um, you know, I, I think to the, the point about the political strategy, you, you know, we can certainly have differences of opinion on whether that's feasible in other cases. Um, based on conversations I've had, I, I think there is sustained and growing interest in other similar communities. I, we expect Somerville to pass a home rule petition of their own um, before the end of the year. Uh, Boston already has done so, Cambridge is considering that. Um, so you know, I, I see the beginnings of a wave out there. Um, and I think, you know, for a community like Brooklyn that prizes itself on taking a leadership role on the key issues confronting our region and our state, uh, it's incumbent on us to help make that wave, so that, that's kind of how we, we view this strategically, but you know, uh, certainly uh, no problem with this agreements on that.
It, um, is the wave that you're talking about limited to the Boston area or is that a statewide wave? Because the legislature is based on statewide representation.
Right, um. To this point, the majority of interest we've seen has been in the region, uh, which is also perhaps unsurprising because these are the communities that had rent control bylaws on the books uh, and had them nullified in nineteen ninety-four. Um, so, you know, what we'll see if we see sustained interest outside of the region, it's primarily occurring in, in eastern Massachusetts right now.
Any other questions, uh, John?
So, w- we have some pretty um, experienced developers um, in, in, based in Brookline uh, who've done a lot of housing development, not just in Brookline, but around the area. Did, did you um, interview any of them?
So we, we actually were able to have some of uh, developers and landlord representatives attend uh, a working session that we held with the advisory committee subcommittee on capital um, or their capital subcommittee, I should say, so we did, we did get some input from them, yes.
And what did they say?
Um, you know, I think understandably, uh, there were concerns, similar, you know, we heard concerns from the landlords as well. Um, I think it, it's what I'm noticing is there is a lot of tendency to, I think knee jerk, remember the days of the eighties and nineties and think about any kind of rental regulation as being, you know, very strict or stringent rent controls, which is not at all what we're proposing here, right? We're proposing stabilizing future increases uh, and putting in place, I think, some common sense um, stability protection. So that, there was, I think, some knee jerk pushback. Uh, we did explain that there were provisions included to prevent disincentives. Um, uh, you know, we, we didn't get a ton of feedback after that discussion. Um, so I, apologies that it's only really in generalities, but that's, that's what we got.
Well, uh, I'll just sum up by saying, first of all, my knee is jerking. I'm one of those knee jerk people who actually, you know, remembers the uh, the whole rent control era in Brookline. Uh, the, those of us who uh, were around during that era. Um, and by the way, I was a person who actually is a newspaper editor. Um, was known to occasionally editor, editorialize leaning towards um, protecting rent control. Um, but then, you know, e- even I had to admit that it collapsed. It just collapsed as an economic proposition. Uh, the moment that sort of opened my eyes to the developer's point of view on this was when one of those developers who was angry over something that we'd written in the newspaper came into the office and looked me in the eyes and he said, if Brookline limits my profit on uh, an investment in a, in a development of housing, which everybody said they wanted back then, as they do today, and I can only make a profit of say five percent, but I could make six percent somewhere else, wh- why would I invest in building apartments in Brookline? And that's, you're going to face that not just in terms of how people with money to invest are going to decide whether to invest in property development, apartment development, condo development with their money. But those who are still inclined to be in that business are going to say, why would I develop, why would I invest in Brookline when uh, one of the neighboring communities isn't adopting this? And then the other thing that's going to happen is people who have apartments that are about to fall under rent control. And all of this happened during that knee jerk era that you mentioned. Um, uh, people who have uh, large buildings with significant numbers of apartments are going to look into condo converting them. And all of that happened, and then there's a battle over condo conversion and whether, you know, the town can pass bylaws to block the condo conversions. And then there's lawsuits and God knows, it's too bad you weren't around back then. You might have a different point of view.
Uh, I will say to, to your point about um, the specific, you know, return or expected return for developers. Um, we had an interesting data point that was raised by uh, Professor Peterson, who's one of the members of the Board of Assessors, uh, which is that, uh, according to some data that he reviewed, um, the cap that we are calling for in Warren Article sixteen would only be, or has only been exceeded over the last five decades. I, I think it was in four individual years by the average rental increase. So I think that's important to contextualize what we're talking about with a cap. This is not like nineteen seventies Brookline rent control where uh, we're empowering a board to approve any rental regulation or any rental rate increase and actually empowering them to decrease rental rates in certain instances, which was the case back then. We're talking about really putting a, I think, a, a higher cap on aver, on year-to-year rental rate increases to prevent some of the worst excesses, some, you know, extreme single year hikes, which unfortunately are, are something that occur. I, I have talked to individual tenants uh, in researching this bill who had their uh, rental rates increased by eight hundred dollars in a single year uh, without any maintenance, you know, being done or any capital improvements whatsoever. So we're really talking about creating a, a safety net. Um, and, and I think we've done it in a way that strikes a comfortable balance uh, between ensuring that developers, landlords, the stakeholders in housing development that we need uh, to ensure are viable um, are, are compensated well and we're also doing our part um, to improve housing stability. And like I said, give renters a better idea of how to forecast and budget future costs.
Yep, uh, Alec, first, uh, thank you for coming before us. Um, I know this is a, this is a very contentious subject. Uh, so I appreciate you um, bringing it forward and, and being available for questions. I have two uh, kind of question concerns. Um, first, I am very sensitive to the fact that rents are high. Um, and, and Brookline in general is frankly unaffordable and becoming more and more unaffordable. Um, I, the first question I have is kind of related to, to what John was raising. Um, and I was not really attuned to rent control back when, when the big debate was going on. Um, but I am concerned about the impact that rent control or even the request for rent control could have on housing production. We're going through, you know, uh, a, a, a very laborious uh, debate right now about creating more housing, more rental housing, more affordable housing. And I, I worry about the dampening effect that this would have um, on, on housing production, even with the fifteen year uh, you know, grace period. Um, you know, it, it takes a long time, mortgages last a lot longer than fifteen years when you're investing in a fifty million dollar building. So I, one, that, that's one issue I'd like you to speak to, and then the second is, um, I spoke to uh, the town clerk and there is a pending ballot question that is being circulated to gather signatures. Um, and that may very well end up, you know, uh, on, on a ballot uh, in, in the near future. Um, and you know, why do this when, when, when that may be, apparently I understand could complement it, but uh, that does seem to be coming, so those are, those are kind of my two, the two things I've been thinking about.
Yeah, really appreciate those questions, Paul. Um, so I'll, I'll take the, the second one first, to the ballot referendum point. Um, you know, uh, I, if you're aware of what's involved in, in trying to get one of those referendums on the actual ballot. Uh, the approval by the attorney general was the first of many preliminary steps. Uh, the campaign now is tasked with collecting seventy-five thousand signatures. Uh, no twenty-five percent of which can come from any single county, which certainly complicates things. Uh, by before, I think the third week of November. So it's a very tall order for a relatively nascent uh, campaign that was launched much later than many of the other ballot referendum campaigns. So, uh, you know, I, I'm very hopeful that it will be on the ballot. I'm certainly uh, doing everything I can to ensure that's the case. Um, but it is by no means certain. And so I think it's important that we not limit ourselves or the community to one potential avenue for recourse. If we think this is an important policy, I think we ought to explore all our options. Um, so that, that's, I guess, how I would address that. Uh, in terms of the incentive for new construction piece, I one hundred percent agree that we're, we're very sensitive uh, to that issue, that was one of the uh, the biggest potential adverse impacts that we really wanted to control for. Um, you know, we modeled what we're proposing off of what we've seen in other communities where this has been successful. Um, New Jersey is a great example, uh, New Jersey has maintained local option rent control continuously for the last sixty-plus years. Um, based on some evaluations we saw of some of those towns and cities in New Jersey, um, there were similar provisions, fifteen years, twenty years um, that seemed based on the academic literature to mitigate that potential disincentive. Uh, you know, of course, market conditions are different everywhere, uh, you know, we're sensitive to that. Um, and I think we've provided the flexibility um, to assure developers and future owners of rental properties that uh, this is not going to be a draconian, uh, you know, control of all rental rates measure. We're talking about creating that safety net, we're going to allow fair return standards. Um, you know, we're, we're going to be, I think, collaborative and hopefully an implementation, I would assume, working with every stakeholder, the previous rent control board had tenant and landlord representatives on it. So uh, I think a lot of the details are forthcoming and waiting for implementation. Um, but I think we built the flexibility into the measure uh, to ensure that we can be receptive to all stakeholder feedback and, and be able to, to tweak any specifics to try and address that. Uh, but you're, the point's very much well taken.
Thank you.
Okay, um, this is a public hearing, hold on, Regina, we haven't opened, we haven't opened.
I, I think, I see Miriam is.
Oh, I'm sorry, Miriam.
That's okay, I, I, first I apologize, I had a urgent childcare issue that needed to be attended to. So I missed um, the last hour um, meeting, but I'm back. Um, I, Alec already knows this, I support this warrant article because to me, and I, I just want to be clear, I think these are all really good questions everybody's asking and really good points, but this is really about how we get this conversation going, this is a home rule petition, this, there's a lot of steps between here and rent control, but this is the first step. And if we don't start taking the first step, then we're never going to get to the finish line. And so I really support this, really acknowledging that, that there is still a lot that has to happen between now and rent control, but that we have to try, um, and so I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, um, let me just add my two cents. Um, I, I, I'm skeptical of, of this idea, the, the proposed rent control um, plan. Um, but you know, as I've, I've said to some people who, who opposed it, um, you need to come up with some alternative, because the housing crisis here in Massachusetts is really getting out of control. And uh, rent control may not be the answer, but we need to come up with an answer. Uh, I don't know what that answer is, uh, I don't know that we even can find such an answer in a market economy where, you know, that, that's operating like it is here in Massachusetts, but you know, that's sort of the uh, conundrum that, that. you know, that's sort of the conundrum that, that we're in, both supporters as well as opponents to rent control. You know, the status quo is not working and we need to figure out some, some alternative. So with that, this is a public hearing. Devin, do you have anyone in the queue?
The first person signed up for public comment is Bonnie Bastian. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and your three minutes will begin.
Bonnie Bastian, town meeting member, precinct five. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this. I just want to make a couple of comments in response to what you all have been discussing around Mr. Salmon's comments about students. You know, what, what would be the problem if students and other folks living in apartments, if they, if they stayed for decades, why would it be a problem? If rent is keeping up with inflation? Because students and young people are often dismissed basically as non-residents because they are expected to move really quickly. So personally, I think that would be great if people chose this town and stayed here. It's also, that idea is also drawing on old and completely different ideas of rent control. I think you're harkening back to New York City where we see elderly people who have been living in their, you know, apartment for 50 years at the cost of like $300 because rent control was different there. That's not at all what we are talking about here. For instance, if we had, you know, an apartment for $3,500 and it went up 3%, that's $175 a month that it would go up annually likely. And if it went up 7%, that's $245 a month. That's a large amount, actually. We're not, you know, that's not keeping rents at a particular level. So I'm going to quote now from a report from 2019 that was collaboration between Policy Link, the Center for Popular Democracy, and Right to the City Alliance. Rent control protects tenants from skyrocketing rents and displacement. It's the only policy tool that can immediately provide relief to renters facing unaffordable rent increases. It outperforms all other affordable housing tools in terms of scale of impact. And that's because it covers private rental housing where the vast majority of renters live. And while it applies to renters of all income levels, it disproportionately benefits low-income tenants, seniors, people of color, women-headed households, people living with disability or chronic illness, families with children and others who have the least choice in the rental market.
You have 30 seconds.
Most susceptible to rent gouging, harassment, eviction and displacement. The stability and affordability provided by rent control benefits communities and the broader society by making renters more financially secure with more disposable income to spend in our local economy. Renters would also be healthier since housing stability and affordability contribute to mental and physical health. Children would do better in school since frequent moves disrupt education. And it can even fortify democracy since stability increases civic and political participation if students live here for decades because they can afford it. That's actually a good thing. So while no one policy can solve the renter crisis that we have here, rent control offers meaningful, immediate and widespread relief. This is why rent control is a cornerstone of.
Could you wrap up?
Yes, and an essential element of comprehensive approach to address Brookline's affordability challenge. So those are my comments.
Thank you.
Please consider this. It's a really, really important thing if we actually want to address affordability in Brookline. Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Regina Frally.
Thank you. Regina Frally from South Brookline. First of all, I supported rent control and my husband was on the rent control board for several years. I was the only town meeting member at the time in my precinct who did in the 1980s. And I lost my seat initially because of that vote. So I have some credibility here in terms of what I'm about to say. But Alec presented tonight is somewhat different and skewed from what it presented at the Advisory Committee because I was there for that. First of all, he got more than a little pushback. It was more like a karate chop. For all and more of what you people have raised. He also had to smooth down the eviction things when we testified, both Neil Gordon and I, who are perhaps as active in being constables in the town. In his 10 years, he has done six evictions in Brookline. And in my nearly five years, I've done one. So it isn't the overwhelming, the data just isn't there for the town of Brookline to support some of his implications of his statements from the data of the wider area. And what he called knee jerk, many of us would call experience speaking in history. And it's a shame that he calls it knee jerk. I gave the example of Hancock Village where, where after all the opposition, very organized and very powerful opposition to decontrolling Hancock Village, it came down to two women who wouldn't move and they were given a very large payoff to leave. Each went out and bought a condo with that payoff. There's nothing in this, from what he testified to last week, that the, it's a form of decontrol that the, if somebody leaves, that can relieve that unit from being under this, this program. What's to prevent a landlord from paying off somebody to leave so that they can decontrol it? I'm not sure that's been addressed. It certainly wasn't mentioned tonight and maybe there's something they're working on, but I haven't heard it yet. That's very important to, to misrepresent. And then the final thing that wasn't mentioned at all that was brought up at the advisory, because it is their job to do it, but it's also yours, staffing. They had no numbers for what it's going to cost to implement this program. So you're hearing that they don't even know if it'll be a board or what it'll be. That should be fleshed out first of all.
30 seconds.
That's absolutely, we're so tired of signing blank checks in this town. And it's so easy to blow things off as, hey, what a great idea, without doing the, the hard work it takes to know what the pluses and the minuses are. And then still going forward, if it's such a great idea, work it out so that we understand every single consequence intended or otherwise. Thank you.
At this time,
Hi, I'm Alisa Jonas, town meeting member from precinct 16. I was at the advisory committee and had to leave before I could talk about some of my thoughts. I, my cousin who was elderly benefited from rent control in New York and she didn't have a lot of money and it was a great thing for her. And so it certainly has its benefits for people who don't get to have their salaries increased as time goes on. I think the issue with the students is a student might move in, they don't have any money. But over time, they might become a corporate lawyer and they can remain in that unit. So I think that's the issue with people who can, who can take advantage of these units. I'm worried about the assumption that our cost of living is, the CPI is going to remain at 2%. We already had a higher rate increase just last year. I don't know exactly how, was it 5%, 6%? So in that case, every single landlord who has maintenance costs or capital improvements is going to have to go before the board to get approvals for a rate increase because if, if the CPI is 6% or 7%, then 7% is the maximum that they can even benefit from. And 7% covers cost of living increases, but does not include any other things that they'd like to do to the unit. So I do think maybe that Alec is being a little optimistic and thinking that it's not going to cost very much money and it'll be a relatively straightforward process to have a board and that the board can approve maintenance and capital improvements if it's beyond that 7%. And the other, I did have a question for Alec, which is what are just causes for eviction? It wasn't clear to me. You do mention, if, if you want to have a condo conversion, you would go before the board. I'm not sure, but what, what are the specific just causes? I'm literally a question.
We seem to be missing Mr. Levowitz from the, the, the panelists. Mr. Levowitz, if you're in the participants, the attendees, would you raise your hand, please? Sometimes we have this problem where folks disappear from the attendees list.
At this time, there are 18 virtual attendees and five in person.
We'll pass that question along to him if he returns so that he has the opportunity to answer you directly. And we'll make sure the response is forwarded to the board as well and posted in the board's.
He is out of seat.
Otherwise engaged.
Otherwise what?
Otherwise engaged. Okay.
Okay. If you would like to put your question in, in writing, we'll get it to him as well as to the board. You know, just an email or even a text message. I mean, nothing elaborate. Okay. Any further questions or comments from the audience, Devin?
No.
Let's close the hearing then. Any further questions from the board? Or comments from the board? Let's move on to the next item. Article 17, Resolution Regarding Fluorinated Hydrocarbons Otherwise Known As PFAS. That's Ms. Jonas again.
I'll just remind petitioners who are remaining that your time is seven minutes for your Warren article presentation.
Seven minutes. Okay.
And Devin will enforce it and I will back her up.
Okay. Actually, I didn't time it, but anyways, once again, Alisa Jonas, town meeting member, precinct 16, member of the advisory committee and chair of the moderators committee on PFAS. And if all of you are like me, you may not have remembered why this moderators committee was established. Just my memory is not the way it used to be. It was established in, during the spring 2022 town meeting to address the substance of Warren Article 22, which was fluorinated chemicals reduction bylaw. That Warren article called for restricting the sale of products containing PFAS in certain broad categories of products. I was on the advisory committee subcommittee that was assigned the Warren article. We were concerned that the bylaw would be difficult to implement. Product labels often do not provide the information needed to identify which products fall under the bylaw. And even if manufacturers are contacted, they do not always provide accurate information. The Department of Public Health also informed us that it would not have the staffing to adequately enforce the bylaw, especially given the broad categories of products involved. Town meeting voted to refer the article to a moderators committee to look into feasible alternative means to reduce exposure to PFAS by the community. We began our research by looking at measures that have been taken by other municipalities and states nationwide. We discovered that about 30 states have implemented some form of restrictions on the manufacturing, sales or use of products containing PFAS. Some were extensive than others. Maine and California have some of the most far-reaching. Maine's recently enacted legislation places restrictions on some categories of products. But effective 2030, the state will prohibit the sale of any product containing PFAS unless it's unavoidable. When, what the committee could not find were any municipalities that have restricted the sale of consumer products that contain PFAS. We, we looked at product lists that identify PFAS-free and PFAS-containing products. But what we found was far from user-friendly. And so at least at this time, it seemed difficult to implement restrictions across a broad category of consumer products at the municipal level. Though, though we haven't actually ruled out the possibility of a later Warren article to implement some very narrowly tailored restrictions. We also met with town departments to learn of their familiarity with PFAS and found varying degrees of knowledge. The school's food services department has been particularly aggressive in minimizing PFAS-containing products. Doesn't use any non-stick cookware, doesn't use plastic storage bins, uses only compostable takeout containers, doesn't use paper liners for bakeware. It was very impressive. They gave us a tour of their kitchen. The fire department chief was certainly knowledgeable about the presence of PFAS, given how much it's been in the news. However, following our meeting, it was very impressive. He immediately took action by purchasing Class B firefighting foam that's PFAS-free. Other department heads had been less aware of PFAS, but they nonetheless were receptive to purchasing adjustments to reduce PFAS exposure. And David Genakakis, the town's chief procurement officer, with whom we've worked closely, has discussed working with departments to locate suppliers and manufacturers that are both aware of the issue and have taken action to eliminate the chemical from their product lines. Harvard University has already done a lot of work identifying such manufacturers and the university generally makes purchasing decisions that factor in whether or not PFAS and other toxic toxic chemicals are present in their products. Given their knowledge in the area, the Office of Sustainability has offered to provide assistance to the town in this area. Also recently, the state of Massachusetts has developed lists of products for government purchases that exclude PFAS, which the town will be able to use. So given what the committee learned, that there's tools available for the town to change its purchasing practices, that some departments have already taken such steps and that there's an interest and willingness on the part of town departments and in particular the purchasing division to move forward in the area, the committee decided that the best approach to minimize exposure to PFAS to employees and residents under current conditions would be to focus efforts first at limiting its use by the town itself. The decision was also supported by the Department of Public Health. Actually, they were very relieved by this approach because they felt that they did have the resources to support efforts by town departments. We'd considered proposing a bylaw, but decided that the resolution would be the better route. It, it would provide town departments with more flexibility, especially as the product environment with regard to PFAS is in flux. And as David Genakakis and Clint Richmond pointed out, a resolution was successful to achieve a change in purchasing to cleaning products that are green seal certified. At the state level, House Bill 2197, Senate Bill 1356, an act to protect Massachusetts public health from PFAS is being considered during this legislative session. The bill has numerous provisions, including banning the sale to consumers of PFAS-containing products in many categories of goods effective 2030. But it also has a remediation trust fund, public education, a variety of other elements. A similar bill failed to move out of committee during the last session, but this bill might have more momentum since Massachusetts is not only not a leader in this area, but is now behind many other states at a time when health concerns associated with PFAS are receiving an increasing amount of scrutiny and an increasing number of successful lawsuits have either gone to settlement or have been won by consumers. So to encourage the state to follow the path taken by others, the resolution urges the town to support action at the state level. At the advisory committee meeting, one member suggested using a more rigorously defined restriction on which products to be purchased. The original wording of the first therefore clause stated that the town purchase PFAS-free products. The advisory committee recommendation voted to include the word certified. So the clause now urges the town to use certified PFAS-free products and the committee supports that change. And the AC supported this resolution unanimously. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Comments from the select board? Good work. No?
Yeah. I just want to thank the petitioners and the, all the town departments that have done the work. And again, this is a great example of how the petitioners really worked well together with town departments to figure out a solution here that worked, workshop the language, workshop the vehicle, got it to a resolution standpoint that still, you know, has meaningful guidelines and goals and is really a great signpost for our various departments moving forward. So we really appreciate your collaborative work on that. Thank you.
You're welcome to our farewell party.
I have a question. Ms. Jonas, Lisa. You said that the advisory committee required that non-PFAS products be certified non-PFAS products. Is there a certification agency or?
Well, I was concerned originally because Clint is our expert and he's in California babysitting. So I did speak with him and we had some email communications and he thought that would be fine. It's a resolution. I also looked at various websites. I think the EPA website showed various. tools that we could use, and they seem to consistently discuss certification. So since that does exist, and since it's a resolution, and certainly Dave Genakakis doesn't have to limit it to certified, but at the very least, we will have that.
What's the language of the advisory committee? I thought it was required that it be certified.
That we should urge the town to purchase products that are certified.
So it's just urging us.
PFAS. Right. It's a resolution.
Pardon me?
They did amend it, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, no, that's what Elisa Jonas is saying.
Yeah, okay. I just have one question, and this may be maybe for Chaz. So the second of the resolve is that the town will urge the Commonwealth legislators to support. I assume that would come in a form of one or more letters to our state rep.
Yes, yeah, whatever, whatever, obviously, methods that you as the select board or that town meeting may take to transmit that. Yes.
If you want more details, we we can go through the details of what the legislation is before you vote, but.
Not necessary.
If you want to go home.
No, we'll probably not vote tonight, so.
Okay.
Yeah, well done.
We'll have time to review and digest the legislation that you're proposing.
Great.
Or whatever it is you just mentioned.
Okay, great. Am I done?
This is a public hearing. You may want to hang around a little bit.
At this time, there are eighteen virtual attendees and approximately six in person. It appears no one in person would like to make a public comment.
Okay, so let's close the public hearing. Any further comments from the select board? Seeing none. Thank you. And we'll move on to our next Warren article, which is Warren Article eighteen, resolution creating a moderators committee on forms of municipal governments. Jonathan Margolis, I see that Neil Gordon is is taking his place. Proceed. Tell us about your Warren article.
Good evening. Thank you. Way less than seven minutes. I think that you're the select board and much of the community. Surely, the political community of Brookline is aware of conversations that are taking place on the structure of town government. And I'll keep my comments short. I'm Neil Gordon, precinct one town meeting member, member of the advisory committee and co-petitioner with John Margolis, Warren Article eighteen. John and I petition this article because if Brookline is considering changing its form of government, we need a conversation and not a campaign. There's much to consider because there's a wide variety of legal forms of municipal government. Open town meeting, representative town meeting, a town council, and several different forms of cities, some with strong mayors, some with weak mayors, some with just ceremonial mayors. Within each of those broad categories, there are subsets, and for each of the categories and subsets, there are pros and there are cons. As proponents of change have become more vocal, some have formed a committee and are raising money, having already concluded with outgrown town government. John and I believe they've put the cart before the horse, reaching a conclusion in advance of any wide-ranging, objective, community discussion. We don't bring Article eighteen to preserve a status quo. Rather, we bring Article eighteen to preserve a process that time and time again has served Brookline well. Our long history of using local volunteer talent to study, listen, ponder, and report back. That's what Article eighteen asks for. There is no perfect form of municipal government. Let's have a moderators committee objectively study the pros and cons of viable alternatives. Because on the issue of changing our form of government, Brookline needs a conversation and not a campaign. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the board? And let me just add, first of all, as you probably know, the select board will be conducting a survey of town residents. We'll get the language around November seventh, I believe it is.
That's yes.
Yeah. And we'll review the language and and once we approve it, it'll go out. Seeking comments from residents as to what they view as issues with respect to the current form of town government or the current way in which town government operates. But I think that, you know, that should be useful data that would be used by this committee if it's adopted. But more importantly, it's part of the process of just getting the information that you mentioned to make a a useful decision as to the form of town government we should we should have, whether we need to change, whether we need to improve, or whether we need to maintain the status quo. So. Paul.
Thank you, Neil.
You, Marion.
It was Marion up first?
No, you're first.
Are you sure? Okay. So just two, two quick questions. I my my sense is that in talking with you and in hearing some of the testimony and conversations about this is that this is being brought forward because there's a sense that the if if a elected charter commission was created, that they would have an outcome already in mind, which would be to convert to a city. And I'm not going to get into a debate about whether city versus town, and you felt that that wouldn't be objective. How? What is? How will we ensure that the moderators committee, which is sponsored by two individuals that seem to be strong proponents of staying with with town meeting? How? How will we get a balanced committee appointed by the moderator on this to get, you know, a reasonably objective, balanced opinion on it?
All right. So notwithstanding, thank you, Paul, notwithstanding my position on whether Brookline should be a town or a city, which I have completely left out of this conversation in hearings before the advisory subcommittee, the advisory committee, CTO and S, and and other public forum that I've attended. We're neutral, as is the language of the Warren article and the proposal. We've not suggested a charge for the committee. We leave that to the moderator. As to the moderator's ability to appoint an objective committee, that's up to the moderator. It's going to happen in public. Those names will be public, and we'll be able to see the work of the committee. And I think we can each judge for ourselves whether they are predisposed. On the question of the objectivity of an elected charter commission.
Actually, Neil, I don't I don't want you to go down that path. I no, actually, that that's not I don't have. I didn't ask you that question. So that.
But you did. No, but you.
Hold on, time, 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 time. Again, I don't want to have a competition about which committee is more objective.
You put you put words in my mouth as to what I thought about a
Okay.
campaign committee, right? We believe that a conversation ought to take place first, right? Because in a ballot question or a campaign for a charter commission, there will be a campaign, and campaigns are not by design. I've been involved in lots of them, as you know. They're not designed for either side to be objective. It may be designed for either side to be honest, but everybody spins their own facts to their advantage in an adversarial case. We think that it is of value, right, to have a moderators committee. We can't think of any other kind of committee. Who would appoint a committee, right? Wherever you go, there are biases. We we all know that. We all concede it. But the committee, the moderators appointments, they will happen in public. We can judge for ourselves.
Okay, and then my I did have one follow. My second question was just the timing. You know, the the committee would be completed or report back in August. I'm just, how did you pick August? And do you really think realistically that that would be enough time?
So we know it's we know it's tight. I think you can read into the Warren article that this committee's work as proposed, and we did not propose a charge, but we review various, we asked for review of various alternatives. And during the course of that work, it is quite possible that the committee will come up with some short-term recommendations. Those short-term recommendations could, and we're not proposing any, result in Warren articles that could be brought to town meeting a year from now, right? And and we had that date in mind to some extent.
Okay.
I think you know that there is a an active signature gathering campaign.
Yep.
It's possible that we'll have a ballot question in in May. But in any case, and this is the consensus, I think, of all the hearings and most of the public comment. By the time we've been through discussion, the work of this committee will be of value, no matter what path we ultimately take.
Thanks.
Okay, Marion.
Thank you. Hi, Neil.
Hello, good to see you.
Yes, good to see you too. So I have a few things to say. First, I don't think that a conversation in a campaign are mutually exclusive. So I think, in fact, part of a good campaign is a conversation. And I think that's one of the real benefits of having a campaign now is that people are talking about it. So I think that's very important, and I think it's really important that these are not binaries. These are things that happen simultaneously. The second is I, you know, I I hear where Paul is coming from, and I agree to me that moderators committee, and I don't want to put words in Paul's mouth, so I'll be very clear. This is how I feel. The moderator committee is not representative. It is not accountable to voters, and in my experience, and generally, I have not found it to be a neutral body, PFAS committee exempted, because I really think they did a very good job. But but in my experience, that is not how the moderators committee works, and I will specifically call out the cannabis committee for a good example, if you need one. So I appreciate what you're what you're doing in terms of creating conversation about government, and I'm I think that's great, but I won't be able to get behind supporting this Warren article because I do think a campaign is the way to go because it's much more all encompassing. It is, in fact, a grassroots effort that involves all the voters. And that's what we should be doing when we are trying to change the way we govern here, if we end up wanting to change the way we govern here. I mean, in the end, it goes to the voters. Thank you.
Mike.
So there is basically two pathways to changing changing the structure. One is through something that's approved by town meeting, whether it's something simple like changing from a town administrator to a town manager or something much more all encompassing, like replacing replacing town meeting with a town or city council. Both of but one that one route is through through the kind of process that you're talking about, having a committee, having a discussion, going through town meeting. Okay? The other is to create a commission that actually writes a charter change, brings it back to the voters, and then the voters, not town meeting, but the voters have an opportunity to say yes or no. I think it's a reasonable thing to say that it's very difficult for any group of people to decide to give up some of their responsibility or all of it. And for that reason, the commission approach and coming back to the voters as a whole is probably much more likely to yield a substantial change if a substantial change is what the voters want. And so what I'm looking for from you is either an acknowledgement that, yeah, it's going to be real hard for town meeting to say, oh, well, we'll we'll vote ourselves out of existence by passing this this home rule petition, or to acknowledge that, yeah, it's no, Mike, you're mistaken. Town meeting is perfectly capable of doing exactly that.
So we we don't bring this particular Warren article and this particular proposal for a moderators committee as an instead of path. We don't.
As a sorry?
As an instead of path.
Okay.
There is a signature gathering campaign going on. We're not opposed to it. We don't want to interfere with it. And so the contrary to your comment, we are not asking town meeting to vote or support any particular change. This is a moderators committee calling for a study in the relatively simple words of the Warren article. It doesn't say come back with a proposal in the form of a home rule petition, which is the way it works if you go through town meeting.
Yeah.
We're not asking anybody to vote themselves out or vote themselves in on a sustained basis. We're not. We're not protecting incumbents. That's not. It's not what the Warren article calls for. As to the objectivity, the public can judge for themselves whether the members are objectively appointed and whether they operate in an objective fashion. We'll see what what it looks like as it unfolds.
Right, but the ultimately, unless there's a commission that goes away and writes a charter commission, a charter, and then comes back to the voters. The only pathway, other pathway, as I understand it, is through a home rule petition that has to go through town meeting.
Those are the two paths, correct?
But you're not proposing any path. You're just proposing.
We're proposing. We're proposing no path.
Right.
We're proposing an objective study by a moderators committee of the various alternatives available to the town in the in the, to be fair now, in the context of of what's viable for Brookline. Whatever whatever that means.
To to.
And we don't define that.
But then what happens then?
What happens next is that they're.
It's like our survey, information that people will have and use it to either inform.
Oh, I'd like I'd like his answer, if you don't mind. Yeah.
So we we expect, we expect an objective review and an objective report on the pros and cons of in reasonable detail in the time allowed.
Right.
In reasonable detail of the viable alternatives, and I don't mean binary, you know, town or city alternative.
Yeah.
I mean, the various alternatives that would be available to us as a town, the various alternatives that might be available to us as a city, and anything in between, if there is such a thing in between.
There are lots of.
There are significant, significant subsets of form.
Yeah.
Right? That could and and should be considered. And that's all we're asking for is an objective review of the various forms in the context of Brookline, because some forms, I think, can be dismissed, perhaps. It's not appropriate. I'd be shocked if anybody wants to review the notion of open town meeting, for example, right? It was on my list, but it, you know, I think they can
Good.
make short work.
We'd have trouble getting for our.
Happy birthday, by the way, Mike. I think they can make short work of that one. What we expect to get back what we expect is a a process of public hearings, study, discussion, an objective report, objective all the way along, and a report that would inform not only town meeting, it's an amendment that that came up during the process we accepted. We, in standard fashion, asked for a report back to town meeting. It's a public document, but it doesn't get widespread. And and we accepted an amendment that said more broadly than that. I don't remember the exact.
But you're dancing around my question, which is what happens then?
What happens next is that the 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 town, small t,
Yeah.
can decide. The voters can decide, or town meeting can decide, or any combination thereof can decide.
Yeah, so Mike, I think, and I, you know, I'm on the fence about this, by the way. I I when I hear objective repeated over and over and over, I suspect it's probably, you know, I know the design point is objective, but I I I just the over under on town meeting recommending or a moderators committee appointed by the moderator of advisory that oversees town meeting, a committee coming up with an alternative to town meeting existing. I it would be it would be remarkable if that if that came out. But I I don't I don't think these two things are mutually exclusive, frankly. I think that, you know, if if, in fact, a committee could be appointed that is truly objective, you know, that the result of that committee could actually be picked up by a charter commission that's been elected and used as input. So I don't think they're mutually exclusive. I think I think it could. It could actually help with that process. I guess the the only lot, other than producing a report, you know, the logical next step, I think, was what Mike is going after is you would need to have you would need to have a home rule petition brought before town meeting to change the charter. Other than that, you may make some incremental recommendations that could take in input from the survey that Bernard had mentioned. That may be incremental in nature to try to improve the effectiveness and operation of what we do outside of changing the charter.
Yeah, it's like it had incremental and interim. And interim. Right, incremental and interim. I think that. We all concede that. The charter commission charter change process. Through the gathering of signatures, getting it on the ballot. Eighteen months of work by charter commission. It then has to go back to the voters. And then if if the charter is approved by the voters. Needs to go through a transition period. That's a long time between now. And the result, should we end up with a changed charter? And there might be incremental steps. That could be taken on an interim basis. Because we don't have to maintain the status quo for that whole process period.
Can I ask one more question, follow up? Neil, why not C T O N S doing this?
Ah, so C T O N S responded to that. When I had the conversation with Jonathan Morgolus. About how we do this. So C T O N S is a moderators committee. And we think that by the. Words of the Warren article. If the moderator wanted to appoint C T O N S. She could do that. C T O N S points out that. In no particular order. That they were not appointed for this particular expertise. They were appointed because they have sort of deep experience within the current structure. I think paraphrasing. General consensus, and they've not voted on this particular article yet. They're not. They were waiting for advisory to see whether there. Might be some amendments.
Okay.
Alright, but C T O N S is two things. One. Their focus really is on the structure of the existing. Form of government, number one. And number two. They have, pardon the expression, a day job. Right? They have. Ongoing responsibility to review warrant articles, for example. They they don't have the time.
Okay.
And the bandwidth.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Devin, do we have anyone in the queue?
I'm promoting Rebecca Stone. Hi Rebecca, you've been promoted to a panelist.
Hi.
Three minutes will begin.
Okay, thank you. I hadn't actually planned on speaking tonight because we've been. Because this Warren article has been going through a number of different reviews. And as Neil said. Much of the same conversation happens each time, but a couple of things have come up tonight. That I just wanted to highlight because every single time we do this. It becomes not a conversation about Warren Article eighteen, but actually a conversation about the Charter Commission and the Charter Commission campaign. I think one of the problems, I want to thank both Miriam and Mike for your comments and your questions, which I think get to the heart of. Why, even though. I have no particular problem with Warren Article eighteen for the reasons everybody says. Because yes, it's a study committee. It's a study committee. It'll it'll yield information that's more current than has been done by past study committees. That may be useful, as Paul said. As others have said, that may be useful to an eventual charter commission. But I think part of the problem, the reason people get so confused about this being. An instead of or an alternative to and use that language sometimes is because every time Neil presents it, he presents it as we need a conversation, not a campaign. But. The moderators committee is not an alternative or instead of a charter commission. And it's absolutely not instead of a campaign. The campaign is needed because the charter commission process requires voters to fifteen percent of registered voters to sign a petition. Asking for a charter commission question to go on the ballot. You cannot collect six thousand signatures from registered voters in a town or a city without a campaign to do so. It doesn't happen just because you float an idea out there and say, hey, we need signatures. How about it? You need a campaign. And that's what the campaign is doing. The campaign is laser focused. On talking to voters and seeing if there are fifteen percent of registered voters in Brookline. Which sometimes exceeds the amount that votes at a at a regular meeting. A regular town election. If we have fifteen percent of town voters who want a charter commission question on the ballot. Then we have a significant voice in town for a charter commission, which is the only, as Mike pointed out, the only voter driven process. That that asks the question of whether or not government is working for everyone. And if it's not, in what ways we might change it, including its underlying structure, in what ways we might change it so that it works better for everyone. That's the work of a charter commission. And this study committee contributes information that would be useful to that charter commission's conversation, as does the survey. Both the survey and the conversation and the study committee are work that a charter commission might normally do. In the regular course business. So to have it done now, great. And then, but we will continue. It's not instead of a campaign. The campaign is to get the signatures. So we'll continue with that. And if we get the signatures, then there will be a question on the charter commission and we'll take it from there.
If I might respond quickly. The 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 context. The context of my remarks. Of having a conversation and not a campaign are quite specific. To the committee that's been formed. They make no secret. About having concluded that Brookline should be a city, that Brookline has outgrown being a town. Right? We're not talking about the work or the process of the charter commission in the context of my comment. My comment is is specific, and it goes back to. The initial signature gathering. Which started with Brookline needs to be a city, I'm paraphrasing. Brookline needs to be a city because with a long list of reasons, it's not just about having a commission study. Whether there should be a change. This particular committee has concluded and has stated. Their opinion that there should be a change. We don't dispute the process at all. And that the context of my remarks don't speak to the process.
Respectfully, Neil. The campaign does not run.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. This is it's not. It's not public. It's not public discussion.
Sorry, a bigger part.
Thank you.
Okay. Is this a public hearing?
It is. It is a public hearing.
We opened it.
There.
Any further?
There are sixteen virtual attendees and three in person. It looks like Roger wants to make a comment. Come on up.
Roger Blood, precinct thirteen. Roger, yes, Roger Blood, precinct thirteen. I'm speaking in favor of this article for the moderator study committee. Very hopefully, objective and neutral. I've been a student of. State and local government, local government especially since the early sixties when Mike, you'll appreciate this, I took a course as an undergraduate in our respective alma mater, Clark University, on. State and local government and wrote a paper about my hometown's water supply. This will be less than a minute, by the way, because it's late and I am partly to blame for that from our earlier extended discussion. Have. Been an observer, participant in Brookline Town Government for. A long time and have gone. Honestly, back and forth on this very critical subject and still am not sure where. Where I feel personally about this. I think this is a great proposal to. Add to my knowledge and everybody else's knowledge, not in conflict with anything else. And so. I would support this enthusiastically. Thank you.
Okay, any further comments? In public comments?
No.
No. Okay, close. I'll close the hearing and. We will move on to, once I find my notes. To the next article, Warren Article Six. Now, I have to take a five minute break, so John Van Scorick is going to take over. This is Warren Article Six zoning amendment regarding Mason Terrace.
We voting on this?
Yeah, so you are transitioning from your public hearings, which are now over to voting on articles you've already heard.
Except for we have this discussion of. Special Town Meeting number four, Warren Article One, the M V T A consensus article. We will not be voting on that. I don't think we we have. Ed.
Well. I do have a motion on that.
Okay, well, we'll take that up at that point. But that that's going to be an exception to the Warren article that we're starting now. Okay, John.
All right.
I'll be right back.
So I believe that the end result of all of that is that we are right now taking up Warren Article Six. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, all right. And this is. I believe there might be news about an advisory committee proposed amendment to this article.
Yep, hold on one second. So in your folder. You have all of the. Amendments as they come in.
I'm referring to the David Pollack email that we received this afternoon.
That's where they moved it. They moved it from a multifamily to.
T, yeah.
Right.
T two, I think.
It's T five.
Or T five, excuse me, Chad, thank you.
I don't think I got an email from David Pollack.
So in your twenty twenty-three special town meeting folder, we have been updating any, you know. Amendments that come through. So that's kind of your one stop shop for where you should be looking for as things are changing up to the minute. Because it does take quite a bit of time to republish your packet every time a new document comes in. So just so that you guys can kind of navigate through those. And I've promoted the deputy town administrator.
And and that 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 language just came in today, so it wasn't something that was already part of your earlier packet. So. You've got the the language that's in the. The email from David Pollack. I can.
So I.
I can call it up if that would be easier for you.
It'd be really. Yeah, that would help a lot. Thank you, Melissa.
No problem.
If for those of us with limited vision, do you mind reading the text of it? It's not very long, is it?
Yeah, the only changes.
Well, it's just the amendment to the zoning map, so.
Yes.
And dot one dot S to T five district.
All right. Yep, that's right. Yeah, there. There were strikeouts and then added. And basically, the the impact of this was to. Change the designated zoning district to which we are, which we are modifying this to. From a M district to a T five district. And and. I don't want to get it wrong. So does someone want to give us a quick explanation of what T five means?
I believe T five. I mean, M is multifamily.
Right.
I believe is two or three family. T five. I'm pulling up now because I want to get the official definition.
So I've scrolled to the explanation in the document, which talks about the substitution of the T five in the place of the. M one dot five.
Right.
And just to sum up, so the original proposed article impacts three parcels. The proponent of the article has one parcel. There are two adjacent parcels, all of this on Mason Terrace. Under the original proposal. Which we we did review previously. The change in the zoning would be toward a multifamily zoning. That according to the best information available. Would be used by the proponent. To add a second house structure to the lot. But would not necessarily. Give the same. Flexibility to the two other adjacent property owners because of the different size and. Topography of their parcels. Now we're looking at the exact same proposal, except that instead of a multifamily. District change, it would be to a.
Two family.
Two two family.
Family and attached.
Change. The existing house is already a two family. But this would allow that two family to also have behind it. A single family, which would be used by the family that owns the property or. The proponent to have a house in Brookline. This this became the the favored path towards homeownership. In in Brookline for this particular proponent. I read David Pollack's proposed change and I immediately wrote back to him and I said, thank you, thank you, thank you. Because this addressed the the concern that was getting in the way of my, you know, feeling. Favorable towards this article. And then I didn't understand why it had to go all the way to multifamily. In order for there to be one house bill. Behind, you know, this one property. And with this change, I'm just speaking for myself. I feel we can vote this tonight. I feel comfortable voting for it tonight, but I. Obviously, we have to hear from the other members of the board. And Bernard, you're back. You might as well resume conducting the.
Okay.
The action.
Actually, I didn't hear what the change was from the advisor.
Moved it from moved it to a T five from multifamily to. T five is two family or attached single.
Right. And Miriam's going to hear that.
Miriam.
Thank you. I I just want to confirm that this. This achieves what the family wants in the sense that. You know, they could build this. This extra housing for their. Their relatives on their property. We this still allows for that. Is that correct?
We have Polly Sacco here, who's.
Hi, Polly Sacco. Regulatory planning director. It. It would allow them, a T five zone. Allows a two family. It would not allow another. Building on the same lot, but. They could subdivide the lot because there are a lot of sixteen thousand square feet. And T five requires a five thousand minimum lot size. And because a T five has an F A R one. The existing house would not be over the allowed F A R if you subdivided the lot. However. If they built a house in back of the two family on a separate lot. They would need a special permit because they probably would not meet the separation. Between two structures, even though they're on separate lots. Because when one structure is behind another structure, you have to meet the front yard has to equal the backyard requirement, etc. But they could get that through a special permit by going to the Board of Appeals. Whereas before. With an S C seven, the likelihood of they're getting a use variance to put a house behind the other house would have been very unlikely.
Can I ask a follow up question? Polly, thank you. That was very helpful. Is there a risk that they wouldn't get the exemption? Like. You know, if we do this and then town meeting passes it and then they go ask for this exemption. And then they get a no, right? So.
I think I, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, but I think the the boards typically will give special permits. For yard setbacks and keep in mind that the. People who would oppose this would be there, the the other lot next to them, which is owned by by relatives. So it's unlikely.
Got it. Thank you.
That it would be opposed.
Paul?
Well, so so Polly, but the special permit. Would require a public hearing and others could come to that and provide feedback. We did hear from the petitioner that they polled their neighbors. You know, but I don't think anybody actually came and spoke on their behalf. So. So one, I think I do think the public hearing would be helpful, but to go back to Miriam's question. The original ask. Would they have had to go for a special permit in order to do what they wanted to do? I thought they were looking for a multifamily. What was the what was the original request?
Their original request was. Would have enabled. The house to be torn down, the two family to be torn down and a multifamily built. But, you know, very few things in Brookline are done just by right because to demolish a building, you'd also have to. You know. Have perhaps have a demolition stay put on the building if it's found significant. But if it had been, if it were an M one point five, you could put a second building. On a lot. But again, you might, you might have. You know, yard setbacks that would require special permits. So there's very little that could be done. Without a special permit, but the the difference is is that with an M one point five. It is possible that, you know, they could get an offer from a developer to build an apartment house and. You know, the property would be worth a lot more money and they might be inclined to to take that offer. That's the difference with it. If it is owned T five, the most they could do would be to subdivide it and build one more.
And and Polly, just to be clear, their their original intent. I remember from the from the public hearing. Was that they wanted to build behind the their the parents' home. So that they could live in Brookline near family and there it doesn't seem like there was an intent to go. So that they could live in Brookline near family and there, it, it doesn't seem like there was an intent to go tear it down and have a windfall for apartment building. So this, this, uh, T five may just meet their need and they got to go through the, the, the zoning process, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, okay. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm inclined to support the advisory committee's, uh, amendment here.
Uh, my question is, yeah. Uh, my question is, are, are we setting a precedent that, that is not a good precedent?
So town, town council spoke to this last time, right? It was, you know, no, no action of a current town meeting combined a future town meeting. So you're not setting a legal precedent? Are you setting a, a, an informal precedent? Yeah. Um,
And that, and that's, I guess, my problem. Um, an informal precedent for people to, um, try to manipulate zoning in order to, you know, um, get around the market.
Well, I would have that concern if not for the fact that it's a two-family zoning uh, uh, application that he's, that, that this would apply, um, two-family zone that this would apply. And it's already a two-family and there's already two families, um, up and down that street. Um, and so it's, it's hardly inconsistent with, uh, the, you know, the existing housing stock there or the zoning in parts of the street that allows for two families.
Mike?
I, I think the best analogy here is, uh, um, this is like an accessory dwelling unit in a sense.
Yeah.
It's a separate
All gussied up to be a house.
Yeah, happens to be a house.
Probably, probably shaking your head because I think, I think
Well, not, I mean,
It's a little more than that. Way more than
Not in the technical terms.
No, 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 no. I realize that technically it's not an accessory, but it's the same spirit.
Same spirit. I agree with Mike. It's the same spirit.
I just want to say that
It's getting around the accessory dwelling unit restrictions.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, yeah, that's right. But it, that's essentially
It's an alternative, sorry.
The alternative.
Yeah.
And I'm willing to be corrected by Polly, so.
Originally, the M one point five zoning was suggested because it's surrounded by one point five zoning and it looked like, you know, it fit, even though that wasn't what the, the, uh, person who brought this forward wanted to do. Um, it was pointed out with the T five that if you go two lots to the right on the atlas sheet, there's a whole bunch, a whole row of T five, uh, or there's a T five zoning district. So that's why it would make sense to have the, have the T five. And it also would make sense because remember zoning runs with the land. So twenty years from now, you know, these, the people who are living there now were, were to sell the, the property, then it could be an apartment building. Now that you may consider that good or bad, but that's what could happen.
If it was an M one five.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any, uh, further discussion? Do people want to vote?
I'd like to move that we approve the amendment.
Okay, um, so moved. On favor, please indicate by saying aye. Uh, John?
Aye.
Oh yeah?
Aye.
Mary Mashkanazi?
Aye.
Um, Mike Salmon?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And I, with hesitation, I vote aye too.
Now we need to vote. And now the article as amended?
Uh, I'm sorry, what?
We have to vote on the article. Article six as amended.
So we, we accepted the amendment by the advisory committee and now we're voting on the article as amended. On favor, please indicate by saying aye. John?
Aye.
Um, Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye too. Okay. Next item.
Article thirteen, rename Heath School.
Yes, okay.
The only, um, information I have on advisory activity is that they chose not to make a recommendation on this article. So, uh, you'll have the information from your public hearing to rely on.
They chose not to what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear what she's
They're not going to make a recommendation.
That's not a no action. It's just
They, they didn't make a recommendation because there are no financial implications.
Oh, okay. But we don't have that out. Okay, any discussion?
Well, I hope we go yes. I mean,
Well, I, I'm voting yes on half this. Um, anyway, any discussion?
I believe that Mir- Miriam might want to make their motion.
I vote that we vote favorable action on this warrant article for which I am a co-petitioner.
And a parent.
Parent.
Right.
On favor, please, pardon me?
Second. Yeah, I guess.
On favor, uh, John Van Skoyak?
Uh, aye.
Mary Nash Kanazi?
Aye.
Mike Salmon?
Aye.
Uh, Paul Warren?
Aye.
Uh, and I, chair will vote aye on renaming it, renaming the school, but without making any comment on this reasons for the renaming. So anyway, so that's, uh, five of us, uh, voting, uh, aye. Uh, let's move forward to the pet store animal ban, article fourteen.
So I, I would recommend that you, uh, hold off on a vote on the, um, the next two articles because the advisory committee is still, um, tweaking the language. So you'd have to reopen it anyway. So why don't we wait for them to stop moving and then, um, we'll have our votes.
Okay. More on favor of that?
So, sorry, um, we're tailing them. Pet store and
Not going to act on tonight.
Yeah.
Traveling store and store and the animals.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, budget amendment. That's fairly straightforward, right?
Yes, advisory vote on this earlier this evening. They voted favorable action. Um, I believe that the vote language is in your packet. Uh, this is for the appropriation of TNC funds for, uh, Uber and Lyft monies for, um, the elderly transit and then the bench program.
Hey. Any discussion? It's fairly straightforward. I move favorable action on special town meeting number two. Warren, article one, the budget amendment on favor. John Van Skoyak?
Aye.
Mary Mashkanazi?
Aye.
Michael Salmon?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next, oh, the big one. Special town meeting four, Warren, article one.
You have, oh, sorry, you, I'm losing, losing my mind. Yes.
Join the club. Okay, we're not voting on this tonight, but, um, I, I, I do want
I keep saying that, but I keep telling you I have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, there's more that I was going to say, but you, uh, give me your motion first.
Well, 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 type, 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 type. Could I, could I please, uh, take a few moments to, to set the stage? Well, why have a motion? You haven't even, don't even know what he's motioning on. Okay, so, uh, thank you, Chair, for allowing me to have the floor for a, a few minutes and, and you would indulge me, I hope. Um, several weeks ago, I had, uh, uh, reported and shared with you, my colleagues, that I was, uh, initiating and invited, um, two of the, the, I would say most active uh, groups in Brookline that were focused on discussions related to, uh, Brookline's land use and zoning changes that are coming before a town meeting. Uh, related to the MBTA Communities Act, uh, they, they are, uh, Brookline by Design. Um, and yes, in Brookline, yes, and Brookline actually represents multiple groups, including, uh, Brookline for Everyone, um, uh, GBIO and the Brookline Development Corporation. Um, we had, uh, m- many, uh, in-person sessions uh, between these two groups face to face, uh, the first time they have sat face to face, I think, ever. Um, and remarkably, um, with, uh, a lot of support from staff, um, especially this, uh, yesterday, we had a marathon session, uh, with the two groups. Um, they have, uh, come to an agreement uh, with, uh, recommending to the board, uh, our board, as well as to, uh, the advisory committee, um, a series of amendments that they would, uh, uh, recommending that we make to, um, article one of special town meeting four. And should those amendments, uh, be made and, and, and hold, uh, both organizations would recommend favorable action at town meeting, uh, for special town meeting, uh, uh, for article one. Um, you know, I first want to say, uh, a, a, a special thank you, uh, to both groups. Um, they came to the table, um, skeptical, uh, but open-minded. And I think that, uh, the process of, uh, having them work and talk with each other and exchange ideas is, is exactly what we want to have happen on complex legislation that comes before um, town meeting and affects, uh, a, a, a large percentage of our residents. So I, I do want to uh, thank them in particular for their, their participation. Uh, it's not possible to bring uh, and find common ground and develop, uh, consensus and, and agreement without willing participants with open minds. Um, and both organizations have done that. Um, in, in the packet, I believe it's in the packet, but certainly, um, you should have a copy. Do you guys need a hard copy? Do you have access to the memo that was transmitted or should I hand it around? It'd be nice to have. Okay. This is the and there's one more. Uh, Miriam, this should be in your email that was sent uh, to Chaz, uh, this afternoon. I believe you'd seen it. So, um, this is, uh, it's, it's, it's fairly short, but I'm, I'm happy to go through and explain this um, in, 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 as to much detail as you want. Um, the memo, uh, is to, uh, the chair of the select board, Bernard, uh, chair of, uh, advisory committee, Dennis Doughty. It says, Dear Chair Green and, uh, and Doughty, uh, yes, in Brookline, a Brookline by Design, represent two of the primary advocacy groups engaged in conversations related to Brookline's land use and zoning considerations for the upcoming town meeting. Uh, with the help of Paul, a select board member, Paul Warren, we have come to agreement on a set of amendments that if adopted would allow both organizations to recommend favorable action on the amended version of the select board's article one of special town meeting four, subject to the conditions below. I'm not going to read all the conditions, but we are requesting that the select board at its October seventeenth meeting agree to amend article one of special town meeting four, uh, the changes of which are, are included below. The design points for these, uh, the amendments that follow in the table are really, uh, uh, several important points. One is they are in keeping with the overall objective of, uh, of the consensus article uh, and, uh, the, the, the proposals to change zoning on Harvard Street. Um, th- there's some specific items here that I do want to walk you through and should you like, um, I'm happy to put, have Devin put pictures up, uh, to project for each one of these properties because it's very difficult for you to understand what, you know, remove fifty-four Coolidge Street means without seeing it. So, uh, Devin, uh, if, if you, if, if
I've got it.
colleagues would like to do that, I'm happy to do that. Um, so this, uh, the, the, the crux of this uh, negotiation and agreement is really about, um, looking at the scope of, uh, of the parcels and properties along Harvard Street in particular, that would be impacted by the zoning. A number of parcels were removed, uh, and, and, and they were removed for the following reasons. Um, one, uh, they may not have been, they weren't on Harvard Street, so they started to venture into the neighborhoods. Uh, many of the parcels that were included at the time, the original Harvard corridor was defined was because we needed acreage. We needed enough housing acreage for the, for the, the, the MBTA Communities Act. That's no longer a, a need. Um, so you can see that a number of properties, uh, north end of, uh, Burndale, sixty-four Coolidge Street, uh, Ten Beals Street and Seven Beals Street, uh, were removed. And we can walk through those if you'd like to see pictures. Um, for, for, uh, there's a complex issue where there's a number of properties that the, the front of the, of two properties face, you know, the front property faces Harvard Street, but there may be a back property that is combined or could be combined. That creates some confusion about where the front of the building would be and where the back of the building is. So we spent quite a bit of time on this. Uh, and, and that's what, uh, two E, the amendment two E is. Um, there are, there's a number of parcels in, in Brookline Village that we had quite a bit of discussion about. Um, there's a whole section called HMSO. And these are three parcels that are, that are about an acre. It includes the municipal parking lot. There's a lot of concerns in the village, especially with merchants, about the future of the municipal parking lot. And any, any development that would take place there would actually require uh, the developer to come to town meeting and it would take a two-thirds vote because we would be using a municipal parking lot. So, so that was, that a, a area was removed. Um, conversely as well, uh, if you remember, we had a proposal to, uh, the second parking lot on Kent Street. There was going to be some senior development there. They, and which got deferred and delayed because we were going to have to build it on top of a municipal parking lot. There were some cost issues um, for the same reasons that was taken out. There's been a lot of discussion on the list and in between various parties about the concern about the impact that, that, uh, zoning changes in Harvard Street may have on commercial properties. Uh, this is a, a significant concern. So we had a, a lengthy discussion and agreement to remove a number of two-story commercial buildings or greater, where these are, uh, significant assets commercialized, uh, to the town. Um, so we, we removed those. Those, you'd see at three B, three C, three E, F and G, and you can see the, the, the descriptions there. There, uh, when we initially proposed the Harvard Street, uh, consensus article, um, we removed Stop and Shop. Um, there's, there was a lot of discussion, actually, I believe EDAB, uh, concurred with this. Um, the parties agreed to remove, uh, the, uh, car wash next door to Stop and Shop as well as the gas station, uh, anticipation that perhaps, um, the Stop and Shop, uh, which actually operates the gas station, would, that, that possibly they would come back to us and want to redevelop those together. Um, so that's another large, uh, parcel that's been removed. Um, and as you'll notice on the second page, four D, for some reason, we had an electric substation included in these owning, uh, which of course we're not going to redevelop a, a, a substation. Then there were a number of buildings, uh, that we went parcel by parcel. This was excruciating, this process. Um, but there are a number of parcels that have built out architecturally significant buildings. So these are buildings like the Boston Sports Medicine, um, one seventy-two to one seventy-four Harvard Street. These are significant buildings that are already three or four stories. They're beautiful bricks. They got fascinating facades. Um, or they're U-shaped and they're, they've got a lot of rental housing in it. Um, so the, the parties agreed, uh, to remove those. There was an, a, an agreement to remove, uh, the use of short-term rentals on, uh, the Harvard Street corridor. If we're trying to create housing, um, we shouldn't turn it over to, uh, to, for the use of short-term rentals. Um, importantly, uh, the parties agreed that the M district design standards uh, that are in the consensus article would remain in, so those would not be removed. Um, we had a significant discussion about a very controversial item. Um, and I, I hope, uh, town meeting will appreciate this. Um, this has to do with setbacks. So, um, if you recall in the original article, setbacks, uh, for parcels that were greater than a hundred feet were ten feet and parcels that were less than a hundred feet were five feet. Um, the, the, the parties agreed to amend that to fifteen feet for a hundred foot parcels uh, and ten feet for parcels that are less than a hundred feet. And there is a provision to allow for a special permit to develop a field that they need to go because the, the, the setback may be too, uh, not sufficient for them, uh, to, to complete the type of project they wanted to do. I will add that, uh, uh, our town administrator, um, and, and Cara Bruton, uh, spent three hours with us yesterday, uh, working on the specific language and looking at the impact. Um, and so that's generally, uh, the, the types of changes that, um, are being proposed. And as I had mentioned, the parties are asking that, uh, the select board, um, and I understand Bernard, we're not going to be voting on amendments tonight, but they are asking just because of the constraint, that the tight tie frame advisories, the subcommittee is meeting tomorrow. Um, and, you know, we're, uh, uh, potentially voting on this article Tuesday. Um, because the following week, I think we're not meeting and I'd actually suggest that we do meet on that, uh, that, that night, Tuesday, instead of taking the night off. Um, so that's, uh, that's the proposal, uh, that these two parties have, uh, uh, sent to us. Um, again, I'm, I'm very proud of the work that they did and I believe that should we move forward with adopting um, and indicating to the advisory committee that we, that we're taking these seriously and, and plan on incorporating them, um, that I think that this greatly improves, uh, the probability of success at town meeting, uh, dramatically.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, thank you. Um, Bernard, to, uh, just to, I, I, I think it's worth mentioning, um, that we received, um, I think there were three sets of comments. One was from Dick Benka, one from, um, Linda Pelkey and one from uh, Ken Lewis with a variety of changes that they wanted to see. Uh, and, um, I think that the, the, the preponderance of those changes have in fact been incorporated here.
Yes.
There are certainly some that, uh, that haven't been. There are certainly some that uh, that haven't been, but they were in particularly, Ken Lewis had some really good technical points uh that were um, kind of missed. Uh, and um, uh, it's, it's very gratifying to see the that these two. Uh, uh, groups of people have managed to get together, and I must say it wouldn't have happened without Paul. Um, because uh, they probably would have thrown me out into the, into the cold uh, because my, my brother was syphilis position. Um, so uh, my motion is to incorporate the changes, move to incorporate the changes. Listed in the letter dated October seventeenth, twenty eighteen, from the Representatives of Brookline by Design and Brookline for Everyone. Into Article One STM four with implementation language to be developed by the Department of Planning and Community Development.
Um, hold on one second. I'm sorry. We have no, we've lost signal on the video here. Um. Our video stream.
Yeah, it was here.
I can still hear you. I just can't.
Yeah, the Zoom is still going, so we're just having a a problem with big, but we are recording, so this will be able to be.
All right.
I'm just going to tell you that I have something to say Bernard at some point, because you can't.
But let me ask, Mike, are you saying that we should vote?
Yeah.
On the, okay. Uh, Miriam.
You can, can you see me or?
Yes, we can see you. Yep.
I was just worried that.
So first, I wanna, I also want to give real kudos to Paul for this. Thank you for this, for this extremely hard work. I appreciate it. I, I support all of these changes. Um, I do think we should vote on it tonight, and Paul, just to remind you that two, the two Tuesdays or whatever, the three Tuesdays from now where we don't have a select board meeting is Halloween.
Yeah, we need our candy.
Yeah, well, but the.
The only reason why I mentioned it, Miriam, and and again, I'm, you know, I uh, I just, I believe that. Depending on the cycle that top, that the advisory goes through with this. Um, you know, the 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 combined reports, I think, are going out. On this, the second Chaz or the or the first or the second. So if if we needed to, maybe we could just have one agenda item, which is, you know, uh, this specific thing.
Well, I don't think that's necessary. It looks like the consensus of the board is that we vote tonight. I was looking for voting later. But I think we really haven't. Okay, we haven't heard from the entire board. John.
Well, um, I love this, this compromise and and uh, Paul um deserves every bit of the the credit that he's being given tonight. For working it out. So so do the representatives of uh, uh, Brooklyn by Design and uh, something known as Yes in Brookline. Um, and you know, um. Uh, cards on the table. Um, I voted no when the version of this, which frankly, um. Is uh, unrecognizable, given all of the changes um, came before us. And the reason I voted no, as as I explained to some folks later, is precisely because. It seemed like we were being asked to vote on something that was going to be substantially changed. So why would I say no to it when there was plenty of time for people to register their changes? And um, sure enough. Uh, boy, did people register their changes, and that's, that's all to the good. Um, we haven't heard from the advisory committee because all of this just came out um, today. Um, and in fact, rather late today. Um, and uh, they're going to take it up. Um, no sooner did we receive the um, version of what was agreed to by these two groups um, with Paul's um, very good interventions. And negotiations. Um, then we got a substantial uh, email from EDAB. Saying we, we really like this. Um, however, um, we would like these, these changes. And then it goes on for, you know, two, two pages of the email, all of the changes that they think need to be made to this. So there's still plenty of people who want to weigh in. We had evidence on the vote that we just took on Warren Article Six. That sometimes the advisory committee review. Fixes a problem with an article such that we then approve it with the, with the article amended by the advisory committee. Now being what we approve. So there's so much more still to come on this. I just don't think there's any reason why we have, it's going to come back to us with amendments if we vote on this tonight. Um, and I'm not sure what the point of symbolically approving it when we know we're going to approve a changed version of it um, later. Uh, I'm just not sure what the point of that is.
Mike.
So the point is, it's a very, a very apt question. Uh, the point of it is to indicate to the advisory committee. That at the very least, these changes should be included in what in in their workup of this article. And I respect the point that there may be some other changes that come back, but it, this sort of. Significantly narrows the amount of work that the advisory committee would have to do if it, if it didn't exist. And it gives a pretty clear, or not, it is a very clear indication that the Select Board uh is behind these changes and. I think it's clear that we, you know, from your remarks, uh, you're absolutely right. It's, yeah, we, we may very well see some other amendments. Uh, but in the uh, uh, it's, it's intended to help the advisory committee along, I guess is uh, one way to put it. Uh, and uh, indicate to them and to the public for that matter, that we're moving in the same direction.
Well, and if if they're listening, they know that there's four out of five members of the Select Board who, you know, uh, would would pass this tonight. But um, I'm not ready to pass it tonight because I know it's not the final version that we're going to adopt.
Well, so you, you can, you're, you can be the odd man out.
I don't necessarily assume that um, nothing will be changed in this template. It could be that one of the things that happens when the advisory committee, and and in fact, the EDAB has already called for changes in this template, so.
So uh, so. I was just gonna, I just wanted to respond to John. So um. Uh, first, uh, I I appreciate your, your, your comments. Um, what Mike is suggesting. Is that we indicate to advisory that we plan on incorporating these changes into our version of the article. Because frankly, they're going to be working on that tomorrow. Um, that does not mean that the changes sent by EDAB. Uh, wouldn't potentially be incorporated into the article as well. In fact, I would strongly encourage. Uh, that that uh, the advisory committee seriously look at EDAB's proposals. And as you know, I think you were at the meeting last night. I spoke at EDAB about this agreement taking place, although I couldn't give them the details. However, one of the participants that sat around the table across from Brookline by Design was a member of EDAB. So they were very familiar with the types of changes that were taking place. So this, this, the intention of this agreement. It's not to replace all other potential proposals that would come forward or amendments. This, this substantially moves the ball down the field. Towards a consensus article. That's what, that's why we created the consensus platform and put it in front of town meeting to create the opportunity for changes through our deliberative process. Um, to, if we were, if we were to not indicate to advisory tonight. That we're supporting these, I believe it would be an affront to the incredible work that two, two groups did face to face over weeks. Um, I I think it was. I I would, I would support.
I don't think it would be an affront to anyone, and I think John has some good points that, you know, the process whereby we. Um, have access to information, review it, digest it. Um, is is sort of being disrupted, especially given the fact that we expect it to come back with significant change. I think that the proposed changes you made are fairly straightforward and um, we have had sufficient time. Even though the time was incredibly short. But. None, uh, no time. Um, that I guess I'd be willing to vote on this. Um, it. I think, I think that there are at least three members of the board who would uh, want to do that, and I'll, I'll. I know which way the wind is blowing.
All right, well, so you, you accept my motion. Thank you.
Um, okay, any further discussion? What I had hoped we would have is a sort of detailed discussion that could be used as. Um, sort of the legislative history of the Select Board that the advisory committee could, could uh, use to get there.
Right.
To to understand where we're coming from.
Well, I think Paul, Paul has actually done a pretty good job with describing this kind of, not, not, not. Not in excruciating detail, but he's not a good.
No, I agree, but.
I also, Bernard, I also want to, you know, to, in full transparency, two members of the advisory subcommittee, ad hoc subcommittee, sat at the table. So there's two people that know more about this than, as much as me or more. Um, so I I think there's well-informed people uh, throughout the process.
Let's, let's vote. Yeah. Um, so uh, Mike, you want to make the motion?
Sure. Uh, move to incorporate the changes listed in the letter dated October seventeenth, uh, twenty eighteen, from twenty eighteen. Where did that come from? Uh, twenty twenty-three. Uh, from the Representatives of Brookline by Design and Brookline for Everyone into Article One STM four. With implementation language to be developed by the Department of Planning and Community Development and uh.
Mike, I I just want to make one correction. You said Brookline for everyone. It's actually Yes in Brookline.
Uh, Yes in Brookline, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so move on favor. Please indicate by saying aye, John.
Uh, for the reasons I cited and looking forward to the opportunity to join my colleagues in voting for a final version of what we are proposing, um, I vote no.
Um, Miriam Ashenazi.
I vote yes.
Okay, Mike Sammon.
Yes, aye.
Paul Warren.
Yes.
And Chair votes uh, yes, but acknowledging that we're going to have to come back and review this.
It's all going to come back.
By very, by many people at a future time, but we do that all the time, so it's not a big deal.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I appreciate my colleagues' point.
Paul, for, for the hard work you've done and uh, for the uh, result that uh, came from that hard.
Yes.
Okay, moving right along, we have uh, finally. Appointments. Oh, so you want to, you want to applaud?
Thank you, Michael.
Everyone's getting a little lax with their microphone usage. Please speak into your microphone.
Okay, um, boards and commissions appointments. Um, Devin, in my script, I don't have the names. I I think I know.
If you are in the online version still.
Uh, we'll read it. Hold on. Yeah.
I can walk you through um, the, let's go.
I just want to get people's names right.
Yeah, last to first, I think makes sense. So you have the MLK Celebration Committee before you. Margaret Talcott did not interview with this board, but there are only two members of the MLK Celebration Committee right now, so they are in dire need.
We're embarrassed. Please help us.
And the Chair of this board and the Chair of that board.
Yeah.
Bernard Green has asked that this person be appointed without an interview.
Yeah, let me, let me just give you some background on Margaret. She's incredible, and we really, really need her. And she's done an incredible amount of work for the committee already. She's the Director of Literary Programs and Partnerships and the Producer of American Inspiration. At the American Ancestors Program of the New England Historic Genealogical Society. Uh, she has great connections in the literary world and has helped the committee with this programming, including our co-sponsorship of an incredible. Um, program at uh, Booksmith's Bookseller, uh, Booksellers. Uh, where we had Randall Kennedy of uh, Harvard Law School interview Jonathan Icke, the author of incredible book King: A Life. Um, back in May, May nineteenth of uh, this year. So, you know, she will be a great asset to the committee, and we really, really want to, you know, formalize our relationship with her, so. So, um, I move approval of Margaret Talcott as the uh, member of the Martin Luther King Celebration Committee. Or to be appointed as a member of the Martin Luther King Celebration Committee. On favor, please indicate by saying aye, John. Um, Miriam Ashenazi.
Aye.
Mike Sammon.
Whoever, Mike, yeah, aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
Next, you're reviewing the Economic Development Advisory Board. You did interview a candidate uh, tonight for one of the two vacancies. You have two seasoned members who have stepped off, um, who I'm sure you will like to thank um, for their service to the town. That is Cliff Brown, who is um, stepping down at the end of his term. And Paul Sainer, both who had long tenures on the Economic Development Advisory Board, and we are very grateful for their service. Um, applicant, uh, current members who have applied to be reappointed are Derek Choi and Sandy Silk. And you would be approving them for terms expiring in August of twenty twenty-six.
Okay, so we're just filling the, the two position.
You are reappointing the incumbents.
Yeah.
There are two vacancies and you have interviewed one of the applicants so far.
Vacancies at a future time. Okay, so we're just voting for the two um, reappointment. Uh, on favor, please indicate by saying aye, John Van Scoye.
Aye.
Um, Miriam Ashenazi.
Aye.
Um, Mike Sammon.
Aye.
Uh, Paul Warren.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Zero emissions advisory board. We have two candidates that um, I think most people have agreed. Um, are um, you know, the best candidates, more importantly, in my opinion. Um, the Chair of the Board has really made a strong um, argument for their appointment. Uh, and um, those two individuals are. V, Devin.
What are you saying?
Vikram.
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 Yeah, Karwa.
Vikram Agarwal.
Yeah.
And um.
Nick Caramello.
Nick Caramello, okay, so. Uh, any discussion? Okay, I move approval of Vikram.
Agarwal.
Agarwal. And um, Nick Caramello uh, to the zero emissions advisory board. On favor, please indicate by saying aye, John Van Scoye.
Aye.
Miriam Ashenazi.
Aye.
Mike Sammon.
Aye.
Yeah, I remembered this time. Paul Warren.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
Okay, can I jump in real quick? I want to thank all those people who applied. That was our most competitive process in a while. It was really heartening to see so many great qualified applicants for that board. I would say it's, your non-appointment here is not a reflection on your talent and skills. It's the reflection of how much talent there is to go around. Um, there are many other boards and commissions that are crying out for assistance. Um, even if you don't necessarily think your skill set is on that matter, I strongly encourage you to go to a meeting. Uh, watch it, see if you have any interest. You may be surprised at what interest you may have. Um, the town really does rely on volunteers and it really needs to diversify its volunteer pool. So if you have an interest, particularly if you are someone who doesn't see someone who looks like you on one of these boards. You could be on one of these boards. So please, if you're interested, go to a meeting. Email Devin Fields, uh, dfields@brooklineMA.gov. Uh, if you were interested in applying, we can get the application process going for you. Um, it is very rewarding to be a part of government. You would be surprised at how much you can do and how much difference you make.
Okay, um.
And anybody who is still here at ten forty PM.
All five of you.
This hell ought to apply.
Uh, just before we wrap up uh, finally for the night, I just wanted to raise um, if I may, a question. For consideration uh, by our staff. That's, that's all that it is. Um, we now have a much um, clearer um, list of the properties that actually will be uh, under. Um, consideration for some kind of a zoning change um, under this article. And there has been a lot of activity this week um, uh, among town meeting members um, on their listserv. Raising questions as to whether the particular business operators, not the property owners, but the business operators who will be in the affected properties. Have been um, ha- ha- have actually been contacted. With an opportunity and maybe even anonymity to give us their view of what these changes might mean to their business. And their views on these possible changes. And I wonder if there's still time for that very essential information to be added to the information that will be available to town meeting. Um, because if it was already done, um, an awful lot of people are unaware of that because they um. At this point are only selectively quoting from one person or another person.
Let me be clear, every single person, both tenants and landlords was email, was contacted and reached out to. Um, everyone on that corridor was reached out to um, with um, the consultant who does this work, you know, countrywide. So they had a very. Yeah, you know, solid structure in place for determining, for making sure that their feedback would be taken into consideration, anonymized appropriately. But then reflected within the design framework. So yes, anyone who wanted to comment, they, every single one of those people was reached out to directly. Um, with mailings indicating that it was, you know, about this issue, about the importance phrased in a neutral tone. It was not. Your business will be destroyed. How do you feel about that? It was the, it is being. your business will be destroyed. How do you feel about that? It was the, it is being rezoned. Well, you know, there's the possibility of rezoning. You know, here's what that might look like. You know, it was, it was more broad based, you know, questions about those.
Yeah.
So yes, every single landlord and tenant was contacted and was asked the question. You know, was asked for comment on this, on this zoning. And that was fit incorporated into Opticos, the consultant's work. So we're happy to make sure that folks have an understanding of that. So that's, thank you for bringing that up. That is.
Well, yeah, and, and I, I know that, you know, there were chuckles at the, at the notion of they weren't told this is going to mean that your building will be, you know, the potentially demolished, right? But you know, the language of zoning changes is arcane to most people. And a lot of businesses, they're, they're really only focused on their business. And they may have thought this is just like a routine notification of they're going to do some conduit work in front of my building or something, you know? And if they don't understand that some of them are in blocks, which if this has the effect that we want it to have will be demolished for there to be housing produced. And until that message is shared with them, they don't really know what the consequences of this are. And I, I sort of feel they deserve to know that and we deserve to inform town meeting. I mean, town meeting members deserve to be informed as to whether they've heard that message and what their responses are to that message.
So again, I think we're really quickly on this, right? The, the, they were reached out to, Opticos does this, you know, countrywide. And they do a good job, I think, of telling people in plain language, this is what we're talking about, right? Redevelopment does, can mean demolition, but it can also mean, you know, building extra stories on top of things, which the zoning allows for. It can mean any number of those sort of redesign issues. So I think that's important to keep in mind that, yes, yeah, go ahead, Paul. I mean, finish this out. So yes, it is important and we will make sure that we can, you know, we may make sure that as we go into this week, when there's, you know, community, when there's committee markup and so forth, people can have that understanding of how that outreach was conducted and what was said and all of those things. But you know, there is, right. And with, you're absolutely right. With rezoning, there is the possibility of redevelopment. With redevelopment, that could mean demolition and that could mean building something new in the, in the place. So I think that message was clearly conveyed to these folks. You know, with the ultimate goal of this, right, being modest gradual redevelopment over the course of 20 years, not we're coming in with the wrecking ball on January 1st and you're, you'll lose your business. So that's, I just wanted to be clear on that.
I just, I just wanted to just, and I will do it very quickly, but this, I think this is very germane. So first I do know Maria did address this over the weekend. You know, I don't think anybody's ever worked harder than Maria Morelli on anything. And she was available all weekend, but it wasn't in, her information was not in a form that could go out to the list and I wasn't going to provide it. So Chaz and Cara need to confirm that. But there was, there was a robust amount of feedback generated by those. But I also, I want to add some context to this conversely because you know, the, the M District, which is, is, you know, the alternate proposal of just the M District. 23,000 postcards got mailed out to, I, I don't know how many parcels and households that actually represented Chaz, but it was a lot. I attended the public hearing that was held for, for that, to get feedback from those people that owned or rented those properties. Zero people showed up. So you know, if there's any risk of someone not knowing what the heck is going on. It's the people in those, those M District properties that read a postcard that said, hey, there's going to be some zoning changes and weren't educated. So I actually have much more fear that the M District solution that we're using to be compliant with the MBTA Communities Act, that those people don't know what the heck is going on. And they're at a greater risk to have someone come, purchase their property, kick them out as renters and turn it into million dollar condos. So you know, I, I'll wait for Chaz and Cara, but I think there's been a significant amount of robust community engagement on the Harvard Street corridor and actually very little in the M District.
Okay. I let that conversation go on ahead of what I wanted to say. I didn't realize it was going to go on that long. But I do want to go back to ZAB and, and just make a comment to our dwindling audience.
Is there anybody still on that?
There are three people. Okay. You know, one of the applicants, Sergio Modigliani dropped out and, but he said that he's, because of his experience. And you mentioned that he had been around during the 1970s oil embargo. Which, which was an, an interesting period that should inform how we address climate issues today. And he said that he was going to monitor and participate in, in that, in, in the meetings of, of ZAB. And I think that's really, really good because he has the type of historical knowledge as well as, you know, his skills as an architect. And, and working on sustainability that will be very important, not as a member, but as someone who can provide input to, to ZAB and help them, help them along. I also want to say that I am very appreciative of Wendy Stahl, Chair of, of ZAB. Her explanation of why she wanted Mr. Agar.
Agarwal.
Agarwal and Caramello. As members of ZAB was very focused and spot on in terms of how they can bring their consulting background and ability to work with people. Diverse people and how, you know, they were viewed by her as the type of open minded members that were important for the committee to go forward and successfully work in collaboration with the select board. Because I did raise that question. To, to realize the, the goals of ZAB. So I just wanted to make sure that for the public record, that, you know, her work on ZAB is noticed and appreciated, at least by me.
Yeah, likewise. Yep.
Okay, that's the end?
All right. Let's go. Indeed.